All right, it is 2:30 on May 16th. We have a Grand County Commission Workshop Alternative Dwelling Overlay Intent to Apply. Today, present are Commissioners Clapper, Winfield, Hedin, McCurdy, McGann, and myself, Josh Kattler, in the chambers, and Commissioner Walker on Zoom.
On my device.
And presenting, we have from our Planning and Zoning Department, Jenna Corney. And I guess I will turn it over to Jenna.
So today, we are here considering our second round of Alternative Dwelling Overlay Intent to Apply submissions. Oh, just for the record, just a little bit of background, on November 15th in 2022, with the Grand County Commission ordered 668, and then that established the Alternative Dwelling Overlay Pilot Program. The Alternative Dwelling Overlay would provide workforce housing opportunities by allowing different types of non-traditional housing. During the first round of ADO applicants, the county commission approved full, three full rezone applications at a public hearing on April 18th. And those applications were determined to meet the intent of the ADO ordinance. They also consisted of 73 of 150 units permitted through the ADO program. And ultimately, the ITA process is intended to give the commission the opportunity to evaluate each of the projects proposed and see if they meet the intent of the ordinance based on the criteria described below. A couple of those elements are relative availability of workforce housing and affordable housing, impacts on of the proposed developments and what they may have on adjacent land uses and neighborhoods. And those are to include evaluation of if they're located in preferred zoning districts, compatibility with existing community characteristics, historic usage of the property, traffic impacts, commute time, and then relative impacts of on water resources. So we did get eight total applicants, and there was a total of 82 units proposed between those eight applicants. And let's just kind of dive into the first one.
Jenna, before we start, I had a couple of questions first. Was it, I thought we had approved 77 slots, right?
I was just 70, I know, 73.
I think there was 73 remaining, was my understanding, but I could be wrong on that.
Yeah.
Thirty-two.
Okay, just to make sure we're on the same page. And then, and then by those, by that same math, then we, at this point, we wouldn't be able to, and I'm asking you guys as much as anyone else, approve all of the ones coming before us, because that would put us over the 150, or just because it's an intent to apply, would, would that mean that we could bring them forward again, but we wouldn't be able to, if we approved everybody, say, that the, at this level, at the next level, we wouldn't be able to approve everyone, since the original intent was for only 150, right?
Correct. But can we go back and change the intent?
It came from us.
It came from us, so we should be able, if we decide that we want to expand it beyond 150, that is, we in our purvey, I'm not saying we want to, I just know, I believe we can do that.
Okay.
And then this is, this is just the second round, are there other rounds?
There's another one more.
Right.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
This first application is located at 1320 Highway 191. It's located within a highway commercial zoning district on parcel 1.01 acres. It's owned by Joy Investment LLC, which is ultimately ran by Carla Vander Zandt. It is the home of the property is for Kenny Lansfield Institute and Desert Sun Ceramics. So the building is closer to Highway 191, is split into the CFI office and the ceramics studio as well, and then the large building at the back hosts the CFI warehouses, the commercial kitchen, commissary, and bunk houses, that's been CFI's guide housing for 30 years. So with the bunk house at capacity, that's currently housing five of their employees, obviously they need some more housing as well. The existence of the bunk house indicates that there is, indicates that the proposal is consistent with the existing character of the lot and surrounding area, and the proposal, excuse me, the proposal is located within a preferred zoning district of Highway Commercial. The ITA includes four 600 square foot dwelling sites, each 20 by 30, situated on the open corners of the property, sites one and two at the front, and sites three and four at the back corner in the east. With the additional, the four additional proposed units, the property would still fall well under the maximum density permitted for Highway Commercial, which would be 18 units per acre. They're not proposing full sewer and water or electrical, but instead, the residents of each dwelling site would have access to the bathroom and facilities within the existing guide house, which is the large building to the rear. And of course, per the Land Use Code, that building and bathroom facilities would have to meet the recreational vehicle park sanitation code standards. The property is located at the corner of Overlook and Highway 191, which would put it on a major collector as defined by the Unified Transportation Master Plan, and minimal traffic would be anticipated on Overlook Road, since you can access the highway right away. The Land Use Code doesn't propose any particular amount of lot coverage there, because Highway 191 is commercial zoning, so if the project were to move forward, evaluation of the curvaceous surface and drainage plan needs would be considered by the county engineer. The planning department did determine that in conducting its due diligence, the applicant would need to bring the existing bunk house in the rear into compliance with the International Building Code by obtaining some proper permits from the building department. While the bunk house is a permitted use in the existing Highway Commercial zoning districts, some additional safety measures would need to be, would need to be instilled, including likely sprinkler, sprinkler system, and fire separation from the dwelling units. Additionally, during a site plan application, the planning department may require rectification of the encroachment of the structure on the southern border of the property. The county building department does have one really old historic scanned copy of a permit for a temporary structure that measured 40 by 60. We can't confirm that it is this structure that potentially was temporary at the time, but never fixed, but we do have that on record, so it's possible that could be that, because it can't be confirmed, just wanted to add that note. The applicant did give a little bit of historic timeline and stated that the warehouse was moved onto a simple cement pad in roughly the 1970s by the original owner. At that time, an oil company owned all of the lots, so it was only one property. McDougall went into receivership, similar to bankruptcy in the mid 80s after the uranium crash. The property was split into two lots prior to CFI's occupancy, and CFI rented from Mr. McDougall, but then purchased it in 1992. A boundary survey would be required by the applicant if they were to perform with a full rezone. Get a little bit more of that. See what they provided. So you'll see Highway 191 is where those two front units are sitting better over there.
Yeah.
Any other questions, or should I move on for you?
I'm pretty comfortable with that, any other questions for Jenna? All right.
Hold that loads up, give you the background. This application is for 21 sites located at Campgrounds of America. It's a 2.40 acre parcel at 3207 Highway 191. It's bound by the Kway Campground of the South, vacant rural residential to the east, Highway Commercial property to the north, and Highway 191 on the west. This particular portion of property is currently vacant, and the ITA proposes an addition of 21 dwelling sites, each of them measuring roughly 1,000 square feet, and includes an accompanying group fire pit and barbecue. The sites are arranged on property to provide ample open space between the dwelling sites, and each dwelling site is located within a building envelope that meets the front yard and rear setbacks of Highway Commercial. Adding the 21 units to the property would create a total density of 8.7 units per acre on the property, which is also well below the allowed current density for Highway Commercial, which would allow 18 units, so ultimately 43 units could be created there. While the parcels remain vacant, the neighboring use of the Kway to the south, nearby Cactus Road, also family development, and the Desert Wind and Red Cliff Residential Development across the street would imply compatibility with the surrounding uses and density. The property is conveniently located south of the Shell Station on 191, and is a five-minute drive to the city center, and being located on 191, it's also situated on the principal arterial road, as identified in the Unified Transportation Master Plan. The proposal does include full water, sewer, and electric hookups, but also proposes a four-unit bathroom and laundry facility as well. And of course, any landscaping and screening is required, would be met here as well. So Highway 191 is located right in front of where you see the group fire pit in the bottom left corner of the picture. The applicant is proposing access through a gate that accesses the main campground, so that ultimately would be reviewed and approved by the fire chief as well, for safety purposes.
So they'd come through the main campground, and then bang off what'll left, and then?
Right.
Right.
And then a lot through a gate with, I believe she said, not key access, but code access.
Right.
I did make sure that the applicant did touch base with UDOT as well, just so they had any background conversation.
But the area would be distinctly different from the overnight campground?
Is what I think that kind of is the intent of the gate.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And were they denied a expansion of their overnights?
Ultimately, if you were looking for an expansion of overnight units, it would be a new rezone application.
I, right. Did we turn down a rezone application?
I can speak to that. I, I know that they had talked about wanting to put the overnight accommodation units there and expand, but they never did submit anything to, to start the rezone for an OAO in that location.
Okay, thanks.
And can we just revisit compliance? Because obviously, one issue with this is, how do we really monitor if they're not just doing overnights, right? I mean, the reality is, this is an overnight accommodation, so can we just review that really quick, just so people understand?
Sure, I mean, ultimately, the evaluation of enforcement is under the Land Use Code section that defines any infraction of the requirements is a $10,000 a day fine for infraction. So if it's, you know, at least, do you want to field on a little bit? I wouldn't say self-monitoring, but you know, certainly wants to follow that, that's a pretty hefty fine.
Yeah, I mean, as far as our process right now for enforcing illegal nightly rentals, it, we do have the standard policy that is set, which is they come through complaints, but we have talked about changing that to more of a proactive approach, and that is definitely a conversation that we keep having, and I think that with the new software that we're getting, with the Economic Development Department funding, that will be much more easily tracked, and we can enforce proactively in that way. Because if they're advertising for those sites as overnight rental sites, then we can easily catch them. If they're not advertising, then it would be something to think about in terms of how, what our next strategy would be for, you know, finding out if they are in fact short-term rentals or not.
Yeah, something I was actually going to put on future considerations tonight is that I do think with code compliance, we need to start being more proactive, period. I just think we need to.
Especially with so many of our deed restrictions through.
Yeah.
I think just sitting back and waiting for complaints isn't really, it's not really working.
And that's hard for people.
It is, it is hard for people, yeah.
It does put, it does.
This isn't any different than what Dan Stotts has, because I mean, he could just as easily rent his out as overnight rentals without somebody being in there.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm fairly supportive of it, I just want to make sure that we have in place the ability to start actually monitoring these, you know, specifically with this one, you know, it's, anybody could pull in and be like, oh, well, we don't have one available, but you could just jump it, yeah, we do, you know what I mean, like, so we just.
My point is, any of them.
For sure.
So, I don't think that's a criteria.
Right, no, I understand, I just, kind of on the bigger picture, I do think we're starting to put these things in place, and we really need to start looking at how we're going to enforce it, being a little more proactive.
Chair Kattler?
Yes?
I, I would just note, merely advertising online isn't sufficient to create a violation. The state legislature, a little while back, made that law that it's, it's not sufficient. Enforcement's going to be difficult on these things, and before it's up and running, we're actually doing enforcement, I would be cautious to rely on enforcement, because it's not been something that we've historically done, and the legislature has, has made steps to kind of make it more difficult to enforce it, just wanting to note that for Commissioner Hedin.
Thank you, thank you, Stephen. Any other questions or discussion on this one? I wanted to note also that Quinn was able to confirm for us that there are 73 sites remaining under the current 150. Well, I'm sorry, it was confirmed. So, so yeah, we are looking at 73, potentially more unless we raise the limit. And we can move on to the next one.
This ADO is proposing nine dwelling sites at the southeast rear corner of the property. It's a 1.93 acre property, it's currently home to Sherry Griffith River Expeditions, and includes four existing buildings. The structure fronting Highway 191 is the Sherry Griffith River Expeditions Office, storefront, and outfitting warehouse. The building fronting Plateau Drive houses additional warehousing space, and two structures at the south of the property include an existing dwelling at the front, and storage and covered parking in the longer building to the rear. The zoning of the property is split, the front third of the property near Highway 191 is Highway Commercial, and the rear two-thirds is general business. The properties on the north side of Plateau Drive include Highway Commercial zoning also to that front third of the property, adjacent to Highway 191, and large lot residential to the northeast. Land uses to the north are a mix of residential and commercial. To the south is a four-by-four repair shop. Harrison's Trucking and Bash Cat Plant are located across the highway as well. As designed, the development envelope adheres to the requirements of Highway Commercial and general business with the required setbacks, and would be located along a 28-foot driveway, which provides internal access to each site. Additional open space to the property provides plenty of emergency access and turnaround space for residents. Land Use Code, again, doesn't define any lot coverage for Highway Commercial, and those needs would be evaluated by the county, county engineer upon site, site plan review. Being located on Highway 191, the proposal is situated on a principal arterial road as defined by the Transportation Master Plan, and access to the city center is less than five minutes away. The proposal doesn't include full water sewer or electrical, but instead provides access to existing bathrooms and kitchens in the rear outfitting warehouse that fronts on Plateau Drive. Such facilities, again, would have to meet the requirements of the recreational vehicle park sanitation code, and include shower facilities. Additionally, a potable water source would need to be established within 200 feet of any dwelling site, per Section 4.9.5 PC. Because the development is not bordered by any protected zones, screening would not be required, and existing plantings on the lot could be counted for towards any landscaping requirement. In conducting due diligence on the property, the planning determined, planning department concluded that the structures that appear to sit on the property line were destructed in 1959, prior to the adoption of the Land Use Code, or first zoning code in 1978, and as such, would not have had to meet any setback requirements that exist now. We have communicated a path forward to the applicant, though, if they wanted to fix that issue. Particular questions on this application?
Do you know if it's currently being used for us? I mean, without the improvements, are people?
Yes. Yes. I absolutely.
Any other question or comment on this one? All right, I think you can move on to number four. Yeah.
Oh, Henry threw a lot loads. This application is an ATO that proposes seven full hookup, full hookup RV dwelling sites, and common area that includes a barbecue and picnic table. The property is currently vacant and measures 0.56 acres, and the proposed development is located at the end of a 20-foot wide fire access easement, which serves the rear two properties. The property is located within the preferred large lot residential zoning district, and is bound by single-family dwellings on half-acre lots, with the exception of the west boundary, which abuts a property zone as Highway Commercial. As designed, the development envelope adheres to the required large lot residential front yard setbacks and side and rear. Measuring 20 by 30, each of the seven dwelling sites meets the required minimum 600 square foot dwelling site, and provides for two parking spaces adjacent to each site. Serving more than four dwelling sites, an internal driveway would likely be required for the development to provide full access to all sites, and the internal driveway is required to be properly framed and be durable and dust-free, because the development is bordered on several sides by Protected Zone District, LLR, so it would be required to complete screening for any of those property lines. The seven dwelling sites at 600 square feet each constitute a lot coverage of 17% for the 0.56 acre property, which would fall under the maximum lot coverage allowed for LLR zoning, which would be 25%. The applicant has also proposed a five for filtration swale that is proposed on the northeast corner of the development to aid for any drainage needs for the development. Of course, final application and approval of that would be approved by the county engineer. While it is not located on arterial or collector, as defined by the UTMP, within, it is within close proximity to Spanish Trail Road, one block away, which is identified in the 2012 and 2030 general plan as a rural center, and is anticipated to be identified as a neighborhood commercial node in the upcoming future land use map, and this application location is roughly five miles from the city center.
Is it possible for you to pull this up on the parcel map, so people can kind of get a feel for what it looks like? If that's a pain. I might be happy to keep that up, because I might do that on a couple of other things. That's okay. Yeah, 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 we can come back to it if you want to. Yeah, I'd just like to, yeah.
Let's see. Do you want me to go ahead and do the next one?
Yeah, 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 then we, yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
If it helps, I, I have it up on my screen if.
Oh, yeah.
But, but I, I think we'd better wait for Jenna if it's.
This ITA proposes seven full hookup sites, excuse me, four full hookup sites, and a communal area that would provide a shade structure, barbecue pits, and is located on a 1.01 acre parcel. The existing structure on the property is the owner's only residence, and the subject property is located at the southwest corner of Spanish Valley Drive and Spanish Trail within a rural residential zoning district, found on two sides by rural residential properties, and is across Spanish Trail Road, excuse me, and also across Spanish Trail Road is large lot residential. Because the development is bordered on the south and west by Protected Zone District, screening would be required, as shown on the master plan, and the visual screening can be done through opaque fence, vegetated buffers, berms, or a combination. Being located on the corner, the property has two front yards, one along Spanish Valley and one along Spanish Trail Road, and two side yards. As designed, the development envelope does adhere to the required front yard setbacks on both of those streets, and 15-foot side yard property setbacks. Measuring 20 by 30, each of the four dwelling sites meets the required minimum 20, excuse me, minimum 600 square foot, and provides for a parking space adjacent to each dwelling site. Additional gas parking has also been provided adjacent to the community guard. A circular interior driveway has been included, and the final location, access of which would be evaluated and approved by the road supervisor and fire chief due to its close proximity to the intersection. Finishing materials for such drive access, again, would be durable, dust-free, all-weather, compacted road base, et cetera. The lot coverage for the development, including the existing home and carport, is about 70, existing home, carport, and dwelling sites is about 7%, which falls well under the rural residential allowance of 25%. A 35-foot wide drainage easement is located through the center of the property, which is identified as a Zone A drainage per FEMA, and area of minimal flood hazard risk. The location of that area has been shown on the plan to ensure that the development on the property occurs outside of such area. And then FEMA only requires development permits of the area if it is equal or greater to 50 lots or five acres. While it's located in a rural residential zoning district, not a preferred zoning district, the corner property is located on a major collector, Spanish Trail Road, as defined by the UTMP, and is centrally located, having direct access to Spanish Trail Road, which is identified in the 2012 and 2030 general plan as a rural center, is anticipated to be a neighborhood node in the future land use map. And this property is roughly five miles from the city center as well. Just a small note, during the due diligence of our department, we did inform the applicant that this shipping container that exists right along the road frontage would need to be moved to, and had no problems with that at all.
Just out of curiosity, when I, when I looked at that, was that a, is that a community rebuild?
Yeah. I, I think so, yes.
It is.
Yeah. Maybe, Kevin, you could assist on that when we get to it?
Yeah, I could, I can share my screen whenever you like.
Several graphics provided with this next application on Powerhouse, but I think this one might give the best overview of the lots that are, or the dwellings that are included. So this is located at 1435 Powerhouse Lane. The overall property is 8.19 acres in a rural residential zoning district. The 8.19 acres straddles both sides of the Powerhouse Lane, with a split of 6.37 acres on the south side portion of Powerhouse Lane, and 1.82 acres on the doors. The property is. The property is our R zoning district and adjacent to the city of Moab and vacant property to the north and south. The city's 24 lot Mill Creek Village PUD development is situated along Powerhouse Lot, Powerhouse Lane along with a few single family dwellings. The city's 93 unit Abbey subdivision is also forthcoming and fronting Mill Creek Drive and Powerhouse Lane. Whilst not situated on an arterial or collector street per the UTMP, the development is close, within close proximity to Mill Creek Drive and minor collector for the UTMP and provides direct access to the town center. The ITA proposes the addition of 11 dwelling sites north of Powerhouse Lane and three dwelling sites south of Powerhouse Lane. Each providing the required parking space for the dwelling sites. The dwelling sites on the north portion of the property are provided, are provided with a two acre, excuse me, two access inter driveway and are situated outside of 20 foot pipeline easement at the front of the property and a 20 foot irrigation easement to the rear. There's also a Zone A 100 year flood zone, a FEMA designation just to the rear of the developments on the north and just beyond the 20 foot irrigation easement abutting of the development. This portion of the development includes five tiny home dwellings and three RV dwelling sites. The additional three tiny home dwelling sites are proposed south of Powerhouse Lane on the far east corner. And due to the proximity of nearby rock formations of these sites, the need for rockfall hazard study would be determined by the county engineer during the site plan application. Development of the property per our zoning district would permit eight dwelling units overall. So with the proposal of 11 dwelling sites, the ADO development proposes a density slightly higher than what the current zoning permits. The lot coverage of the property based on proposed dwelling sites is about 3% well under what would be allowed. Both portions of the development north and south of Powerhouse Lane are compliant with all the lot design standards and minimum lot standards for the developments. And all sites do propose full sewer, water, and electrical hookups. There were quite a few graphics here, so if you'd like me to. Since the far west side of the development. Far east side. Questions I can answer?
You don't have any questions or comments on the Powerhouse Lane?
Next application is proposed by Vicki Tompkins. It's located across two properties, 2666 and 2888 Desert Road. The combined size of the property is 1.89 acres and is located in an LLR large lot residential zoning district. The proposal includes 19 full hookup tiny home sites. Each compliant with the required dimension standards of a minimum of 20 feet wide and ranging between 600 square feet and 1,200 square feet in total. Each of the proposed sites includes the required parking and is situated around the preferred circular internal driveway. The final design of which would be approved by the road supervisor and fire chief again due to the proximity to the intersection. The development is proposed again within the large lot residential zoning districts. As designed, the development envelope does adhere to the requirements of the LLR zoning district for front, side, and rear property lines. Any other property lines adjacent to a protected zone districts of LLR would require the buffering per land use code. And the property line immediately to the west is highway commercial and as such would not require such buffering. The lot coverage for the development, including the square footage of all dwelling sites, is 16% for the 1.89 acre property falling under the maximum allowance of 25%. And while a subject property is not located on an arterial or collector for the UTMP, the development provides easy access to Mesa Road and Highway 191. Two blocks away. Close proximity to the highway would likely minimize residents traversing through the neighborhood and access to the city center is about five miles away. The applicant did state that if their application moves forward, additional amenities such as a pocket park, community garden, playground space, or picnic space would be included in the master plan and subsequent site plan application.
So the west side is commercial and the east side is what?
Large lot residential.
Jenna, if they, if they commit to tiny homes, are they held to that? So meaning let's say we go through and then all of a sudden they're like, yeah, it's too expensive. We just want to do RVs. Because I'm, I'm not that excited about this because of that. I used to live on Desert Road. I, I, I'm struggling with Desert Road. But that specific spot is, you know, it's right behind Sage Creek, et cetera, and so on. And if it were tiny homes, I think I'd be, you know, a little more receptive to that it's. You know, anyways, but.
Say, no, they wouldn't be tied to that particular type of dwelling because, for example, per the building code, the exchange of that type of unit and RV plugged into those utilities, you know, traded out, it's really just a.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay.
Any other questions on that one?
This, excuse me, this proposal was originally submitted during the first round of ITAs in January. But at that time was not giving support, given support by the commission to move forward with the full rezon application. This application proposal is at 28, excuse me, 2980 Spanish Valley Drive and is on a property 2.0 acres and the proposal is for seven sites. The applicant's purpose for resubmitting during the second ITA is to highlight the proposal as it relates to the proposed neighborhood commercial nodes identified in the draft future land use plan, which includes Spanish Trail intersection and surrounding area. The applicant's narrative highlights the recent takeaways from the future land use plan public workshops as well as input provided by the land use code, excuse me, land use steering committee, which identified this area as an ideal location for increased residential density. Again, proposing seven dwelling sites to be developed as traditionally built or pre manufactured tiny homes, the subject property is two acres on Spanish Valley Drive. In 2012 and 2030 general plan, both identified this area as a rural center node in regards to future development, which calls for neighborhood retail, local commercial, local tourism, and increased residential of up to 3.2 units per acre if providing open space and affordable housing. The proposed development would increase the density of the property from one unit per acre to four units per acre, including the existing home. Regarding screening, screening along the property lines that abut the protected zone district of rural residential would be required. As designed, the development envelope does adhere to the required setbacks. The proposed dwelling sites range in size from 600 square feet to 1,200 square feet and required parking for each site outside of the dwelling spaces is provided for the preliminary master plan. A additional guest parking is also proposed. The lot coverage for the existing home and four accessory structures, seven dwelling sites and community pavilion is estimated at 12,000 square feet and is a total of 13.7% lot coverage falling under the maximum allowed of 25% for rural residential. Each site is located along a circular driveway with two access points along Spanish Valley Drive identified as a major collector for the UTMP. And the site is 3.7 miles away from the Maverick located at intersection 191 and 400 east. With the addition of seven dwelling sites, there is some additional traffic impact anticipated. There is a community pavilion proposed which would serve for a gathering space for residents and additional laundry as well. Individual sewer, water, and electric is proposed for each site and of course the required screening would be included vegetation at the next stage of evaluation.
Were there any changes in the proposal from the last time it came up in January to this one?
No, it is the same.
They just wanted to bring it back up and re-highlight. Yeah. Any other questions on this one? All right, I think that means we've gone through everything. Like Trish said, it would be nice to see the, yeah, I don't know if, if you have that up Jenna or Kevin can provide it.
What was the total number requested through all these applications?
I thought 88? Eighty something? Eighty-two through this, during this, thank you.
Seventy-three to give, yeah.
Yeah, and a third round, and a third round.
Yeah, and the third round is.
Maybe not, maybe not.
Yeah, so do you, I was having trouble recalling how we did that in, in January. Do we just do like a straw poll on each of these, have a discussion on each one?
Do each one and do a straw poll? I, I could say for myself. Those are one, two, and three are pretty straightforward and I don't, I, you know, I'd be down. I would, I, I could easily put those three together and say that I would support those.
I like that idea. Get to the point and maybe knock some, some of the lower hanging fruit off the tree.
That's how we did it last time.
Right, that's, that's right. Does, and Mary's, yeah, highway commercial right on, right on Highway 191.
It fits, you know, it really fits.
So Mary's proposing just green lighting proposals one, two, and three. Anyone here have any comment on that or any, I guess, any objection to, to those three?
Uh, not an objection, but if we were trying to kind of preserve some units for other projects, what about bringing some of the numbers lower? I think, how many were on the KOA one?
Twenty-one.
I, I will say that if we look back at the three that we approved at the last session, all three of those, I believe, had more than this particular KOA and if we, if, if we start kind of limiting, it seems to me like this KOA is, for example, I'd rather see 21 sites at this KOA maybe than even the swamp, which we approved 28 for. Or the other one, I think there was 32. So for me, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it personally, but, but I mean, it's, it's a point. Kevin not opposed, I was just throwing out ideas.
Maybe we should wait to see how many were inclined to give the green light to and then at the end see if, you know, reexamine the numbers.
So, but I, I support those, we can. And then if we want to reexamine the numbers when we're done.
And so that, there, there's three include 34 sites, which would still put us 40, 39, 39 sites away from our current limit. So any, any, I'd be happy to just move forward and kind of give the thumbs up to those three for now.
You want to do straw poll?
Um, I didn't hear any objections. I'm comfortable with that. Okay. All right, then let's go forward and look at, I guess we'll go down the list and go to site number four and that is the, the Desert Road. Right, and this, this is the one that Trish wanted. Yeah, that's, there we go, right there.
So I have quite a few issues with this. I used to live actually just across the street. Um, um, you know, it's not a major arterial or collector. It is, it is near Spanish Trail, but it's, it's not, it is not compatible with the character. And the other concern about this one is it being a flag lot. You know, so is that correct? It's back there at the back of that. I mean, that, that's a concern in the sense like all that traffic's going to be going past those other residences to get to that. So I just, not a fan.
I, I guess I'm also not, not a fan of this one. I, I think when we were just discussing the ADO, there was a concern that we, you know, we were plopping down a bunch of, you know, basically putting residential RV parks in the middle of existing neighborhoods and, and I think the consensus was, no, that wasn't our intention. You know, that we were going to look for places where the impact on neighbors would be minimized. This has residential areas on three, actually four sides because the highway commercial plot to the southwest is also a residence weirdly. But, but in any case, certainly on three sides. And so to me, it just, this just seems like, I don't know, you know, it's not, it's not like the swamp. It's not like most of the others that we've approved so far. So I, I agree with Trish that I would be hesitant to approve this one.
Yeah, I, I, I went out and just got a flavor for the neighborhood also and drove around and I'd, I'd agree with, with Trish and Kevin that it didn't seem to fit that particular area as well as, as well as some of the other sites do. So I'd be, I'd be reticent as well.
But it seems to me like it fits in there fairly well. I mean, you've got two big parcels. One's got a shop on it. The other one, not quite sure that a horse arena there. There is neighbors to what looks like the north of it there, but certainly not in the middle of a subdivision somewhere. It's about potential to put some people into spaces and lines.
Yeah, I, I, I like the idea of getting the most out of this we can, but sticking with this. So I could see something working here, but sticking with the cap that we have. I think there's other projects that are more attractive to me than this one.
It was, just remind me again, it was one, two, three, four, five. It was seven sites. Okay.
Seven sites. Not a whole lot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a small, it feels, when you drive down Desert Road, it feels like a, it's residential.
It's very residential. It's a very quiet neighborhood.
Well, sorry. But somebody, what am I saying, ADO out there, so we need to fill up some spots.
Right, but again, this is only our second round. We have more rounds. We are filling them up. I just, you know, I think we can be strategic in how we're filling them up and not disrupt, you know, neighborhoods.
Yeah, I definitely agree with what Trish just, just said. I mean, we, we certainly have a strong need to find spots for this type of thing, but so far we've managed to do it without having as much of, you know, a big impact on adjacent residential areas. And I think, you know, between this round and then, and the next round. Yeah, I'm hoping we can continue to do that.
Any other?
People coming forward in the next round yet?
Not yet, I would anticipate that.
So would I.
Yeah. Um, all right, any other comment on this one? I would take a straw poll on this, just a thumbs up, thumbs down, everybody? So it looks like, and Kevin's a thumbs down. Looks like we're kind of on the, on the, on the brink, but it looks, it looks more like a thumbs down than a, than a thumbs up to me. But again, this is and we can come back to this in our, in our, we, we will do the final approval in our meeting when we have the actual action items. So just, just getting a flavor here. So, thanks Jenna. All right, and let's move on to number five then.
That's the one with some of the corner of Spanish Trail and Spanish Valley, right?
Right.
I know that street well.
Yeah.
Many of us.
It's on the screen now.
Yes, this is the one that was on the corner of Spanish Trail and Spanish Valley Drive. It's an interesting property. When I went and looked at it, has the, the drainage kind of that goes right through the middle of it, kind of separates the residents from where this was proposed.
I, I mean, my concern, and I'll just make a statement, I drive by there five times a day. There's a lot of illegal camping going on there already right now. And maybe this will clean it up. That's, that would be a positive. Um, or maybe it would add to it. I don't know. But right now, like even yesterday, there was like four vans parked outside the property. It was just like, what the heck is going on in there? And but again, maybe, maybe it'll clean it up. I'm just making an observation. I obviously. I obviously have not walked and knocked on doors and made sure that, but there's a lot of, lot going on on that property, um.
Were, were they camped in the area that's proposed for the sites right now, Trish?
No, that, that, I mean, people are inside and outside, so they put a really nice fence around the whole property, which is really nice, um. But there, there's people inside and outside.
Yeah.
Lots of.
Yeah, I'm a bit on the fence on this one, I, I, kind of, it's nice, it's on Spanish Trail, so it's easy access to the, to, to getting out, it doesn't, and it's. It doesn't look like it would depend on other residents per se so much, and it is only four sites, so um. To me, those are things going for it, uh, yeah.
I won't vote for it, um. I'm, I guess I'm a little torn too, so if this is a community rebuilds house, I guess I'm, I'm. Okay, so what's your concern?
Entered into this house at a reduced.
Right.
Reduced cost, due to under a community rebuilds, you built the house.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I guess maybe, but again, I don't know anything about those contracts, it has nothing to do with us, um.
I definitely wondered about that too, I, I had concerns.
I've always seen community rebuilds as an opportunity for people to like build equity, you know, and it's like if you were someplace and you, you know. Couldn't progress living in a fifty-year-old trailer, there was another option, and so I just kind of see this as kind of going further with that, you know, I think. If, if they're able to, to capitalize, I, I don't know the, the. The fine print on their uh, um.
Yeah, their mortgage or their.
Past, that doesn't mean they should be. Realized in the future.
Uh, yeah, to me, I think if it is, if it's not in a contract that they can't do something like this, or if it doesn't affect the, I don't know, the financing or whatever, then, then, then.
I mean, I, I think the point of the program was to give people a leg on it.
It could have even been sold, it might not be the original owner, I mean, without quizzing them, and even if it was, it's still allowing them to stir step up, that's.
Yeah, absolutely, Bill. Did you have any thoughts on this, Kevin?
Um, I, I think again, this has, you know, relatively low density residential on three sides. Like a lot of these proposals, so I, I think for that reason alone, I, I would put this near the bottom of my list. But I, I think a, another consideration is kind of unique to this, is we, there's been a lot of talk over the past few years of some kind of, you know. Rural center development around, you know, either the intersection of Spanish Trail with either Spanish Valley or Mesa Road or Highway one ninety-one. You know, I think all of those intersections have been kind of highlighted for places where we might want to see. I don't know, you know, coffee shops or some kind of development, but if that's ever going to hap- but right now, most of that is properties, a lo- a lot of them are residential. And so if that, you know, vision of a center is, is ever going to come to fruition, then it's going to require. You know, I, I think some kind of planned development of residential parcels, and this is probably number one on the list. So I, I, I guess it's, you know, it's easy enough to kick people off their trailer spots if we decide we want to go. Some other direction in the future, and there's a willing, you know, owner of the lot, but I, I, but, but some, I, it just seems incompatible to me to. Doing this kind of high-density residential development in a area that we're also talking about doing commercial development, so.
Thanks. Any other comment on this one before I do a quick straw poll? Alright, I'll do the uh, the same situation, how does everyone feel about this one?
You know, I, I can't see people's thumbs, um.
Oh, sorry Kevin, we have, uh, so right now Evan and I are both uh leaning towards, three of us are neutral, two, two down and, and one up. So this.
It's already a busy street. Used a lot. Easy access, uh, it's going to be next to the bike track trail real soon. Bike trail's going to go, not real soon, but hopefully sooner than later. I mean, it's going to make it so they can commute to town easily on the bike trail, and uh. We have a rural crossing that far back, you know, anyway, that's why I'm.
So it looks like we're firmly in the middle on this one. I think we're on the middle leaning towards deny on this one, is what it looked like, um, so.
Three maybes and one yes.
Alright, so we'll move on to number, I guess we're on number six, right? And, and I'll say for me, these not, being a little bit nebulous on some of these is, is good, because it kind of gives an overall picture, I think, when we're looking at all these, when we get into the. Into the, you know, the action item where we actually will, will, will vote on it, it's good to kind of get an overall picture. Six. Was definitely the most interesting one to me.
Did I hear correctly Jenna, that there's a problem with the three sites to the east because of the steep slope there?
It's a problem, it's just something that will be evaluated during this.
So uh, discussion on this one, I guess I went out and looked at it, I, it's kind of, I mean, the, I think the sites on the north side along the creek there. Would be just beautiful places to, to be, and it does.
Down in there.
It's tucked down in there, and it, it kind of, I mean, people, I remember when I first moved to town, there were people kind of hanging out in that area camping, they had their old trailers and. Um, so I, I really, I like the, the five over there, the, the other three, I definitely was less um stoked about, I guess. Just going up the road and um, you know, they're, they're so much closer to the parking lot there and, and it, it would. Uh, definitely changed the flavor of that side of the road a, a little bit, but, but I don't know, I'd, I'd love to hear what you guys think.
I think it's, you know, it's a traditional use throughout the area. That's how I looked at it, you know, when I moved here, it was traditional, traditional use.
Right.
Funky little place.
It was a funky little place.
Some pretty cool people live there.
I knew some people who lived there too, yeah. Kevin, Kevin said he actually lives in one of those trailers.
Yeah, maybe a little bit. Um, I just think I would also note that the, these proposal locations are um, you know, they're, they're not right next. I, I don't think the existence of these things is going to have a big impact on um, you know, many existing residences, so I'm. You know, I guess we, weekly in favor of this one, I, I do, I, I, I'm out of town, so I wasn't able to visit the site, and I think Jacques was saying that the. Three to the east might be more problematic, and I guess one option we have is just not to approve those three sites, and only approve the others.
Or, or they can also, I mean, this is just an intent to apply, it doesn't, it's not a final thumbs up either, so when it comes back, it's, it'll, it's another, it's another discussion. As we saw with the first, the first group. Miller, Evan, do you guys care to weigh in or have any thoughts?
I don't have anything negative against it.
Yeah.
I was just trying to catch up with what you guys were saying about the three on the south side of the, or the east.
Right.
Kind of how far towards the B L M parking lot those are. Um, I just thought that she had mentioned something about there was an issue.
It was, it would have to be studied.
Yeah, I, I uh. I feel alright about it, and I'm kind of intrigued also about maybe looking at uh these three on the south side. If they're appropriate there, what that might look like. Um, but the ones that are tucked between the, the road and the creek, I, I see that as. Yeah, kind of with the traditional use and. It would be a sweet spot to be, so.
It would be a pretty cool spot to hunker down and hang out and rub for three months and do some work and.
Yeah, I mean, if you got to live in a tra- or if you choose to live in a trailer in July, that would be a good spot.
Right. Yeah.
Camped out, it's.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's. Yeah, no, it's nice right there, some big cottonwoods down there too, it looks like. Um, alright, uh, quick straw poll on this one, and I guess we'll just do, we. We can just do the, the entirety of it, or if anyone really has any comments about the three, I don't know, so, straw poll? This looks like a pretty, pretty solid thumbs up on this one. That's alright, okay, so the next one is the one on the, uh, yeah, the next one is the one on the corner of. Of Desert Road and, was that Mesa, right, yeah.
I mean, again, I don't think it conforms to the character, it is surrounded by residences on three sides. Sage Creek is to the west, there's that, it does have Mesa Road, which, you know, is a fairly. Large road now connecting Sage Creek to the highway. And I guess, you know, if I knew it was going to be tiny home, so something a little more.
Permanent?
Permanent, I'd be, but if we can't guarantee that, then I'm, I'm not, not that excited.
Can you guarantee that at the next round when we, you can't, okay, so even, even when the uh. I mean, not the next round, but you know, the next step in the process, the public hearing, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I thought that they had to submit a master plan, and then they were committed to live within the parameters of the master plan, so. Yeah, I mean, someone from P and Z, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think once they say we're going to put this type of unit in this place, they're locked into that, right?
It's designated on the master plan, yes, um, the development agreements don't include that kind of detail of dwelling type, just the regular dwelling sites.
But I, but we, we've done that kind of on purpose to keep them so that they were interchangeable in case they. Went, got to a certain point, and if it didn't matter one way or the other, if it was tiny homes or R Vs, that they could change without having to go back and re. And amend their um rezone and master plan, but I think it, it wouldn't be. It would be doable to include that um housing type in the development agreement, don't you think Jenna? If, if that was desired to do that.
My only thought would be to the applicants that were already through round one.
I think, I think part of the crux. I think part of the challenge with it too is that it's a really thin line between like what's a park model R V and what's a tiny home, and what's, I mean, it's all kind of like. Really what we're regulating is like what's on the ground, like here's a cement pad and a hookup and a, you know.
Yeah, I think about, I have a friend that lives, oh, I, running down near Tom Toms, and he's got four tiny homes next to him. And um, it's, it's not great, it's a big impact on his property, but that, they're, you know, they've been put in place in such a way that. They're actually fairly attractive, they're well-made, and so, you know, um.
So, but if I understood Lisa correctly, she's saying that if we wanted to, I mean. We could write the development agreement in such a way that it does try to pin down the type of dwelling unit more than.
There's tiny homes, there's tiny homes, right, there's some that are on chassis and some that are more permanent.
That's.
Uh, okay, great, gotcha.
We, we also kitty corner from this project, the Mandeville subdivision just finally was allowed under the H D H O. To me, this is a great spot for it, this is, I'm not sure Jenna, what is your big blue rectangle, does it say right there?
Mesa minor.
I, I'll say, I, I wasn't expecting to like this when I went out to the site visit, but when I looked around and saw the, kind of the whole area. I, I think it's actually a pretty good site for this myself. It does, it butts up against nightly rentals, it's, it's really close to the highway, it's actually a really. Quick, quick buzz to the highway, it looks like the residents would be. Yeah.
The nightly rental had to do the uh turn offs on the highway, or the lane outs on the highway, so. Some traffic over there.
Yeah, and the, and the.
It's, it's huge.
Didn't Mandeville end up with five on that little piece across the road, so which I think it's.
In the blue?
No, it's kitty corners, it's the one I did, I was asking her what the blue was, but um, Mandeville is where she just highlighted there. And they've been in that process for what, it took her two or three years to get that pushed through. Mostly because of the width of the road right there.
Any other comment on this one? Alright, another straw poll or thumbs, thumbs poll, how do you guys feel about this? And Kevin?
I guess, I, I lean, I lean against it again because it's.
Okay.
Because of residential issues, but I, I didn't make the site visit, so I, I'm partly swayed by what Jacques said, that it felt okay to him when he was there, so.
So it looks like we had a four thumbs up on that one, so that's, and then three, two down and a, or at least one down and a couple of. Maybes, so, yeah, it, it looks like we're leaning towards approving this one, maybe not solidly. Yeah.
One, two, three.
Right.
Seven.
Yeah, six, yeah, okay, we'll move on to number eight. And this is the one that uh is coming up again, I uh, we had previously denied it at the January. Intend to apply on, it's on Spanish Valley Drive. And I guess my personal thinking hasn't changed a whole lot on this, and if, if the ones that I kind of am looking at. Proving pass, we'd still have roughly maybe fifteen or twenty to approve at the next meeting, if it goes that way. Yes, Mike?
Is, is this just a few lots now?
It's a few lots, it looked like it was, there was two lots between.
Yeah, it's probably right next door to it, um, yeah, I mean, I just wrote the same, not compatible with existing character, it's obviously rural. Slash flat out ag, um, you know, so across the street is White Ranch and.
To me, a little bit of the difference between this one and the one on the corner was the one on the corner, those, those lots opened up right onto Spanish Valley Drive, so it's. Yeah, um, this one felt a little less compatible with the area around there. Um, it's not, I don't, it's not terrible to me, but yeah, Mike.
I agree with the little less compatible area, we are looking towards, you know, more density in this area in the future. And that corner is not, not used for anything, it's, I mean, it's.
The corner where this lot is, you're saying. Yeah.
And I, I see it not posing problems with the neighbors because I've spoken to the neighbors. Yeah, it's my family. Yeah, yeah, it, it actually like one farther down, you know.
Okay, that makes.
A neighbor to the south, I don't think you're going to be impacted by them either.
But it is active.
So what?
Oh, the white, right, I saw that. Kevin or Evan, any, any thoughts on this one?
I also probably like the one on the corner a little better than this one, maybe it's just the number and the density. But I think I had warm support for it in the last round, and I'm kind of in the same boat. Not going to like, put on the gloves for it, but.
Yeah, I, I guess I also lean against this one, just because I, I think we can do better, so. And I, I guess I, I wouldn't mind coming out of this meeting with, you know, at least thirty units still to give in the third round, so, and.
Alright, thumbs poll? Mary, did you have any?
Yeah, I uh. I'll put thumbs down, because I do think, I do think it would be, and if, and they can re, they can put it in again next time, and we might. Say, well, this is the one that's going to hit our seventy-five or wherever.
Right, right.
And, but I think, I like the one that goes on Spanish Valley, Spanish Trail better, just because of the access to.
Okay, so it looks like we're leaning deny on this, but with some, some, for this round, support for this round, right, okay. Alright, I think that gives us a pretty good idea of how everyone feels, we have time to think about it, and then we will have our action item. Yeah, absolutely.
And some of the numbers of the units.
Right. Pull something up with the numbers on it.
The first three, that's thirty-four.
Yeah.
And then we all like the powerhouse lane, and that makes it forty-five, so if we approve. So if we approve those four, that would be 45 units, leaving us what?
Uh, leaving us 28. And then it there, it looked like there was decent support for number seven on Desert Drive. That was an additional 19. So that would mean that if we approved those five, that would bring us to, uh, leaving 26 for the next round. Yes, Mike?
Again, revisiting, we've made that number.
Yes.
We made cap.
Right.
How hard is it to adjust that cap?
Well, it's, it's a question of, the reason we, like we did with the HDHO is we can make sure it works.
Right.
And then, because then if we make sure it works, we're not at a thousand units, you know?
Right.
And so this way we can make sure the deed, we, you know, that we can enforce it, that we can do the different types of things.
Inside this, is there a, is there any form of use of, use it? Uh, like, put all sites on the ground or don't get it?
We have two years to complete the infrastructure for it.
Okay.
Okay, at that year, there, that you would lose the, lose the capability.
But, but it's.
Thank you. They come back and reapply or ask for extensions.
Okay. But it is a pilot and we'd have to re-approve the program, right? To, uh, to continue with it.
And it makes.
Or amend the land use code.
And it makes me nervous until we've had some on their ground and we found out how they work.
I want to see, I want to see them about it.
Yes.
But Mallory, adjusting the numbers would mean adjusting land use code and having public hearings and all the.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be easy.
It wouldn't be easy.
Yeah, yeah.
Not on a tangible lead.
Right, yeah.
Well, it'd be good to see if they're.
I'd like to see some.
Right.
Yeah.
Make sure. Yes.
Um, so there's like a four preferred now?
It, yeah, I think, I think, I think the definite one through three, as well as the powerhouse, which is number six, look like that they're going to be easy to pass.
And then 45, number 40, that would give us 45 units.
That would give us 45 units. And then the, the other one that looks reasonable was, or it looked like it had reasonable support was number seven, and that was 19 units. Um, and if we did that, then it would leave us with 26, so that means we'd have approved at this point 124 units. And so there'd be potentially 26 coming back at the next round. But again, like we saw before, maybe there'd be a reason, uh, when we have the public hearings, et cetera, that something might get denied. So it's, again, it's hard to.
Right.
I also, I mean, that, the Spanish Valley corner one?
Yeah.
And that was only four units?
It was, right, so if that one was approved, then it would cut it down to 22.
I mean, that one almost, especially with its position on, uh, uh, Feeding Street, thoroughfare with the bike path.
Odd law.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
It's, uh.
It's got potential.
It almost might have less of a footprint in my mind than the one behind Sage Creek. So, uh, the, the other, the second desert road one. So I'm a little torn between those two, so.
Is it an either or for you, Evan?
Uh, no, but, um, no, it's not an either or.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I think in terms of just like a footprint and impacting neighborhoods, it's kind of easier for me to say, oh, these four little places inside a fence, you know, at a busy intersection.
It's a busy intersection.
Isn't as much as, but like I said, I'd like to see a lot of them come online. So, um, I'm kind of okay with both of them, I guess, and then saving, uh, fewer for the next round. But maybe that's some of the strategy. Maybe we sit on some and save more for the next round and ask these guys to come back.
The nice thing about having them approve though is that they can get, you know, settled to dirt a lot faster.
Yeah.
Which is, you know.
Yeah. All right, any, any other discussion on this before we, we'll take a quick recess, you know, when we wrap this up and then we'll come back to it. And this will be, I believe it's our, is our first agenda item? Yeah.
Is it worth this, I mean, how are we going to structure the voting at the main meeting? Just maybe do the easy ones in one motion and then individual motions for the others?
I think that's how we did last time, yeah, right.
So make a motion for number one, two, three and seven.
It's all got unanimous.
As one.
Let's do one.
Or one, two, three, six, or, yeah.
Let's just do one, two, three.
Okay.
If that's okay. If that's okay.
If we know what we're going for, we could get them all in one and then just not have motions on the others.
What do you think, three are all the highway commercials? So I do think, yeah, it's an easier.
Yeah, that's.
And then we, like, we can just quickly.
To bundle them, quickly check off number six and then, or, yeah, depending on how it goes.
Do we want to get into the nitty gritty of the ones on the other side of the road with number six? Or do we want to wait till it comes back?
You mean the ones?
It, uh. Or the east side of powerhouse?
I, I think I'd be more comfortable doing that when we have the public hearing and, uh, and, and really approve it. Because at this point, we're just kind of giving them the, you know, the thumbs up on the project. But when it comes to the public hearing. Yeah, Jenna?
I'm sorry, you were right, one, two, three and six, I'm sorry, my bad.
Okay.
Okay.
You and me.
Did, did you guys want to talk a little further about, I guess the next one on the list was the, uh, was the 19 unit one at the corner of Mason Desert?
Great location.
17 right next to nightly rentals.
One side. On one side. The other three sides are residential, I'm just going to state that. And if you, if you drive out there, you would see that.
Yeah.
Again, if, if they're tiny homes, I think I'm more receptive to it, you know? If it's something that is a little more just solid and visually pleasing and the neighbors, you know? It's not, I'm not going to support it, but it's just me.
Yeah. And, and again, I was going out there expecting not to like it, but just, just getting a feel for it, kind of walking around a little bit. I, I'm not as solidly as some of the other ones, but I, but I think I'd, I'd be in favor of this one myself.
So you'd be in favor of number seven too?
I, I think I would be, yeah. But I think we should vote on that separately because there's dissent.
So I could make a motion or somebody could make a motion to accept, uh, number one, two, three and six. And then we should go one by one, that was four, five, seven, seven, eight.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, because you can see it.
Sounds good.
Can I pop in?
You could probably run that into the seat larger. Any, any, I think, I, I personally think, um, my mind's pretty good for the, uh, for the meeting or any other discussion or questions before we adjourn for a few minutes and come back? Okay, I will, uh, adjourn the workshop and we will reconvene our regular commission meeting at four o'clock. Thanks, everybody.
Actually, I had the other one up. Did you do the Thompson? Okay, everybody, we're ready to go. It's four oh one and I will call to order this regular. Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District meeting. Present, we have in our chambers Commissioner Clapper, Winfield, Hedin, McCurdy, McGann, and myself, Hadler, as well as online. We have Commissioner Walker. Online, we also have County Attorney Stocks in the chambers. We have Clerk Boytek and our County Administrator Mallory Nassau, as well as Associate Administrator Quinn Hall. Okay, I will open a Citizens to be Heard session and this is Citizens to be Heard for the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. Anyone here care to speak on Thompson? Anyone online here for Thompson? All right, it looks like we don't have anyone here to speak on the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. Citizens to be Heard, so we'll move on to approval of meeting minutes from our April eighteenth meeting. Yes, Mary?
I move to approve the minutes from April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three for the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion to approve the meetings, Commissioner McGann, and seconded by Commissioner Hedin. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, raise your hand. And if you could, if I could see Commissioner Walker online, that'd be great.
I vote yes.
Thank you. All right, that passes unanimously. We'll move on to ratification of payment of bills for Thompson. Total bills in the amount of ten thousand eighty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents, total payroll in the amount of one thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-two cents. For combined bills and payroll of eleven thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
So moved as stated.
Thank you. Second, I have a motion by Commissioner McGann, a second by Commissioner McCurdy. Any discussion on Thompson bills? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. We are on to the Fire Chiefs Report, and unfortunately Chief Markham wasn't able to join us today. But he did pass along his report, which I will read. So the May sixteenth report, on April twenty-first, there was a carbon monoxide leak in an RV at Thompson. At the Thompson seven-eleven parking lot. On the twenty-second of April. Truck versus fuel pump bollard at the Thompson seven-eleven. I'm not sure exactly what that means, but it doesn't sound good. Okay.
Thank you.
Right, now I get it. All right. Yes. On May second, there was a vehicle fire on I seventy at mile marker one ninety-three. On May sixth, an MVA. Okay, an accident on Highway ninety, one ninety-one at mile marker one fifty. And on the same day, there's a motor vehicle accident on Highway I seventy at mile marker two oh three. And on the tenth of May, they responded to a medical call at the Thompson seven-eleven.
What's that? Seven-eleven is.
Yeah. And dangerous, apparently. Equipment on April twenty-seventh, picked up engine forty-one and mid fails, so it's back in Thompson and in service. That's great news. Training on May tenth, there's hazmat training with the Moab Valley Fire Department. And in other news, Chief Markham will be working with the Moab Valley Fire Department and Team Rubicon on hazardous fuels reduction in Moab. Today and tomorrow, so that's where Chief Markham is. So thanks to Chief Markham and much appreciation for that. Yeah, Mary?
This is the problem. Does anybody know how many people are here from Team Rubicon?
That's interesting. I'm not sure. I saw that they're here. They're at a.
They're they're working kind of, how many people are here?
From Team Rubicon.
I know that they're kind of working there right behind the.
And they're staying at the arena?
There was a sign on the arena welcoming them, but I'm not actually sure.
I think it would be real. I think it'd be really nice to take and give each one of them one of those really nice stickers from them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And thank them for their volunteer service. And they're here tomorrow. I'll take that on.
Great, thank you, Mary. Okay, so it looks like we have no new business or old business. Anybody have a future consideration for Thompson? And seeing none, I will adjourn our Thompson Special Service District meeting. And I will call to order our regular Grand County Commission meeting of May sixteenth. At four oh seven, all present are everyone who is present at the Thompson meeting. And I don't think we have anyone additionally on. So let us all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we'll now have a citizens to be heard. And this is a regular Grand County Commission. So if there's anyone who would like to come forward to be heard, please come forward. Yes, sir. Yeah, if you would, you may do what you prefer. And please, yes, state your name and then you have three minutes to comment.
My name's Mike Hewitt. I wanted to address the development on the corner of Desert and Mesa. I believe it's number seven. The nineteen units. So I would be the owner and the builder and the manager of that property. I live right next door. So I'm also a custom home builder. So all of those units would be custom built by my company. They would be permanent rentals only. Never to be sold to provide housing. The intent was to make that piece of property not only profitable for the cost of the property itself. But to. Sage Creek has expressed great interest in that property and our property. They tried to buy it from us many times. So we want to do something that we can live next door to, you know, so that was the main. Driver in us putting together this plan. We've talked about maybe doing access out of that little community onto Mesa Road instead of desert. Because Mesa's bigger, you know, it's just, it's just a nice big road. Let's see. Yeah, so they would be permanent dwelling units. Nice custom built. We wanted to do a community center. We want to do a low cover pavilion where people could gather, maybe on the back of the property, but make it really, really nice. Something literally, you know, we could live next door to. So if that was minded ease a little bit, I know you expressed some concern about being traded. I don't want to live next to a trailer park. So that would not be, they would not be moved.
So that was for nineteen units, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The nineteen units, and that was waived, so.
In your home is the little cutout that's right on the corner.
postage stamp right up there.
Right, right.
Yes. Yeah, so that's us. So we just, like I said, Sage Creek has expressed great interest in trying to get, expand their, you know, their spot. Which, you know, we obviously did not sell to them, but they really want that that piece of property. So we collectively kind of came up with. An idea of how we can use that property and live next door to it. I've talked to my neighbors and they've all. You know, thumbs up, they like the idea. Don't want a trailer park, nobody does. So the the designs that we put together and the ideas was very well receptive. And like I said, they'll be custom built. They'll be, they'll be very nice looking.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for your comment, Mike.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. All right, anyone else like to come up and make comment? Courtney, all right.
Hi, I'm Courtney Kaiser. I was helping with a couple of the applications for ADO today. But the thing I wanted to mention to you now is that a bird in the hand is worth two in the sky. So we have all of these applications in front of us and for one reason or another, I understand that some aren't a good fit for the program. And you've expressed your reasons why, but for any that you do think that are good for the program, I really hope that you will approve them now instead of waiting until September. Because who knows what will come down the pipeline? The other reason that it's really imperative to approve things as soon as possible. Is because these things have the ability to get on the ground like that as compared to stick builds, HDHO type projects, multifamily. Those take a lot longer to find contractors and get all of the I's dotted and T's crossed. So your decision today, opposed to three months from now, actually has real immediate implications. Thank you.
Thanks, Courtney. Anyone else like to come forward and make comment? Do we have anyone on Zoom who is here for comment? Please unmute or raise your hand.
Right?
One last call on Zoom comment? All right. We will move forward to presentations. In our first presentation, we have a presentation on agricultural resources programs and grants available through the state. And we will welcome Craig Butters and Kelly Pearson from the Utah Department of Agriculture and Food. And thank you guys for coming down and presenting today.
Thank you very much. It's our pleasure to be here in Grand County and we appreciate the time that you've given us to to present on. The Department of Agriculture and Food and some of our programs. We are doing a statewide tour. And basically, I think we have about eight more counties to visit after after Grand County. But we have several different programs at the department that we want to to present to you. And some of them, we hope that at the end of our presentation, you know, we will push out towards you the links for different programs that we have at the department. That you feel might be beneficial for the citizens here in Grand County. So, excuse me. Department of Agriculture and Food dates back to eighteen ninety-six when the Board of Horticulture was created. But in nineteen twenty-one, the Department of Agriculture was formed out of several different programs that were made. So some of the things that the Department of Agriculture does, and Kelly, if you can advance that, there you go. So these are some of the things that we do. Of course, we have general stewardship for agriculture in the state. We also do inspections, many different kinds of inspections, retail and manufactured food and and even fuel pumps. Even manufactured mattresses, quilted clothing, different things like that, things that you wouldn't even consider. We do inspections on medical cannabis facilities. And so and also, we, of course, we have to regulate. And that's one of the things that, you know, we we also consider ourselves a service organization, but we do have to regulate. We have a responsibility for consumer protection. When the legislature passes laws, we have to write rules as to how we're going to implement those laws. We also do loan assistance through our Agriculture Resource Development Loan Program. We and and other programs, we have pest and disease control responsibilities and marketing and economic development. These are the divisions we have. I won't go through them, but we do have ten different divisions. And you'll see there, many of those, we will actually go into a little bit more detail on what we do in those divisions. So Kelly's going to talk a little bit about some of our other programs.
It's good to be with you, Commissioners. Thanks for having us. I'm Kelly Pearson, the Deputy Commissioner. When Governor Cox was elected and Commissioner Butters came on board, they wanted us to do a strategic plan of what the role of the Department of Ag is. And the role it plays with producers and and then what the producers' vision for agriculture in their areas for the next five to ten years. And and so it had been a long time since we did a strategic plan. So we actually toured the state. Met with different elected officials, met with the ag producers and really wanted, like I said, see the vision of ag for the next five to ten years in every area. And we came up with some goals from the strategic plan that helped us give us direction. It also helps us to be able to go to legislation and ask for funding to help us achieve these goals. And I'll talk about each of these goals. The first one is, whoops, is agristructure. Currently, if you're an ag producer and you want to harvest your cattle, you're a year, year and a half out. They're that busy harvesting and we have a lot of vegetables that leave the state to be processed and never come back to the state. So we we see the need of more food and vegetables and meat processing in the state to help us be more self-reliant and be able to help. Producers sell their local products to local people. And so agristructure is a big goal that we want to accomplish. Agriculture workforce. The average age of a producer right now is sixty-five. And this is a nationwide, almost a worldwide issue. Not a lot of young people want to get into agriculture. It's difficult. It's stressing. So we got to find ways to get people back into agriculture. And the only way we can do it is make it very profitable. We got to make it profitable. And and find easier ways. Ag land preservation. Even in rural areas, this was a big concern. Seeing the last crop that goes on ag land is houses, right? And you see a lot in Wasatch Front. Commissioner and I just got back from a tour in Israel. Where Israel built in the hills and left their ag land alone. And we've done the opposite here at Utah and mostly in the Wasatch Front. And I think we're going to regret that someday to have that food security. So we got to find ways to preserve ag lands. Food supply chain, we saw during COVID how easily the food chain is disrupted. And how scary it was to go to the grocery store and see empty grocery stores. So our goal is to find more ways for Utah to be self-reliant. We know we can't grow everything here. And find ways to that that doesn't happen again. And so those are some of the things that are goals. And the last one is. Whoops, sorry, went back. Okay. Yeah, ag education. It's sad sometimes that you ask your kids where food comes from and they think it's the grocery store. And so we continually partner with Farm Bureau to do ag in the classroom to educate our youth where food comes from. And also find other education possibilities for people to get into ag other than behind a tractor. This, two sessions ago, we were able to help create a vet school at Utah State. And that will start in a couple of years. We're excited about that. And in this last session, we got two and a half million. For people who want to become vets that will help pay their loan, student loans back. There is such a need for vets throughout the state of Utah, large animal vets. That we saw the need and was able to find different ways for people to get back into ag other than on the farm. Customer service, this is something that we are very proud of, even though we are the good cop and the bad cop with agriculture. We want to make sure that we are partners with our producers and make it. We don't want them to be blindsided by any regulation that we have to do. We want to be partners with them and help them through the process. So if you, and you have a lot of ag inspectors that come here in Grand County and inspect producers. And if you hear of any of them not being partners with our ag, we want you to let us know because we we value our customer service and we want to make sure that they're provided. What's best for our ag producers. I'll turn the time back over to Commissioner.
Thanks, Kelly. And, you know, the benefits of agriculture, probably obvious to to many of you, but I'd just like to talk for a minute about some of these. Of course, agriculture provides food and fiber and animal feed for for cattle. And uh, this last winter was a very difficult winter. We went through uh, the two years or more of drought. And so we were short on our supplies of feed, but it's a good thing that we had the feed that we did because that that winter required our producers to to supplement a lot of the feed for for cattle. But also agriculture strengthens the local food security. We've talked a little bit about that. We'll talk um, more about the conservation, open space preservation. We also have large, uh, agriculture is a large economic driver for rural areas of the state and provides water and resources for wildlife, our irrigation systems. Uh, a lot of people don't realize that that benefits wildlife throughout our state. And it, of course, it creates jobs in the rural part of the state. So just some information about Grand County at a glance. You have over seven million dollars of market value ag products sold here in the county. Hundred and two farms, uh, two hundred and thirty-one thousand acres of farmland. The average farm size is twenty-two hundred acres plus. Also, uh, eleven thousand four hundred and nine ninety-eight acres of irrigated farmland and ninety-seven percent of the farms and ground, Grand County are family-owned farms. You can see there more, about sixty-five percent of this income comes from crops and about thirty-five percent livestock. So um, some of the programs we want to talk about first, we're going to to talk about our water optimization program. And uh, we've got a video that we want to show. Oh, you're going to do meat, okay, we're going to do meat process first.
So I talked, I talked about the strategic plan and the goals that we had. So now I'm going to talk to you about some of the funding we got this last session to help us accomplish those goals. Um, we talked, I talked to you about the how processing is such an issue in the state. Two sessions ago, we got a million dollars for a pilot program to give grants to any meat and fruit and vegetable processor that would help them process more. If it was equipment, if it was refrigeration, anything that would help them do more was qualified for the grant. And this was a a non-matching grant, a hundred percent grant. And with that pilot program, we actually had fourteen million dollars in requests. Um, and you can see in the map um, of what projects we funded throughout the state. Um, and we had seventy-nine applicants for fourteen million dollars. So that shows you the need and the data that we were able to gather just from that pilot program. We went to the session and asked for a lot more money, um, but we got another million dollars. So we know a million can't uh, help bring in more new processors, but we're hoping it will continue to help expand our current customers that process. So right now, from May first to May thirty-first is our application period uh, for our current million dollars. So we're going to send you an email with all the links to these programs. But if you have any fruit, meat, small processors here in Grand County, uh, share the word because this will help them hopefully process more in the application periods now. Um, we just got awarded last week two federal grants from the Department of Ag. The first one is our Regional Food Business Center Program. This will help us hire two or three employees to help all ag producers apply for federal funding. There's a lot of federal programs out there for agriculture. But the hard part is the ag producers have a hard time applying for those or even knowing where to go. So we will hire employees that will help our ag producers apply for some of that federal funding that's available to them. And the other one is kind of a matching grant to what I just talked about with our state processing grant is a resilient food system infrastructure program. This will give the Department of Ag money to match some of our state funding to even do more processing grants throughout the state of Utah. So we're excited about these two grants that we just were awarded. We'll talk about water optimization, but I hope in the video will work. Stop sharing this when I came.
Seems like we should have this before. Right, this. There's. So. Every. Right.
Brian. All right, we'll we'll email you the link for these presentations. But the Water Optimization Program began in twenty nineteen with three million dollar appropriation from the legislature. What what water optimization does is it, the goal is to help farmers make the best use of every drop of water that they have and to um, to maintain their production or increase their production with like using less water. And so this last legislative session, we actually got to two hundred million dollars in this program. And so um, we have, we have actually since twenty nineteen administered over fifty million dollars across two hundred and seventy-six thou or two hundred and seventy-six projects and projected water savings of almost a hundred and seventy-three thousand acre feet. So this is, this round of application is open uh, and will end the the end of May also. So uh, this is a great program to help farmers and ranchers be more efficient with the water that they that they have. Okay, next program I want to talk about is the Ag Stress Assistance Program. We all know that agriculture is a tough, is a tough job, it's a tough profession. A lot of stresses in the last couple of years have really highlighted that. But this program is a program that we're working with USU Extension Ag Wellness. It provides for a two thousand dollar voucher that ag producers and their families can take to receive mental health counseling. We also do training on producers, with producers, as to how they can recognize their friends and neighbors who may be going through challenges that they might need some help. And we also do training for the nine eight eight crisis line. So if for ag stress and and people that need assistance that way. Okay, Kelly's going to talk about the Lira McAllister.
Some of you might have heard the the Lee Ray McAllister Fund before. It's been with the state of Utah since the early nineties. What it was was it does conservation easements throughout the state of Utah. And over the, since the nineties, it's done about twenty million of state funding um, to do it, but they've matched over a hundred million of private uh, nonprofit federal government funds to do conservation easements all over the state of Utah. Two sessions ago, they moved the Lee Ray McAllister to the Department of Agriculture, now called the Lee Ray McAllister Working Farm and Ranch Fund. And our focus is to preserve ag land throughout the state of Utah. We were able to get three full-time employees um, to help administer the program. And also, we got three million dollars of one-time funding for that program this 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 session. Um, one thing that will affect Grand County is House Bill three seventy-one. Um, anytime ag land is purchased, they'll have to pay that rollback taxes, that five years of rollback taxes. You're you're required now to use twenty percent of that rollback taxes for conservation use in our open space within your county. Um, and we hope that you'll use that twenty percent and come to us and use our fund, match our funds, and we'll help you match federal funds uh, to do bigger easements to preserve open space and ag land within your county. So that took effect as of May third, I believe. So I don't know how much rollback taxes Grand County has, but you you might look look into that and 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 be able to focus on that twenty percent. So, but we're excited about this. Again, this is a program that we are just focused on preserving ag land throughout the state. So. One, one free service that we provide at the Department of Mag is a mediation program. A lot of ag producers do uh, struggle and have fights with the federal government on A U Ms or their allotments when they can go and go off of their uh, crazy allotments. This service is a free mediation between the producers and federal government so that they can stay out of litigation. Um, a lot of producers producers have taken advantage of this to find a middle ground. Um, again, it's free, hopefully they can find a middle ground and 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 get away from long, long, expensive litigation. So share the word on a free mediation program with the Department of Ag.
So to wrap up, I just wanted to once again express appreciation for the opportunity of being here and answer any questions you might have that that I can answer. Once again, we will be pushing out the information about these programs and but I I'm just, I hope that you recognize the importance of agriculture in Grand County. I know you've got a lot of issues that you deal with, mostly deal with growth and development. But as you consider these applications, consider these things, we hope that you'll consider the importance of uh, local food produced close to home and made directly available to your consumers here in the county. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, do you guys have any questions for the Commissioner?
No, I just, I will state that, you know, I have been a proponent of making sure that we're preserving as much agricultural land in this valley. But when you guys talk about Israel, that that's what we have going on this. We've, we're consuming the valley and taking away ag lands. We have a couple larger conservation easements on on the valley, but it's still, you know, we need to do a better job. I think it's extremely important. One positive, we have a really strong Conservation District Board, so that's great. And and we actually have a new USU Extension and he was a local that was born and raised here and he's doing a great job, so it's, we're looking, it's looking good.
Yeah, we always appreciate being able to partner with uh, Ag Extension, Utah State University Extension.
I I was wondering if you, if you might not know this, but you said the Grand County's agricultural output was roughly seven million dollars. Um, the only thing that really comes to my mind is Green River Melons. Do you, do you know what the majority of that seven million dollars comes from?
Well, I think you probably also have some, uh, you know, we didn't break down specifically for uh, for your county, but I believe it was thirty-five percent of your production was from crops.
Okay.
And so that probably could include things like wheat, your green river melons. I don't know, do you still have a vineyard here in the?
We do have a vineyard, yeah, yeah. And then we, you know, we have a couple lar, a couple larger livestock producers, right? So both wool growers and and cattle, so.
So that that would include uh, those that graze on public lands and in in your county also.
Yeah. Interesting, thank you.
Thank you. I had a quick question. I was wondering if you, uh, I'm clerk auditor, white tech. Um, I was wondering if you, what was I going to ask here? If you worked with the larger grocery corporations, the only reason I ask is because we, for good reason, our our most heavily trafficked local grocer celebrates a lot of goods from Colorado. And for good reason, they produce excellent products on the western slope and we're, it doesn't have to travel far to get here. Um, but the Green River Melons topic came up because we'd love to see Green River. Uh, you, we could move a lot of Green River Melons at that site.
Yeah.
And uh, that we still, we still sell watermelons from California and Mexico in the summer at that place. So I don't know if you guys have a sway with the Kroger Corp, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, and uh, we we try to work with Associated Foods on on Utah's own products, but we do experience a lot of challenges that way. And so our Utah Zone is our marketing for local products and and, um, you know, we're looking at ways we can find inroads into that business too, so thank you.
Is there, uh, besides the grants with this legislative funding that came out? Um, do you see any uh, things that we should actively be pursuing there?
As far as grants?
Or just in the funding in general, I know that we've had kind of some success in in other areas where things went through the legislation and there was kind of a project in mind when it was getting pushed up, you know, but you're not allowed to do it for a specific project. And when we were allowed, we were able to kind of swoop in and um, get some of that funding.
You know, right off the top of my head, I really haven't got any suggestions, you know, specific to your county, but I would just encourage you to take advantage of, you know, the the programs that we currently have. And then, you know, if we need to partner on on other projects, local food production, you know.
Yeah, I did just have a meeting with U D A F the other day with, on a conservation easement, possibly on one of the ranches in the Book Cliffs, and it was a really lucrative um, conversation, so hopefully.
Yeah, and I think local, the local food processing program, if you have any, even, you know, say your winery or maybe other local fruit or vegetable production, uh, if you need processing capacity, that.
And beer and wine falls into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have noticed the Spanish Valley Vineyard, it's like kind of up and running, it's looking really good, so yeah.
I know we've had some other applications from wineries in the past, so.
Okay, great.
Or say, we've got a separate evaluation committee that reviews those applications and and we'd see where they fall out.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, thanks so much for coming down, appreciate it.
Appreciate the hat.
All right, uh, we will move on to our next presentation. We have a TRT overview presented by our Strategic Development Director, Chris Bird. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. I was going to share my screen and bring up our budgeting software. So the, what I wanted to cover in this presentation is essentially like the TRT one-on-one. Try to explain the the statutory restrictions and then just roll through uh, twenty twenty-three's beginning budget for TRP. And uh, kind of call out some of the the numbers that were budgeted for this year. So state law, because we're a fourth, fifth or sixth class county on the national park, the split that we're allowed to provide to uh, essential services, which would be like law enforcement, solid waste, et cetera, uh, is is sixty-three percent. That's because statute requires that we send at minimum thirty-seven percent to tourism promotion and the establishment and promotion of recreation, uh, filming conventions and until uh, the end of June, economic diversification activities. So all those things uh, are in that thirty-seven percent. So then gave receipts in uh, the deposit that we get through tax commission. He immediately splits it out that way, so we've got two different funds. Uh, one fund is fund twenty-six, and this is the fund where the sixty-three percent goes to. And this is the fund that we use uh, for what we're calling essential services. So we're looking at uh, estimated five million one hundred and eighty thousand coming into this one.
Could you increase the size? Can you increase the size of that?
No, unfortunately, this uh, program doesn't.
I think I asked you that before.
It it doesn't have an option for increasing the font size. But anyway, we've got uh, an estimated five million one hundred and eighty thousand. And this is essentially based on uh, our projection in uh, November, December of last year, how we were going to close twenty twenty-two out. So we essentially budgeted all of ourselves taxes to be zero percent growth, debt flat with twenty twenty-two. And then moving on, so this really only has that one line of of revenue that comes in. And then moving on to the expenditure side. So this is how we plan to, or how we budgeted to expend uh, that five million one hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred thousand going to the general fund. So this is essentially a transfer, the three hundred thousand to the general fund to help offset search and rescue costs. Uh, then we also trans, looking to transfer about a hundred and eighteen thousand to the general fund to offset the costs associated with the uh, museum. Four million three hundred and fifty thousand going to offset uh, law enforcement, four hundred thousand uh, to the solid waste special services district and sixty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-five. And sixty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars to fund Thompson Springs Fire. So those are all the elements that make up how uh we spend the sixty-three percent essential services or impact mitigation side of the transient room tax.
Nice to get a question on sixty-three percent, Chris. It's my understanding that it's fifty-three percent until we pass the base rate. Is that?
Uh, well, there's a, if, so if there's a different categorization. So if you're a fourth, fifth, or sixth class county, you don't have a national park. Um, then there's a little bit of a different formula for it, and it's sort of uh it's hard to explain. But the base rate, the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen base rate, the way of the statute that we're operating under, because we have a national park uh or a national recreation area, is that we have to spend thirty-seven percent or what we spent in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh whichever is greater. And since our transient room tax is uh more than doubled since then, uh the thirty-seven percent is much greater.
Thank you.
And so that that kind of covers the uh that impact mitigation side. And then the other side is uh on sixteen, which we're calling economic development. And so we split this out um three different ways. And and this is due to uh the statutory framework. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, when HB two forty-seven was passed, we uh part of the legislation put some restrictions on some of the categories uh of spending within this thirty-seven percent. So no more than one-third can go to diversification activities and no more than one-fifth can go toward uh recreation film or convention. And so we split those out. When we rece- receive this money and we split those out and uh split it out according to those statutory restrictions. So the remainder after the one-third and the one-fifth is what we put into the tourism promotion budget, which is roughly about forty-six percent of thirty-seven percent. I know that TRT is a little bit difficult to understand. There's a lot of plumbing and a lot of restrictions uh for counties. So looking at this uh budget as it's set here, a total of three million forty-two thousand approximately. And then uh one million four hundred and nineteen thousand eight six vacation and uh six hundred and eight thousand five thirteen for recreation film conventions. Uh, so due to uh HB four sixteen, which is going to repeal diversification activities after the end of June, this one million dollar figures, you know, you know, roughly kind of half. Um, thereabouts. So part of the county-wide budget amendment that we're uh gonna do in June will be to take, you know, our projections second half of the year of this diversification funding and move that over into tourism. On the expenditure side, we have the same sort of uh expenditure buckets. We have the economic diversification budget. And then uh like this is gonna have to be significantly revised. But uh there's going to be some money left over from what we bring in for the first half of this year, plus any unexpended diversification funds uh since twenty twenty. So that will uh be coming to you relatively soon. I'm actually showing August's planning to, I think, maybe the first or second meeting in June. Then uh we've got the rec film conventions budget. So this is where our budget for the uh bill commission lives. Along with a contribution, hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar contribution to the special service district to cover youth sports programming and their agreement with the city rec program. Hundred and thirty-one thousand going to uh responsible recreation program, tri- masters predominantly. Um, we've made a prior commitment to the C of Moab to help fund the pilot transit program, and so that's seventy-six thousand six hundred and sixty-six. And moving on to tourism promotions is one of the more complicated budgets, but like I said, this budget is going to have to be increased to take on the second half of the years, what would have been diversification. So this will also have to be revised in June, just the big budget amendment. Uh, then also there are um some non-TRT related expenses in here. For the purposes of being able to produce a report real really easily for the state. I've uh taken all the non-TRT expenses out and separated them. So this would be like our rural county grant program or our cooperative uh marketing grants uh with the state. And so it just makes it easy for me to uh separate our TRT expenditures from all the other expenditures. So thus far, I mean, that kind of concludes the the one-on-one version. Uh, thus far uh we've received January and February's TRT and then there's about a two-month lag uh between, you know, when the taxes are collected and hit the tax commission, when they're paid out to us. So we threw those back to the period that they're roughly collected for. Um, January was, it was actually above twenty twenty-two levels, but it's such a small amount of money that it's kind of insignificant. Uh, February, however, took a big dive. Uh, February is about sixty-seven percent of uh twenty twenty-two and about eighty-five percent relative to our our uh average trend. If you if we run a trend line from twenty twelve or, yeah, about twenty twelve through twenty nineteen and project that forward, um, we would, we'd be about eighty-five percent of the trend. So pretty low. Um, and that's probably largely due to uh the long winter. But uh I also met with uh a tax commission representative that deals with transient room taxes. And uh looked at some of the details on the rebates and it looks like there's also uh an overpayment from last year that's being refunded this year. And so there, you know, that makes it a little bit difficult to correlate, um, you know, on a month-to-month level uh it with economic activity. But still, I think, you know, that it's definitely been a soft spring related to the weather. And uh, that's all I have. Any questions?
This is just TRT or is it the TRCC also?
No, but I can go over TRCC too.
Does that have a remind me the requirements?
So TRCC, that's the restaurant car rental taxes. Um, and so the TRCC has to be spent on tourism related. I mean, you could do tourism promotion with it. Uh, where you could help, you know, you can fund facilities. That's one of the nice things about TRCC. TRT could fund facilities too, but on the sixty-three percent side that we use for law enforcement. And so uh the TRCC is predominantly used to fund the Spanish Trail Arena and the Grand Center. And bring that up real quick to show you.
And that youth sports contribution, does that go through one of our departments or is that just?
It just goes, just go straight to the uh recreational services.
Gotcha.
So they have, there's two components. That one is their accelerated grant program. And uh then the other is their contract with uh City Rec. So yeah, uh, the TRCC, it does help fund Star Hall. So um in twenty twenty-two, we spent about fourteen thousand six hundred on Star Hall. Uh, then we, this fund also pays off the the uh loan on the Grand Center. It covers a significant portion of Grand Center's operation. Same with Oste, with Spanish Trail Arena. Uh, it helps fund the fireworks, the Fourth of July fireworks display. That's all. With the TRCC. So it's predominantly funding Oste and the Grand Center, you know, considering convention spaces.
Mike, do we have any expenditures going to B, C, D roads?
Uh, well, not, not from TRT. Um, so we, I think it was twenty seventeen, we passed an optional transportation tax. And so that that tax, once it was in, it uh brought us fairly it it got us in a pretty good position with the roads department. And so um between that optional transportation tax and some uh adjustments to the B road allocation from the state, we've done pretty well as far as uh this road funding goes. So we don't send TRT to the roads, but we could, okay, into, you know, our general fund is general, is the weakness, the roads department is its own fund, a separate fund from the general fund. The general fund uh is fairly mean. Uh, you, we have a pretty low proportion of property tax uh relative to the total budget. Um, and our unrestricted, we have two unrestricted sales taxes also there at there. But uh, you know, it's those, those unrestricted monies are really uh kind of precious. And so it's been my strategy over the years to use as much transient room tax to offset the general fund expenditures. And the effect of that over the long run is to decrease the need to increase property taxes. Yeah, that's a, you know, a big part of the strategy. We could use the money differently. But then we wouldn't be offsetting the general fund expenditures as much, which, you know, puts pressure on us to come up with some other way to fund the general fund, which is usually less joyful.
Understand.
Do you know what that overpayment amounts to? The uh the tax commissioner said we were basically withholding.
I can't say. It's proprietary. But um I could show you if you sign the state's non-disclosure agreement, like I have.
Glad they would do that. And then what about reserves? Do we keep reserves?
We do, yeah. We've spent down quite a bit. Uh, I think at the beginning of last year, we had almost four million, maybe over four million in reserve on tiers either. That was in part because in twenty twenty was COVID. And so uh we hadn't really do any significant advertising in twenty twenty because, you know, everybody was saying, don't travel. Uh, and then in twenty twenty-one, we set a fairly conservative budget because we were thinking, you know, COVID's gonna wreck our revenues. But the opposite became true. We got, you know, a huge increase, a huge bump in in transient room tax destination in twenty twenty-one. So between underspending in twenty twenty and then bringing in a lot more money in twenty twenty-one to build a fund balance. But uh last year, we budgeted to spend that down pretty significantly. We have, so I think the fund balance is down to about two point five, two point six million at the beginning of this year. And we are also spending, but we've also budgeted to spend even more of that fund balance this year. Bring it down. I think, you know, for cash flow purposes, it's probably sufficient to have between six and eight hundred thousand dollars in the fund balance. So anything more than that, it's, you know, superfluous.
And we have a limit of how much we can have in that fund?
Yeah, it's half, it's half of uh the annual revenue. So the, you know, if we're looking at bringing it to a total of around nine million, that's about four and a half million that we can get from the balance.
So we came close.
We were on track to exceed that, but we spent, we spent it down pretty significantly last year. I'm planning to spend it down anyways.
I know that uh this is kind of getting into the weeds, but with that um pivot on that budgeted funding, you know, going back into marketing, uh, in the past, we had talked a lot about hiring local artists and the like for developing promotional materials and that. And um I would be interested in seeing some of that uh happen with this, this change in the budget.
Yeah, I think um, I think we have done some of that. Yeah. August is later is going to, then I think he sent you in some revision, his provisions revisions to the budget. Later today, you know, the actions that you're taking with regard to the marketing and the the data subscription plans. Will be kind of somewhat standalone budget amendments uh because we're essentially cutting into that second half of the diversification funding and reallocating it tonight if you choose to towards those increases. But there's several other uh more detailed budget amendments that will have to also happen. And you know, in August, I were planning on doing the the more comprehensive budget amendment along with the entire counties. In here, we have a budget amendment in June. Yeah, so I mean, it's something to talk about. Uh, but the way that the uh proposals are coming in, so if you maxed out, for instance, the the max option for advertising, the max option for uh the data, you're really not needing much for anything else. So I mean, that's just, you know, something that a caveat to give is that we have the other smaller budget amendments that are gonna have, have to happen. Uh, what you're gonna be approving tonight, if you take the maximum option, it's gonna basically max out the budget for that second half of the diversification moving into tourism. You know, next year, uh we can certainly, you know, look at different ways to spend money.
Just speaking to the local artist option, I mean, there were some things floating around here a few months ago. I I would think we'd want to make sure that we're dealing with professionals, whether they're local or non-local. Some of that stuff, if we were spending money on it, was scary.
What, what was that?
There were some pictures that went around that that were um supposedly gonna possibly be used for advertising, and I don't remember where they came from, but clearly we want professional advertising.
Yeah, I think the, you know, I'm not, I think August would be better uh suited to answer this question, but I do think that we've done some of, some of that, engaged uh locals, sports of market, production of some marketing material. I'm not really familiar with what you've talked about.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I think that.
I think that they've started and they have a few contracts that are in the works or yeah, things to come. But um I know they've also talked about the idea putting out some kind of an advertisement uh to the community so folks know of stuff to submit.
So I have a lot of good.
Yeah, I think you'd have to ask August with details like that.
Mike, do you have a comment?
No, I just looking through uh some of the capabilities of TRT expenditures. Uh I mean, roads is my uh uh never ending circle there. Uh, it will be continued. But uh the ability to, for us to look towards convention centers, uh et cetera, really I mean, I love continued promotion to then pay for our convention centers, et cetera.
Yeah, so the, I mean, but again, like, the issue of the TRT is that any, any facilities, any like hard facilities have to be paid for out of the sixty-three percent.
Yeah.
Not the thirty-seven percent. And so uh we would have to cut, you know, our contribution to the general fund or cut our contribution to solid waste.
If we were exceeding, I mean, if, we had a great year.
Oh, yeah. So I, but you know, uh, you could um decide to allocate that money you know, towards any kind of convention facility or any facility that's really authorized in statute. We, again, you just have to realize that if we do that, that it'll be that we have less money to set to offset a general fund expenditure. Just be, by the way, the statute creates, because we can't really use the uh thirty-seven percent side, we have to use the sixty-three percent side for facilities.
We will talk more on that very specifically.
Yep, sixty-three percent is the mitigation. So.
Impact mitigation is one thing we call it. I mean, there's actually several different options. Um, but uh convention centers and other like tourism-related facilities are, are allowed with expenditures.
So awesome. I'm just looking at, as in, uh, one of the lineups was an economic uh being put into an economic, economic diversification activity. Uh, and we already know that we're taking away from that per four sixteen. Uh, but later on, we might be a real allocate, uh, yeah, we could re-allocate uh that to the section B of this uh to A of the Utah State Legislature. Acquiring leasing, constructing, furnishing, maintaining, and operating convention and meeting rooms, exhibit halls, visitor information centers, museums, sports and recreation facilities, uh related facilities to those. And if national, if a national park is located within or partially within county's boundaries, the following on any route or designated by the county legislative body, you can put parking infrastructure and or airport.
Yeah, and like I said, that's the sixty-three percent side. Yeah. So uh that component, so the thirty-seven percent side is relatable to two. So uh that component, so the thirty seven percent side is relatable to two A subsection two A.
Okay.
And then all the other subsections that follow are the sixty three percent side. So I mean, there's actually no limit to how much you can spend towards, which you can spend a hundred percent of it towards. And so that's, you know, like unrestricted expenditure uh with TRT. But everything else has restrictions, so the two A subsections, the section that has to, that that we have to spend at least thirty seven percent. And then the other uh remaining, which is sixty three percent, can be either spent on subsection two A or any of the other subsection. Okay. Yeah, so it's that thirty seven percent restriction, that sort of.
Yeah.
We maximize, you know, we maximize the amount that we can send to uh general fund essential services right away as soon as Jay gets it. Split that money out immediately, thirty seven, sixty three.
Mary, did you have something?
Oh, I was just going to say that uh our sixty three percent is. It's hot, it's easy to give it away. It's it's between our police, our search and rescue, our solid waste. There's very little money left over to uh build a convention center or something of that nature. And from what I'm seeing is like anytime we taken on a huge project such as the Osta or. Uh we were in charge, we have to pay for the uh aquatic center, aquatic and recreation center. Every time, anytime you do something like that, it's not just a one-time cost.
Yeah.
It's a huge ongoing expenditure that I I'd be real careful.
Well, the arena and the grant center are expensive, right?
Yes.
And we use them. So, you know, it's, we do get some pushback, you know, from some in the community about, you know, these things being money pits. But uh between the revenue they generate and the tourism taxes, they're fully funded. So there really is no local property tax that goes toward uh Osta or the Grand Center. They're fully funded uh either by. You know, by a combination of their own revenue and the TRC.
I very much understand. Uh personal bias being on uh Osta's board, uh I am looking for an indoor uh facility uh for them. Indoor uh sports facility for them. Uh their ball field facilities are getting far more use, uh both soccer uh flat fields. And uh baseball softball uh fields are being far more used uh as I see right now. Uh and I I like that and I want to continue that path or personal path.
Yeah, I think that over time, uh the arena is going to get used part and part because, you know, that's where uh. Development's going to occur.
Yeah.
So especially, you know, and even San Juan County starts developing their portion splash value. Yeah, Angie and I wrote, it's about a one point three million dollar grant request that we just submitted a couple of weeks ago for pickleball courts and a playground to add. So we'll see what happens with that. But it does come with a uh one to one match, so.
Yeah.
We would have to come up with half of that. So that's, you know, one project that we've got going on up there.
Which I like. I'm not all into pickleball, but I think I do like, yeah, project report.
Definitely appreciate it. Any other questions for Chris? Uh Kevin, I can't see, but do you have any comments or questions?
Um, may- maybe just, I, Chris already said this, but I think it bears repeating that. I I think that sixty three percent money, since it's going toward. You know, we can spend it on things we would have to fund anyway, like the sheriff's department, it's effectively general fund money. And so. You know, I I think. You know, in in contrast with some of the other establish and promote money, which is. You know, it's so restricted that, you know, we can spend it on things we wouldn't have funded otherwise. And and so I I I think if we're spending general fund money, we just have to keep in in mind that there's a limited amount. And if we need more, you know, we sort of have to raise property taxes or cut some some other general fund programs, so. Anyway, I just just want to repeat, repeat that part and 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 in particular, these, you know, facilities things fall fall into that part, so.
Thanks, Kevin.
No, thank you.
All right.
Thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. That that helps clarify things a little bit and we'll, I guess, speak to some of our agenda items today too.
All right. Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
All right, that uh does it for our presentations. We have no department or agency reports today, so we are moving on to approval of minutes. And this will be approving our uh meeting minutes from May second, twenty twenty three. Uh I think everyone got a chance to see that. It got them in uh quickly as usual.
Move to accept the minutes for May second, two thousand twenty three.
All right, I have a motion on the table, Commissioner McGinn, a second by Commissioner Winfield to approve the minutes. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hands and that passes unanimously. Uh we are on to ratification of bills and general reports. So we'll start with our payment of bills. Uh ratification of bills, the amount of nine hundred eighty four thousand and eleven dollars and seventy five cents. Uh ratification of payroll, the amount of three hundred sixty eight thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars and ninety nine cents for a total bills payroll, the amount of one million, three hundred fifty two thousand, five hundred twenty six dollars and seventy four cents.
So moved.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion from Commissioner McGinn and a second from Commissioner McCurdy. Uh any discussion of bills and payroll? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously as well. Um we are on to commission member disclosures. Does anyone here, uh any commissioners? Have anything they need to disclose about any of the uh items on today's agenda? Doesn't look like it. Great, so we will move on to. Yes, sir. Uh yes.
Uh this is Stephen Stocks, just a disclosure that the retail um donated to my campaign. I just wanted to disclose that because they're on the agenda.
Uh great. Thank you, Stephen.
Likewise, actually.
Okay, okay. Uh there is one item on there from them. Yeah, two of the three, I believe, were pulled off.
Yeah, thanks for the reminders, Steve.
Okay, okay, thank you, guys. Um, all right, we're on to general uh reports and future considerations and uh I'll go to internet land. And and Kevin, are you ready for a uh report?
Um, sure.
Okay.
Let's see, um, can you move and pull up my notes? Um. News from BLM, they're sort of regrouping on lithium mine permitting as a result of some lawsuits that's forcing them to consider cumulative impacts to groundwater. Um, still expecting the labyrinth Jim and I produced travel plan out relatively soon, but now they're thinking midsummer. Previous previously, that was the end of this month. Um, I attended a internal audit committee meeting earlier today, um but I'll let. I'll let Mary or Bill summarize that one. They were also there. Um and I think that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Kevin. Uh Commissioner Clapper?
Yeah, um cemetery was uh pretty quiet. Uh it was just a lot of housekeeping, burial rights signing, that sort of stuff. Uh the health district, um. There was a lot of review of financials um for the different organizations that they fund. Um and then some planning around discussions for a sales tax increase. So um that, speaking of funding, that's kind of always trying to pick when the timing is right for that sort of stuff. Uh I attended the elected officials lunch. Um, I think we were all there, so, or Mary, you missed a good time. Uh thanks for that. And then uh the EMS special service district I met with this morning. Um, one of the nice takeaways from that is uh. There's been a lot of work with dispatch and through some upgrading of the new radio systems. We've got new radio channels, so there's a lot of planning going on um about what to do with the new channels and designating those. But the takeaway was that um there's a lot of crossbreeding and collaboration happening through different organizations in the community. And so that's always nice to hear instead of a lot of finger pointing, uh working on some of the, they've been participating in the flood plan. Uh flood plan revisions and so um. That's some other stuff that where EMS is working with the county, so so that was nice. Um, Blue Cross Insurance isn't paying up, so uh those guys are a pain. And um if you're interested in the nitty gritty of that, but there might be some uh uh short term. Fun uh fun challenges related to that, so. Yeah. They're not paying the bills, so.
Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Uh yeah, so if a visitor comes here and they get an ambulance ride, it's considered out of service. And so uh.
Lot of network.
Yeah, it's not a network, so even though it's an emergency treatment, um they're saying that they. And because we're rural, we only have one ambulance provider, so you can't choose another ambulance provider, so uh. But I'm sure Blue Cross is getting rich, so if you're a stakeholder in their group, congratulations. That's about all I got on it. I didn't get down to the nitty gritty with it, but it was upsetting and disheartening to hear.
It is, yeah. Thanks, Evan. Uh Commissioner Winfield?
I spent a little bit of time in discussion with San Juan County regarding property. We had some. Close session a while back, so we'll update that in the future. I was also on the EV grant on Zoom today, the Marion, Kevin Walker were on and. There's two places, there's one at the airport that I identified for Chris and the second one at the Grand Center. And it looked to me like everything else on the list was private, mostly hotels that are. Willing to put those up, so I don't know yet what will happen with it, that that they have their own grant writers and. You know, they put the entire package together and sometimes there, it sounds like there's a commitment that's needed financially. But usually the property is seen as that. Match for the grant, so there was that one. Then Mary and I also attended a meeting out of Red Cliff with um DNR and there were enough people there, I don't remember all their names. But it was put on by the fire, DNR fire here in town, eight great Washington, which is over, he is over multiple counties. And so we had several of them out there and we, they basically were just talking. Trying to make sure that we're all collaborating and working together and. Sounds like they've got several things ongoing with TJ at the fire department also. Um also, I attended the elected officials lunch and I did reach out to John Cortez for the future one.
Okay.
Already, so.
Good, good to hear. Thanks, Bill.
And then I did attend the airport board meeting yesterday and. You know, there's still ongoing concern for the service that we're losing.
Yes.
Definitely a lot of people and they, I believe that some of it's that. But like they're being blamed for it and that's definitely not the case, you know, it's um. The finger can clearly be pointed at.
Climate.
The airline.
Yeah.
Letting us down and so I I know there's mixed feelings around the valleys that people are in paper being some, a lot of them are. Lives into service. Salt Lake is probably the biggest complaint of the locals that are still all, that's ongoing.
I I'd like to second that, that is, it's not the blame of anybody at the airport, because I've heard that too and I've I've tried to squash that whenever it's come up with me. And that's, Bill makes a very good point there.
I did go out and um Tammy gave me a tour of the entire airport operation, which was very nice. And they were in the process while I was out there observing for the new fence. And I believe that they got, some of that was grant funded for the new fence around part of the airport, so that was ongoing as well. All seems to be running smoothly.
Great. All right, thanks. Uh Commissioner Dean?
Okay, so I went to a Gwissa meeting on the fourth. Um Kins Lake is, at that time, was only five hundred acre feet away from being full. They were actually talking about, there was so much debris coming down in Mill Creek that it costs a lot of problems. Those guys have to be at the. Kind of gates all the time, making sure that it's not getting blocked. But when they close it down, people complain that full falls is not running. So there's that issue. So it's like, well, just shut things and let this kind of, you know, the flush run out runoff come off. But it's like, well, then he gets all kinds of flack for not having the falls running. Um, as you guys know, year to date precipitation looks great, well above average, the soil moisture looks really good at ninety five hundred feet, sixty two percent saturation. Well above last year, which was fifty six percent. Cash Stallings came and gave a, I asked him to come and give a legislative update like he did at the uh mock meeting. And so he did the same for Gwissa and I thought that was really valuable. Um and then Ben Musman, which is really great, kind of is starting to provide us with how many new connections per month, so we kind of have an understanding of growth. So they had um ten new connections and then a hundred requests for Blue Stakes. So you guys kind of get a feel for growth in the valley, which I thought was a great addition. Um I went to the planning commission meeting, we talked about, we had an after the pile presentation. We talked a little bit about more about H D H O as always, an eligibility. Um, I went to the conservation district and actually you just heard Commissioner Butters kind of covered everything that we talked about. And um went to the homeless committee, the homeless council, um at, in April, ninety eight individuals served. Um seventy eight of those literally homeless, twenty eminent. One thing that Wen from Moab Solutions talked about was just right now, he's serving a lot of people that are quite transient um in nature. A lot of sleeping in the parkway. Um, one of the individuals, and it just so you guys kind of have that idea of who's homeless. One is a father who has two children, totally employed, working really hard, but still not able to procure housing. So we get a a feel for that. And then just future considerations, I do think it's something and and I'll and I'll talk to Mallory about this, but I do think we need to look a little harder at code enforcement and being a little bit more proactive. Instead of just waiting for complaints to come in. And then I've been working really closely with Ronnie Durasri from the ca- city council on water. We're we're talking a lot about water and is it feasible to bring the city and two counties together a little more intimately? As far as what we believe to be um valley water, you know, how much we have to develop. And then also um my brain just totally went dead, but anyways, we're just, we're, we're working really hard, we're talking a lot, we're meeting a lot and. Kind of and meeting with other entities and, oh, just water monitoring, right? Like the commitment, getting all of those entities involved in commitment, right? We're, the county is definitely leading um the charge in that. We've, we're giving quite a bit of money towards monitoring, we're looking at a modeling. System next year, so so you know, all three of these entities, since we're sharing the drink, should be involved in monitoring. That's it.
Thanks, Trish.
Thanks.
Commissioner McCurdy?
Seeing that one of my uh boards was, I was actually removed from uh special events advisory board. Uh the recreation board uh meeting is actually tomorrow, uh and no updates on that. Osta meeting was actually canceled. Uh but the small update from that was Osta now has new audio equipment and will be getting that installed. Uh that was one of the biggest complaints from previous uh rodeos and several complaints to events being held there uh was the audio equipment, so they were updating that. I had a meeting, I I met at Governor Cox's uh.
Tour, state tour.
Yeah, state tour, right. Uh it was actually good to see like uh grand county student participation.
Yeah.
Uh there was a surprising amount of questions uh from them that were very low uh word, uh it was good to see that. Um, I'm glad to see someone, small town in Utah, uh stepped all the way up to governor and still has, still uh in his statements, has optimism for. Uh working on both sides, sees the device in this uh in in Utah itself and in the national. And he still has optimism uh working with everyone. Other than that, oh, I went to the luncheon with everyone, Mary, minus Mary, yeah. And that's my updates.
All right, thanks, Mike and Mary.
On Wednesday after the last uh uh county commission meeting, I.
On Wednesday after the last uh, uh, county commission meeting, I, on my, serving on the USU uh, advisory board. Uh, we gave out uh, three thousand dollar scholarships from the Rotary Club. They give it to the advisory board. And then we have a process where we evaluate people to ask and then give it out. And then this year we were really fortunate because Colorado Grand, which is a uh. Organization out of Colorado that gives to charities. Uh, they do this road tour. Where they drive these really, really expensive uh, cars and every two years they come through Moab. This year, because the poor weather that we ended up at the last minute, have to have them meet at USU. And as a thank you, this is huge, they gave a ten thousand dollar scholarship. To a local person in Colorado, you know, local. So that will, that's a significant amount. That will help that student very much. So uh, you know, shout out to Colorado Grand. Cause traditionally, part of their thing is they never give to anything outside of Colorado. So this was really nice. I went to, on the fourth, went to the housing task force meeting. We're getting closer and closer. They'll be coming and showing all the research. And everything they've done on housing availability and housing needs. Real hard work, dedicated people working on that. On the ninth, I went to the travel council meeting, the RFP for an economic development plan closed last Friday. Business members of the travel council that uh, reported that. There was reports that uh, last month was good, soft and flat. So it was, you know, they were seeing it come up. After the slow start. Uh, film commission has, oh, and the film commission has not been affected by the writer's strike. Which is good. The films we had planned to come here are still coming here. And then we're going to be doing some of the stuff that loves presenting. Later on in the meetings, I won't go into that data collection, but they also worked on fly campaign. And it was a bit of confusion during the meeting. The people thought the fly campaign meant flying to Moab. Airport and they were going, well, why are we doing this? If we're not, but no, the fly campaign is advertising in areas of the. United States and outside the United States, that people have to use a plane. Most likely they're going to fly to Grand Junction, Moab. Uh, Denver, Salt Lake, maybe Phoenix now. So that's what the fly campaign is not. So anyway, we got through that. It was a very involved meeting. It's a very active board. The board's very, you know, comes prepared. It's a good board. Uh, I met with Dale, we met with the department of DNR. Uh, Jamie Barnes, which is really nice. I think this is the first time that's happened. That I've met before the state uh, the head of the state, DNR program. But she did come down and listen to what our concerns were and what we saw. It was a really nice gathering. They had both Cody and Bruce from the, our fire, our land's fire, what was it called that? You know, yeah, our chiefs or anyway, so that was good. Um. Oh, uh, I did, uh, and then one of the other things I did, I did forgot to mention was that. Our traffic counts for last month was broke records. So we might see a huge increase in TRT.
April? Really?
Of course, and broke records. Yeah. And then we, I had uh, this morning, the audit committee meeting went really well. Once again, I'm really proud that Grand County stepped up to the plate and is doing this. Lots of counties haven't done this, even though it's part of state. Statute now. And uh, you know, so that was very good. We'll be giving more of a, Cody will be coming and giving more of a presentation at another point. Okay, so that I think that's it. Uh, and Chris Kaufman gave a, a presentation of what's happening. And what's going on in the treasurer's office and the improvements that have been made.
All right, great. Thanks, Mary. And I uh, this, this is, this is the busy, obviously for everybody, it's the busiest part of the. Busy part of the month too. Um, I last, the weekend of the fifth and sixth, I participated in the. Um, facelift projects where, which was a great success. I think there was eighty-five or so volunteers that participated in, in. Five or six different uh, projects around the county, mostly in the city area. Um, working with Trail Mix and, and uh, other organizations. And, and that was really fun. Great event. I think that's going to come back next year and it will expand and, and um, I really enjoyed that. Uh, on the night, we had a Trail Mix meeting. Um, and we uh, let's see. We planned for an update from the Utah Raptor State Park from uh, Director Josh Hanson will be at the next Trail Mix meeting, giving us a good. Like thorough going over how the new state park is going and, and trails that are uh, being impacted there. Or potentially new trails as well. Um, we had a debrief in the facelift. And there is work being done by the trail crew at the South Klondike Trail System to make uh, some of that single track out there. Adaptive friendly, um, which is really interesting. Our, our uh, trail designer Tyson Swayze uh, described some of the work. And um, I haven't been out there to ride it personally yet, but apparently it doesn't change the characteristic of the trail at all. While allowing for like a hand cycle adaptive equipment to be used on those trails. So, so keeping in the nature of the trails, just, just widening some things. And making it a little more friendly for those who need adaptive equipment to be able to get out on single track, um, which is pretty neat. Uh. And let's see, on the tenth, uh, uh, Moab Chamber of Commerce meeting. Uh, currently uh, Lacey Shumway, the chamber director is in Washington DC with this, with all the state chambers there. Uh, meeting with uh, legislators and um, talking about issues uh, pertinent to Utah chambers of commerce. So we talked about a few things that Lacey might want to bring up that are specifically important to uh, Moab in particular. Um, we also talked about the uh, the charity golf tournament, which funds some chamber scholarships. So we talked about. Uh, the scholarships and chose a couple of scholarship recipients ahead of and anticipating a good turnout at the golf tournament, which will be on the ninth of June. And um, that's a super positive thing that the chamber does. So if you have the opportunity to get out there and, and uh, participate in that, then, then it's. It goes to a good, good place. Um, on the tenth, I also attended a Thompson Water uh, TSSD. Meeting um, where we had public hearings for three CIB grant uh, requests from the TSSD. And we also uh, voted to move forward on a meter abandonment policy out there. Uh, which will be helpful with some of their situations in Thompson. And as far as Thompson meetings go, that was a relatively short one, it's two hours. Um, so uh, lots of, lots of banter out there. Um, on the eleventh, I attended a motorized trail committee meeting where we uh, talked about trail projects, which we always do. The trail, motorized trail committee is always good about picking a couple of projects a month and going out and taking care of business. But then we had a pretty robust discussion about um, how to like prioritizing those and just getting, getting people involved. And, and working on, on keeping that situation going with the, with the motorized trail committee. Really working on specific kind of problem areas that are being used on some of the local jeeping trails in town. And, and really getting out there and fixing some of the, some of the, some of the wear and tear and, you know, trail work. Uh, anyway, um, we also met our new motorized trail ambassador that is funded by the grant. That was procured by the responsible recreation uh, folks. And he, he looks like he's going to be great. And uh, the motorized trail committee definitely had a lot to do with, with um, with getting that grant, writing letters, et cetera. So that was a, that's a great thing that motorized trail committee's been up to as well. And then last night I went to the NIMS, the National Incident Management System uh, class. That uh, was put on the IS four oh two class and just want to give a huge thanks to Cora Phillips again, who's been great and very proactive. And um, in, in getting these things lined up and, and um, so that, that uh, kind of teaches leaders in the county. About preparedness for uh, incidents, disasters, et cetera. Mallory was able to attend with me as well, which was nice. And it's a course that if it comes back, when it comes back, um, I'd recommend for everybody. It, it really goes a long way towards just kind of. I mean, you know, when, when I remember when I first was elected, we had the fire on the hill. After a few months, you know, it kind of felt like a deer in the headlights. Just, just being out there and really not knowing where my place and the whole scheme of things was. Um, so the, these courses are, are really good. For just kind of clarifying um, us as elected officials, like where our position is, kind of, you know, where, what, how. We, we can be most effective in those kind of situations, what kind of responsibilities we might be looking at. Um, so it, it was a two hour course. It was really well done and um, I'd recommend it. And thanks to Cora for continuing with, with that. And uh, that does it for my update. So let's see, five thirty. And let me uh, figure out where we are in the agenda. We are up to um, elected official reports. And uh, I think Stephen, uh, our county attorney is still on Zoom. Stephen, do you have a report for us?
Um, just a couple of quick updates, if you can hear me okay.
We can, yeah.
Excellent. I just want to let everyone know Eddie Cervantes was sworn in today as an attorney, which is really exciting. He did that up in Salt Lake. He'll be sworn in by game on Friday. We're going to determine a time. So he'll officially be able to work and sign off on documents for the county attorney's office. Uh, apart from that, most of my staff is actually up here in Snowbird right now, going through a training on the uh, child justice center. And we have our new CJC director as well, as well as other members of the CJC team and the MDT, the multidisciplinary team. Um, otherwise we're just reviewing contracts in my office. There'll be next, uh, next meeting, we'll have a closed session uh, for updates on the BRC lawsuit. And some progress there. That's pretty much everything that I have.
All right. And I just want to uh, offer a congratulations and, and Melissa, I believe Melissa, uh, your wife, Stephen, who also works for the county, became a US citizen today, right?
That's, that's correct. I completely uh, spaced that one. Yes, the county officially has another citizen working for it today at noon. Uh, we actually went to her swearing in ceremony and it was uh, very wonderful and lovely. And, and she didn't want to wait to go to Bryce Canyon due to swearing in. She wanted to do it ASAP. And so we did it uh, today. And it was um, it was really neat. I, I wish everyone would have the opportunity to, to see what that process was like. And so, and then also a shout out to the legal women voters. They were there present, helping people get registered to vote, which was really cool.
Awesome. And I see, I think it looks like Melissa's on. So Melissa, very, very hearty congratulations from uh, from the chamber here. All right. Uh, we're up to uh, um, uh, county clerk, Gabe Boytuck. Do you have a report for us today?
Uh, just real quick, after this meeting, I'm going to be driving up to Salt Lake. Um, attending at eight thirty in the morning in the Senate building at the state Capitol. Um, there were a, a bunch of the county clerks. Around the states are um, showing up at a interim committee or we're invited to, to speak and present at an interim committee. For government operations uh, with the uh, with the state legislators. And we're just trying to show a united front uh, that we're, you know, willing and always able to collaborate with, with our state legislators to, to work together. To find solutions um, that work mutually with everyone for elections. Um, and just make, make very clear that, you know. We're, we're always uh, willing to improve. Um, but we want to avoid this sort of death by a thousand paper cuts with regards to piling on more and more. Um, onerous legislation on county clerks um, and our ability to sort of run um, uh, and operate quality and efficient elections. Um, if we keep having more, you know, fifty more rules at every session, it just gets untenable after a certain while. Um, but that clerk's group, you know, we do pride ourselves on um, not being the group during the session of saying no to everything. We, we do pride ourselves on working with the legislators and, and finding solutions that work for everyone. And I think that this, this, that's what this meeting uh, tomorrow morning is going to be about. And I just wanted to make sure to, to go up there and, and be a part of the group. And, and really show that, show that uh, united front. So, yeah.
All right. Thanks, Gabe. Uh, we're up to our uh, county administrator reports, Mallory.
Yeah, um, I have a few things, but most of it is just exciting news and upcoming um. Events for you all to be aware of. So the first is a semi partial announcement. That uh, we were able to hire somebody for the engineer position, but it's not uh. Something we can share in terms of who it is exactly. We want to give them time and be respectful to make sure. Uh, there's no surprises in the paper.
It is.
So I believe they're slated to start um, towards the end of June. So that will be really exciting and hopefully perfect timing for moving out to the new building where planning and zoning and building will go. Um, the other thing, just as a reminder is there will be the Open and Public Meeting Act training. On the twenty-third at ten AM at Star Hall. Um, if you guys aren't able to attend. We will send the link so that you can do it online. Um, and the last thing. Be just a reminder, I know a few commissioners are going to attend. So maybe this is more for the public. But on the twenty-fifth at six PM, they will have the Film Commission Stakeholder Meeting at the Mark. Uh, and I, I know they've sent out something for folks to sign up, but also uh, for people to be able to submit any questions. Whether or not they're able to attend. Uh, we did meet with Bega in August earlier. And so they're kind of using that information to set the agenda. And I know August will also be reaching out to all of you. Just to make sure that the content covers what, what you're hoping for. And just kind of make sure it's meaningful for everybody participating and can help you all as needed. So I, I think.
Great. You do have anything, Quinn?
Oh, roll on, Mallory, go.
All right. So we are up to our general business action items. Uh. And we'll start with action item number one. And this is the county commission review and consideration of our alternative dwelling overlay intent to apply submissions. And this is our action item where we decide on uh, the uh. The intent to apply applicants that we discussed at our two thirty workshop. We had a pretty robust workshop where we, we looked at all the applications. And, and discussed them. And uh, now we will vote on them. And uh, Jenna is with us from planning and zoning.
Item is in consideration of the alternative dwelling overlay intent to apply submissions for RAT two. The alternative dwelling overlay is intended to provide workforce housing for locals, allowing different types of non-traditional housing on a single lot. The ITA process is intended to give the commission the opportunity to evaluate each project proposal and determine those that would receive support. To move on with the full reason application based on the criteria described in Land Use Code, section four point nine point two. Those considerations include being located in a preferred zoning district. Ability with existing community, historic use on the property, traffic impact, commute time and relative impact on water resources. I will just move right into uh, a brief of each of the applications. The first one you see was located at thirteen twenty highway one ninety-one, uh, same location as Canyonlands Field Institute. And they're providing, proposing four units without full sewer and water hookups that would have communal uh, facilities within the rear building. The second application is located at thirty-two oh seven highway one ninety-one. It is the KOA property. And they are proposing twenty-one full hookup RV sites. Third application is located at two two three one highway one ninety-one. It is currently the Sherry Griffiths River Expedition Property and they are proposing nine hookup, excuse me, nine sites. That will not have hookups and have community facilities. Next application is two eight oh five Desert Road for Steve already, proposing seven. Full hookup sites and community, uh, community amenities. Also have two eight one two Spanish Valley Drive for Sarah Sword, proposing for full hookup sites. Their sixth application is fourteen thirty-five Powerhouse Lane, proposing eleven total sites. Next application is split over two parcels at two six 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 and two eight 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 Desert Road. Uh, my cue is the applicant and proposing in nineteen full hookup sites with circular internal driveway. And the last application. It's two nine eight zero Spanish Valley Road and it's Anthony Rico proposing seven full hookup dwelling sites around an internal driveway. Do you have any particular questions about each of those that maybe you didn't speak about at the workshop?
You don't have any extra questions? Okay.
Start it with a motion.
That'd be great, Mary. Thank you.
I moved to state support for the commercial property thirteen twenty Highway one ninety one, three thirty two oh seven Highway one ninety one, twenty two thirty one Highway one twenty ninety one and one fourteen thirty five Powerhouse Creekside. To move ahead forward with the full rezone request for the alternative dwelling overlay. I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion on the table by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Hadeen to approve numbers one, two, and three and six, right? And I will also add that that totals forty five site units. Any discussion?
I guess first, I just wanted to clarify. I thought Mary mentioned three sites, one, two, and three. Did she also mention six?
Yeah, we powerhouse because that got unanimous vote yes. So I just thought the ones that our straw polls were positive, might as well. Two and one.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion?
I was waiting for Mary to talk first if she wanted to. I just wanted to make some general remarks as we're going to be voting on others too, and the issues are kind of similar. I think when we discussed the this program, you know, there was a lot of concern about impacts on neighborhoods. And a lot of people were urging us to sort of write in some very, you know, hard rigid protections into the law that would, you know, prevent us from building, you know, permitting these things in inappropriate places. And instead, we said, no, we'll just, you know, use our judgment on each one. We're not obligated to approve them. And so I I think these four, they're Mary, haven't, I I support the motion. I think these four are not, you know, don't cause big problems. Three of them are along Highway one ninety one and the one on Powerhouse Lane is it just doesn't have, the land ownership patterns there are a little bit strange and it doesn't have anything adjacent. I don't think it's going to have a big impact on anyone. I think many of the others that we'll be talking about later do have that kind of impact. They often have residential lots on three out of four sides. And so I just, I just want to, you know, I I find myself, you know, reluctant to approve those sorts of things. Unless, you know, there's something unusual that would make it an exception to the rule, you know, the general rule that we don't want to plunk these down in the middle of lower density residential areas. So.
Thanks, Kevin. Anybody have anything they want to add to that? All right, I'll call for a vote on the motion to approve those four numbers one, two, three, and six. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. So we've approved forty five units. And I would, let's see, so the other ones that we haven't discussed yet are numbers four, five, seven, and eight. And I guess I would entertain a motion to approve any of those or or not approve and maybe starting with number fours is the next one in numerical order.
So I'm going to make a motion to, and I'm not sure how to state this, to not support. But are we really denying? I know, right? We're just not supporting it.
The intent.
For the following ADO ITA applicant at twenty eight oh five Desert Road.
Thanks, Trish. Anyone care to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hadeen and a second by Commissioner Walker, discussion of this one.
I'm just going to make a couple of statements that I I do think this really puts pressure on residential neighborhoods. It's a flag lot. It immediately puts pressure on the adjacent properties. This is not compatible with existing zoning and it's not on a main arterial or collector.
Thanks, Trish.
I would just add that we have a cap on the number that we can approve. And so with those that we just approved, we're down in the thirties. And so I feel like there might be some better options coming down the pipe.
Thanks. And actually, I'll clarify with the math, there'll be, there's twenty eight left that we are able to approve, I believe, with the forty five that we have approved.
Yeah, I I was beginning to say what Evan just said, so.
Right, okay. Any other comment on this particular property? All right, I'll call for a vote. All the motion is to deny this one. So all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And not supporting it, right? Okay. And all opposed to the motion? Okay, and all abstaining? I'm sorry, Evan, I did you?
Voted with the masses.
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay, so it looks like the motion to deny passes by a six to one vote with Commissioner Winfield in opposition. And then let's move on to number five. And that's the one, yeah, on twenty eight twelve Spanish Valley Drive.
Can I make one more comment about this? I realize we've already had quite a bit of discussion. I did talk to Bill Olson that kind of in between the two meetings. He did want to really point out this massive drainage easement
Right.
on that property. So just make sure that you guys are aware of that. And what that did, he said at one point, he had the homeowners calling, I don't know if I want to call it a complaint, but, you know, calling the county because they did have a camper over on that side that had been there illegally camping for some time and it basically fragmented and they weren't able to get out of the property. So just note that, yeah, it's it's an issue. And I and I do want to reiterate, you know, this property has had a lot of illegal camping going on. And maybe it would make it better. Maybe it would make it worse. I don't know.
Yeah.
I can't state that, but.
And I'll say, as as to, speaking of the illegal camping going on, I think when we worked, when we had all those workshops at the ADO and we were talking about all that. I think one of the things that we did talk about was in, it was like a path for for all that illegal camping in the county to, you know, there's sites that were appropriate that they like the swamp, for example, and this might fall under that, I don't know. But that it does give them a path forward to legally use their property in that in that manner. Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, I think the thing that changed my mind, I would say, on it is just both Trish and Mike and the impact that they're having currently on their neighbors and it being negative. Negative impact on them and that's maybe a big issue. We really need to be good neighbors.
Yeah.
One of my number one complaints when we denied the one on Green was the same things.
Yeah. There's a good point.
Do we have a motion?
There's no motion.
I will swing the opposite way and I say that I think with this being on a feeder road and close to the future bike path and only being four units, that I think that it would take strides to bring people into compliance for activity that seems to be happening and and try to tighten that up. And so with that, I would move to state support for the ADO intent to apply application for the corner of Spanish Valley Drive and Spanish Valley Trail before with the full rezone request for the ADO via the application.
All right, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Clapper.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner McGann, discussion. This is one I was really on the fence about myself and I think I tend to agree with Evan on this and that it is, it is only four properties. It is on the on the bike path there, so it's an easy way to get in. And it's also right there on Spanish Valley Drive, so it's it it's and it seems to be a little bit separated. It's on that busy corner, so this one to me feels like it's okay. And again, I could go either way. And I think if there is, if there is a lot of complaints on this, I think they they will come out in that public hearing process. And and I may very well change my mind on this, but I I, yeah. Mike?
I just don't want to be the person to says there's already illegal camping on on my hypothetical property so that I have better approval odds later on. That that is a serious question in my mind.
That, no, that's a, that's a really good point. I think, so I I think probably a good place for that would be that maybe it doesn't, yeah, yeah, I don't know.
That is concerning. There's already illegal, illegal camping on my, so I have better odds of getting approved than that.
The the point is that there was not an option for for things like this that that's obviously a need.
Forward before.
So when there's friends and family that are living in someone's driveway, for lack of a better place, this is a route to give them an option to to come out of the shadows and live in compliance. And so it's it's not but rewarding illegal activity as much as as admitting that this is the realities of living in the valley.
And I think Kevin had his hand up for a little while on on Zoom, so I'll give him the floor for a sec.
Um, yeah, but I I think Stephen may also be wanting to talk. I'd be happy to make his remark first.
Yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
I just, I just want to point out, without the threat of enforcement or actual enforcement, I I don't know that there's any evidence to suggest that opening these up or or taking people and shifting them into the light. Right now, the people that are camping illegally, there's really no incentive for them to leave where they're at. And so I I I would hope that people would come into compliance. But with them being legal, they can be marketed, advertised at a higher rate for the rent. And so I I don't really think that's, I I don't think there's any currently any evidence to suggest that by providing these options, we're having people move into compliance. I just want to note that for the commissioners.
Thank you. Kevin?
I guess, Mike, so I I was unaware of, you know, current camping on this property generating complaints. But but if that's true, then we've sort of given this a dress rehearsal and we've seen that it, you know, I guess we'd want to investigate. You know, see, is it just one person complaining over and over again, or is a lot of different people? But, you know, I I guess my my hunch is that this is not the best place to put these things in. And I think if there, if indeed there are current complaints, I think that's evidence that it's maybe not the greatest place for them.
Mary? You know, I've I I lean to say, I think this could be a really good place just because it's on that busy intersection and it's going to be easy to get to the highway or on the bike path. And to the question that we keep bringing up, well, we will be using up all of our spots. Well, to me, that's not a bad thing because it's the longer anyone has to wait to begin their process, you know, material is going to go up, things are going to happen, things are going to get harder. So anyway, I just, I think that should be a consideration, but not a big consideration if there is one of the sites that we think is worthwhile, not to turn it down because we won't get just to save the spots.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment on this particular?
Um, Joff, can I say something? This is Elisa.
Oh, yeah, sure, Elisa, please.
I just wanted to bring up the precedent that was set in the round one submissions with the NavTech property being that they were in the same circumstance where they had illegal camping going on and complaints and were being submitted. And that was kind of how this whole thing, one of the impetus, you know, for this whole program to get started. So I just wanted to bring that up and not that it, you know, it doesn't have the same qualities perhaps in terms of the location preferences. As Kevin was describing, it might be problematic in that regard, but but it does have the same similarities in terms of, you know, the the existence of illegal camping and then bringing them into compliance as the NavTech property, which was approved.
Thank you, Elisa. Good point.
Yeah, also I
Yeah.
There are no current or most recent complaints on file of the property.
Okay. Good, thank you. All right. Motion on this?
Yeah.
You did, right. Sorry. I forgot. Yeah, Evan, yeah, Evan motioned. Mary seconded. Okay, so I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Clapper and a second from Commissioner McGann. So I will call for a vote on the motion to approve. All those in favor of this property, please raise your hands. And all those opposed? All right, this one, the motion fails by a three to four count with Commissioners McCurdy, Hadeen, Winfield, and Walker in opposition. We will, let's move on to number seven on our list. Uh, yes, Mary?
I'll make a motion so we can just begin the discussion. I moved to state support for the property on twenty six sixty six and twenty six eighty eight Desert Road to move forward with the full rezone request for alternative overlay dwelling.
All right, I have a motion on the table from Commissioner McGann to approve and a second from Commissioner McCurdy.
I I'll just state that, you know, I, as I said before, I don't think we should hold back because of wanting to save for the third round. And I felt like a lot of the concerns that I had were addressed by Mike when he came up and discussed his thoughts. I think especially where the road is going to come out, not on Desert Road, but elsewhere. I I I think it's a good idea.
Any other comment on this one? Kevin?
I would just, sorry, Kevin. I was just going to say that to to throw it out to the applicant that the recording on the the plat or the master plan that they would be stick built units would get a more support, I would say.
Yeah, for me, for sure.
In the next round.
Right.
When it comes down.
The public hearing.
Yes, the next day, yeah.
And Kevin, do you have something you want to add?
Um, yeah, I I think this is one of the ones that I'm I'm most on the fence about, but I I I think the applicant, you know, throughout the idea that perhaps the entrance could be on Mesa Road rather than Desert Road. I I think that's a good idea and I hope that's how it goes in the the final plat. And I also second what Evan just said that, you know, maybe we should you know, write it into the development agreement that these are, you know, these are, these are not trailers, they're tiny homes or stick builders or something like, something like that. I I think those are helpful. Is is it enough to get me to vote for it? I'm I'm not so sure, but I I do feel torn about this one. I mean, I think it is surrounded on most sides by residential areas, but I do appreciate that it's pretty close to the highway and especially if the access is on Mesa Road, that might lessen some of the impact on on adjacent properties.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Do just want to bring up the fact of moving the entrance. The proposal, of course, would be made of that, but also moving that would be in the determination of the supervisor.
Right. Good point. Okay. All right, so the motion is to approve from Commissioner McGann and a second from Commissioner McCurdy. All those in favor of approving this, raise your hands. And all opposed? Okay, so the motion passes six to zero with Commissioner Walker abstaining. And let's move on to number eight. So by my count, that brings us up to sixty four approvals. I believe, right? Yeah. And so ostensibly you have nine left to give. But well, let's move on to number eight at this point. And that is the one at twenty eight ninety Spanish Valley Drive. This is the one that had previously come up before us in January.
I I just had a little something to add from that I noticed from the last, when we were doing the workshop, if I could for a second.
Sure, Elisa.
Okay, on this, the just a couple of properties down south on Spanish Valley Drive is the approved HTHO ten development called Desert Soul, which is is going to be forty two units of quite dense townhomes. which is um is going to be forty two units of um quite dense uh townhomes. So that's just kind of to the south of the of the property. Um, and then just a little to the north where Spanish Trail Road intersection is, right across the street there is all um, it's already zoned um for lar- I think it's small lot or large lot. Uh, large lot residential, which is half acre lot, so it's slightly denser than the rural residential. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, on either side of kind of surrounding, not directly adjacent, but kind of surrounding this pro- property, there's um some higher density going on in that in that general area. And then across the street where the agriculture is, I believe that's the conservation easement, so that's not going to be developed. Um, and I think, oh, and the only thing I wanted to clarify, Jenna, did we ever hear from the applicant if they are proposing tiny homes on these sites or if that was ever fully decided?
They are, yes.
Yeah, so I don't know if that was pointed out in the um presentation, but in his materials, I believe those are also supposed to be tiny homes and so the consideration could be made to, you know, also require that in the development agreement, if that helps.
Thanks, Elisa. Uh, Commissioner Winfield has had a.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the ADO for the property twenty eight ninety Spanish Valley Drive.
Thanks, Bill.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Winfield and a second from Commissioner McCurdy. Uh, further discussion on this one? Yeah, this is, I mean, so we have sixty four, this would uh units, so nine remaining, this take would take up seven of those. Um. All right, this is one I've definitely been on the fence on both if if both both meetings. Um. Uh, that's all I have to add, I guess.
I know, I mean, I I again would be more receptive. I do think it goes against the character of that area. Um, I realize we are getting some higher density out there, but they're stick-built, you know, permanent homes. So to me, that's not really comparable. Um, you know, I appreciate Mike coming and and stating like this is what it's going to be and this is what it's going to look like. And if I had that clarification from this homeowner, I'd appreciate it, but I'm probably not going to vote for it because I don't have that.
Um, yeah, I I mean, I guess I'm not persuaded by the fact that down the road, there's an HTHO development and in general, this area is 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 not very dense. And I think in general, we should be making these density decisions in the context of a planning process, which we're in the middle of right now, not lot by lot. Also, you know, we've we've come very close to filling our quota. I I think we'll see something more appropriate next round, and I'd be inclined to wait for that.
Anybody else have anything to add? Bill or Mike kind of speak in in favor of it or?
Uh, speak in favor of it. Uh, I've spoken to neighbors as they uh uh.
Yeah.
Uh, personal knowledge.
Right.
Yeah, the the one on the left. But the current lot situation of that one is is very obscure. Uh, I mean, in lot design and there is uh density uh coming, and I would like to know if it was actually stick-built. Uh, uh, again, I mean, this is conversation over uh the entirety of these. Uh, but uh with that, uh, we're still in need for uh more housing in near our mark. The the amount has nothing to do with my decision. Uh, we we need more now. Yeah.
I think Alyssa made the point. I mean, it's very clear across the road is never going to have anything developed on it and density is increasing all the way around this practically. So eventually it's it's coming and let's get these so that the neighbor down the road has some place for those homes to go to or those vans. They shout it.
Uh, yeah, please, Jenna.
Sure, this speaks to your concern at all, but the proposal listed there as to be developed as traditionally built or pre-manufactured tiny. I'm sure that hits on your question.
Ah, okay.
Jenna, are you screenshot? Because I've seen it on YouTube, but I've not seen it on.
Ah, oh, yeah.
Maybe unshare the issue.
No, I'm sure I pulled up my own packet.
This location and this is a cut and paste for the applicant's narrative to develop this traditionally built and pre-manufactured.
Can we go back to the site plan? Oh, awesome. You're doing it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm torn. I'm also uh kind of with Kevin and like that I was I hope that there's like dream projects coming down the pipe, but um to Courtney's point earlier, it's, you know, a bird in the hand is worth two bush. So it's like I'm kind of torn here. Um, yeah, and if we uh if we approve the application process a- as in invite them to continue and develop a full application, would we still review uh future ones? Like if there's only two units left, would we still read one for?
And and as we saw before, not all of these may pass the
Right.
public hearing phase either. So there could be stuff potentially opening up, but.
Because it's also, yeah, because.
I think it might, I think I think it's worth a review as well because it might speak to, um, I mean, this is a one-year pilot, right? So it might speak to us. If there's good quality projects coming along, then you you know, might motivate the commission to it's continue with that program.
But I guess my question is, it's not our last chance to pick and choose as a so like uh, if there is a dream project that comes through, we can still kind of say, oh, let's go this direction. I mean, like.
Yeah, I mean, I I think it gets more awkward to turn it down after they go to all the trouble of doing a full application, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, and and also, on the other hand, too, Evan, if you were thinking that if somebody could just apply for the rezone through for round two with these other applications without going through the intent to apply, that that wouldn't be allowed. I don't I don't believe they have people through the ITA. Um, yeah.
But it but I think it's all, I mean, I'm not inclined to to change this hundred and fifty cap that we put on. I think it's a good idea to wait and see how the program works before doing more than that, but you know, nothing prevents us from changing the cap if we see something really we really want to do.
Yeah. Yeah. I think I'll I'll throw just one more thing out that that I always think about is that it is right there on the um on the future bike path. And 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 I I I love the idea of people just, you know, being able to work from here and ride their bike in, short ride into town on the path. And that's part of the reason that we've um, you know, set aside such a such a such a big expenditure of energy and funds to to create that. It's it helps my thinking a little bit, not not hugely, but it's a consideration. Mike?
I just reached the bird in the hand. Uh, the need is now and just to speak on the bike path, uh, it would have been nice about two years ago to have one more house on the market when I was homeless. It would have been nice to have nine. So my I lean towards any is better than none with the bird in the hand comment, but.
Plan, we're wanting to have a conversation.
Sure, Jenna.
So when Lisa and I started two years ago, this particular applicant, this will be the third attempt that this applicant tried to propose housing in this fashion. First being rezoned, first by T A and then.
Call for a vote.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've had a a lot of discussion. I can do that. Um, all right, so we do have a motion on the table by Commissioner Winfield and a second by Commissioner McCurry to approve this one. Um, all those in favor of this one, raise your hands. And all opposed. Motion passes five to two with Commissioners Walker and Hadeen uh in opposition.
And I just in closing with this, I do think where they mentioned it's going to be stick-built or, you know, that needs would be good to have completely clear when they move through the process.
So would you would like me to write it into the development agreement?
Yes.
Can we look towards that on a a few? Uh, I mean, it really helps me in my decision.
And 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 on a broader topic, uh, this is just like a invitation to continue the process. I would say people that were considering uh putting in new projects for the third round should continue to do so. Keep working.
I think that's a great point, Evan. Yeah, we don't know what's going to happen.
Highlight Evan's point.
Yeah, and and the public hearing process is robust. And and as we saw before, people will come forward and 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 public opinion and, you know, neighbors' opinions, I think, I think are persuasive. So it's a good point.
Yeah.
When are those uh once the third round due?
It's.
September eighth is the deadline for ITAs. If we begin taking ITA submissions first, September first. The updated calendar is available on the planning and zoning website today.
Great. All right, uh, thank you so much, Jenna. Um, it is ten after six, uh, so we have our six o'clock citizens to be heard. Uh, comment period. Is there anyone here in the chamber who would like to come forward and make themselves heard at this time? Uh, how about on Zoom? Is there anyone who is tuned in on Zoom who would like to make a comment? Doesn't look like it. Okay. All right, so that we have that. So let's uh continue with our meeting and we're up to number agenda item number two. Resolution approving the final plat of the Arawara subdivision located at uh thirty two thirty one Carroll Drive, parcel number zero two dash year zero one five dash year zero one two. And uh this is back to Jenna.
This item is a consideration for resolution. I preview a final plat of the Arawara subdivision located at three two three one Trail Drive. Property consists of a two point five acre parcel zone rural residential, one dwelling unit exists on the west side of the property and a recent permit to construct a detached garage slash shop in the same location has also been obtained. The subject parcel is being divided into two lot. The west lot, lot one, will be one point zero one acres and the east will be one point two eight acres. A road dedication will be reported with the flat that consists of point twenty one acres portion along the portion of land along Carroll Drive, which would be improved to county standards. Uh, drainage waiver was obtained by the engineer for the property and right-of-way improvements, including uh replacement and improvement of two existing culverts within the right-of-way. And several plans of which have been approved by the county engineer. The one unique item about this application is that typically in subdivisions, there's a required ten-foot utility easement down the center. It would be split five feet on either side of that parcel boundary. Uh, and however, in this case, uh, the east side of the development of lot two is located entirely within a drainage easement. And Dominion had determined in their own analysis that that five-foot utility easement along the west boundary of lot two wouldn't be sufficient to install the gas line. And instead, they would require a ten-foot easement along lot two from Carroll Drive. Sorry, I'm trying to think. Um, updates the same building envelope. The applicant didn't agree to the ten-foot easement, therefore, no gas utility easement will be dedicated on this plat. A plat now note, however, has been included that describes that if the property owner does desire gas to be installed at a future date, they would need to work with Dominion independently in the county to secure that easement. Due to there not being a gas utility easement or gas service installed as part of the subdivision, Dominion's signature has been omitted from the plat. And after review, this solution was determined acceptable by all parties, including the county attorney. The subdivision overall meets the requirements of the Land Use Code regarding lot design and the general plan in regards to density. And based on those findings, the planning department staff will recommend approval of the resolution of plat.
Thanks, Jenna. Yes, Trish. Yeah.
Thank you, Jenna. Um, I move to approve the findings of facts set forth in the staff report dated April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the proposed resolution approving the final plat of Arawana subdivision with the following conditions. The owner shall submit an acceptable completion assurance bond for the incomplete public improvements and infrastructure warranty bond for completed accept accepted public improvements as established in the SIA to the county in the amount set forth in the SIA prior to recordation of the final plat. And two, the owner shall record the SIA simultaneously with the final plat in the recorder's office.
All right, I have a motion on the table to approve from Commissioner Hadeen and a second from Commissioner Winfield. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
I'm sorry, Jack. I I I was muted. I didn't realize it. Um.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, so so sorry about that. Um, I I guess this, and and I apologize for reading this up so late in the process, but I don't I don't think we've seen this one before. Um, a few years ago, when there was a subdivision for Nuevo Court, um, an issue came up that, you know, in our land use code, we have a limit to the number of units that can be on a cul-de-sac. And for that reason, they were not allowed to to subdivide, you know, to the maximum number of lots that would, you know, they were limited to, I think, like eight lots instead of eleven or something, because I think there's a limit to twenty units being on a cul-de-sac. Um, Carroll Drive and Juniper Drive together are are one giant cul-de-sac. Um, and I I think there's a similar issue there. Um, I don't, I mean, this is just adding one additional lot. It's not such a big deal, but I you know, this is going to come up I've again and again, I think, in in this area. Um, and anyway, I just wanted to see what planning staff had to say about that.
Uh, Jenna, is Elisa still on too? Did you? Did you uh have anything you wanted to say to that, Jenna? Sorry to push you on the spot.
Hey, it's just it's a child we excerpt in our search and codes.
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking at it too. Sorry, Jenna. I was muted earlier. Um, I would think that Bill wrote, you know, the road supervisor would have caught it if it was a problem, but I'm sure it's not at this point. Um, but yeah, going forward, it'll be something to be looking at for sure.
Yeah, but and just to be clear, I'm talking about section seven three eight of the Land Use Code.
Mm-hmm.
Um, anyway, I you know, there there is only one entrance and exit to this big complex of roads, and um there's some large lots there that will probably be subdivided before too long. So if I I think if something comes up again in this area, we should make up our minds how we're interpreting that section of the Land Use Code. And and again, we have sort of a precedent from Nuevo Court where um we did limit the amount that a property could be subdivided because otherwise we would have exceeded that twenty unit limit.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Um, any further discussion on that? All right, I'll call for a vote. The motion to approve was made by Commissioner Hadeen with a second by Commissioner Winfield. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed. And I didn't ca- I didn't catch your vote, Kevin.
I I I voted yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. Uh, all right, we're up to agenda item number three, Special Events Program Manager Job Description, and Renee Baker, our Personal Services. As well as Mallory.
I'm sure. Good evening. Uh, so uh if you remember back in September of twenty twenty-two, we came to the commission with a request for the Special Events Coordinator position. Uh, this position was created to in the intent to establish kind of a single point of contact for our special events permitting process. Um, our newly created ordinance at that time. Um, it was budgeted under the Economic Development Department, but housed at the arena just to have office space, but also kind of build familiarity with that facility and the events that happen out there. Uh, but also was always intended to be a kind of fluid position in the county and in where the county needs um why greater, I guess, um to to sum that up. Um, the position uh is is being moved under economic development just to better align with some of the tourism and economic development impact and need there. Uh, so we are asking that the position be modified um to include some increased duties and including um analytical duties with the intent of utilizing data to analyze the economic impact of special events and um integrate the community and special events grants into the permitting process, collecting event data and including an impact analysis uh of that newly collected data, but also what's currently available and oversee the small budget that is tied to special events and community grants. Uh, with this job modification from coordinator to program manager, uh, it would allow for an increased capacity without added an additional position. So for pulling. So for pulling from the market data for similar positions uh with these increased duties, it is my recommendation um to place it at the grade eleven, uh, which is a two-grade increase on the twenty-two-three grading sector. Do you have anything to add?
Thanks, Renee. Um, any of you guys have a question for Renee about this? Or a comment? Sure, uh, okay. Got it. Mary?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the updated special event program manager job description and grade placement at grade eleven on the two thousand and twenty-three Grand County grade and step chart and authorized recruitment and hiring effective five seventeen two thousand and twenty-three. Eliminating and replacing the current special event coordinator's jobs description on the twenty-two-three position pay pay plan.
Thanks, Mary. All right, I have a motion on the table uh to approve from uh Commissioner McGannan, second from Commissioner McCurdy. It's in McGannan McCurdy together a lot tonight. It's a lot of. Lot of McM's here. Uh, okay, any discussion on this or further questions for Renee?
Just make my comment. I'm really excited about the data collection of this job because we hear so often the defense bring in all this money and and they may or they may not. We really don't have anything. It's all anecdotal. So that this position is going to help us understand the financial impact of events is really exciting to me.
I'm gonna tie into that question too with the data collection. Are is it expected within this physician's job duties that they will be uh taking down um events that are not following uh guidelines, et cetera? Not so much in a sense of enforcement, uh, but are they gonna be taking that data down? Complaints, et cetera.
Like data data collection on the complaint side of it?
Yes, yes, not 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 only the fiscal side of it, but uh complaint side of it, pros, the cons, uh, data.
Yeah.
So one thing that they'll be doing uh that's already in place is for our referral agencies. After the event, they do a survey um and we want to make that a little more robust, but make sure that we're capturing. One, if you had any conditions, were they met? Um, two, if you had concerns, you know, how how do you see us addressing that? Or what do you need next year? What would you recommend? But also, we definitely want to get the strengths, right? Um, so I think that will be a big thing with the position is truly looking at more of the analytical and making it fine. But we want good and bad. We don't want to focus on, you know, something.
It'd be so nice to have pros and cons.
Yes.
Thanks. For sure.
Yeah.
Bill?
Yeah, I might have missed it. I'm sorry. Um, where does this fall in our org chart?
Uh, it will be under the economic development department, so um under August department. I should have included an updated org chart. I apologize. I will do that next time I prove your position changed, but um not supervising any staff within that department, but same supervision as before as far as event holders.
Okay, sorry, I keep interrupt.
No, you're fine.
But um actually, so it will be under economic development, but we put in there um in collaboration with our office, just because I I think that there's so much going on through our office and connecting with the county attorney that uh it would be ideal to have that person also closely connected with us. Uh, and to that, and I think with office space, what we would be looking at is they would go out in economic development for the time being because they have uh, you know, two spaces open or maybe just one, but they don't have a vista yet. And then uh when the new building for building and planning and zoning um is up and running, I think we are looking at having building inspector office uh switched to a space for Chris and also for this position. So they would be in between economic development and us, but they would also have a proper space.
Yeah, us being admin, obviously.
Totally, and just working hand in hand with the county attorney was kind of where my question was leading there, just with all of the issues we've had with actual events.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions or comments? And I can't see Kevin anymore. Yeah. Do you do you have a comment, Kevin?
Um, I I didn't, but since you asked me, um, yeah, no, I I think um I just wanted to say hats off to Mallory and others for continuing to find find tune the special event process. And I'm um, you know, excited that this is gonna, you know, help us. You know, make something really positive about the the events in our community.
Great. All right, I have a motion on the table from um Mary and a second from Mike uh to approve. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Uh, passes unanimously. All right, thanks, Renee. Uh, next up, we have agenda item number four, Grand County Search and Rescue Winter Equipment Grant Funding. And I have on here Aaron Looney Triggs, but it looks like Jim. Nah, I was gonna say it looks like Jim's here, so.
Different.
I I'm gonna, before you start, Jim, I'm sorry, I'm gonna excuse myself. And and since Kevin's on uh Zoom for for the next couple of minutes, I'll I'll pass the chair over to Mary, if that's okay with everybody. I'll be right back.
Are we taking a break?
You still got a quorum.
You got it.
Now, I have Jim Webster. I'm not Aaron. Aaron's out of town on family leave. Um, but anyhow, we uh and Aaron actually did a lot of the work. Uh, have have been approved for a state park, actually a state vision of outdoor recreation grant to the tune of seventy-eight thousand, six hundred dollars for upgrading our winter motorized winter rescue equipment. So and that would cover a couple of snowmobiles, uh, and Targo and some associated uh equipment uh that that uh will uh really enhance our winter capabilities, winter response capabilities. The two snowmobiles we have now are twenty years old. They're not uh very adequate for uh the situation, the conditions up there. And you also may know that our we're getting a lot more winter time. Those mountains. So we got the grant, but it's a little complicated. We need to uh, we need to have a match. Uh, county needs to match twenty-five percent. It comes up to nineteen thousand, six fifty. And uh what we need to do is we need to be able to have the money for all of these purchases upfront. So what we propose and we've talked to Mr. Barrett about it is to uh pull money out of the capital equipment account and make these purchases in the next several months, so we can have these things online by winter time. And uh as we get the grant money coming back into the county as we purchase these items, that will reimburse the capital fund. The twenty-five percent match, that's Grand County match, uh, what we will do with that will also be reimbursed, but through the state of Utah uh search and rescue reimbursement fund. We're also very successful in in getting reimbursements for many things, including equipment like this. So it's really what will come out of Grand County's coffers uh besides the floating the loan, if you will, it will be a zero. Any questions?
Yes, Bill.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I move to approve the State Parks OHB grant funding for the Grand County Search and Rescue.
Now, second that.
Okay, motion by Bill and seconded by Trish. Discussion?
I'll just say, Jim, as always, thank you so much. I know how hard you guys work.
Yeah, bet you.
It's a big deal.
We have a motion on the floor to uh approve the Parks OHB grant funding. And from Bill and seconded by Trish. Any further discussion?
I just would uh encourage there to be a skier training on the south side of the mountain this year for the skier rescues in San Juan County.
We we have, we actually have some kind of big plans for maybe uh one or two day block.
Excellent.
Which would hopefully include San Juan County participation.
Well, for August's sake, I fully support the uh.
I remember that, too.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate them here and listening to all the discussions.
Were you there?
Thanks, Jim. And thanks, Mary. Um, all right, we're checking them off. We'll move up to agenda item number five, independent contractor agreement with Herman Global Incorporated for international marketing strategy consulting. And uh we have August Granith, our economic development director, as well as Melissa Stocks, our assistant marketing director, social media and industry partnerships.
Yeah, so Melissa's gonna take the lead on this one. I'll fill in if there's any gaps. I should say our newest US citizen should be taking the lead on this.
Right.
Um, and to the previous comments, I do uh fully understand and appreciate the support of our Grand County Search and Rescue, especially the winter. Yeah.
All right, Melissa.
Yes. So I'm here in Salt Lake right now, but I'm ready for the presentation. Alice, would you like me to run the presentation? Would you like to start?
Uh, I mean, maybe I can just do it at a high level and then you can take any follow-up.
Perfect, okay.
Uh, so last year, as a part of the twenty-two-two budget process, um, ten thousand dollars was approved towards international marketing strategy, international market consulting on with the logic that we um as budgeted in twenty-three, we have, you know, a certain amount of money that we go towards cooperative marketing uh with the state of Utah in international markets. So they have a strong international team. They know which markets they want to be in that are strong, that are upcoming on and have a really great intel and data about where to be. And, you know, how to be in those in those markets and kind of like highly effective ways with not so much money from our side of the office. Um, however, within that context, um, you know, we have to produce materials for Moab, you know, whether that's a slide deck at a travel agent education forum in Belgium. Or whether that is, you know, putting together um just like an itinerary that would be relevant for, you know, the Indian market. So so there's a there's some creative pieces that we have to put together that's value positioning our our own market within the state's kind of efforts within some of those international. So the thought was we should work uh with the firm to kind of do some market analysis in the places that we're going to be in uh to advise our piece of that cooperative marketing. So Melissa went out, got bids from three firms, um, our own Love Communications, Herman Global Incorporated by our own, I mean, our agency of record, as well as TransPerfect on and uh recommending the bid with Herman. On and so maybe Melissa, the thing that would be best to speak to is what we're getting out of this, as well as why you're recommending the the choice here proposal.
Okay, well, uh, we like uh like all I say, since the borders are open, we decide to target again the international market. And um Hermann Glove is an international marketing strategic consultant who will help us to improve our international sustainable marketing strategy focused on the best international market like Germany, France, Australia and UK. And I really like uh the service of Jer- the Hermann Global because it's it's the whole package. They're gonna translate, they're gonna do the post, they're gonna do the strategy. And they're gonna, they actually work with the Utah Office of Tourism, so they understand the market. And they understand that we are focused on the sustainable. So they're gonna create and publish engagement and content and highlight the unique as aspects of the Grand County. And it's like national parks, the restaurants, uh, the outfitters, and of course, the responsible travel. You guys have any question, any particular question about this service?
Anybody have a question for Melissa? Yeah, anyone care to make a motion in that case?
Make a motion.
All right, Trish.
I move to approve the contract with Herman Global Inc. for international marketing strat- strategy consulting at the cost of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Second by Bill. All right. Um, yeah, thanks for your work on this, Melissa. I, for one, very much value our international visitors. Um, we definitely had a dip in international visitation with COVID, very noticeable dip. And uh I'm definitely looking forward to to getting those folks back. And uh I just got on a limb and say, dude, I mean, obviously, there's there, there's the obvious markets like, you know, UK, Germany, Australia, like you mentioned. But sitting behind a um a business on Main Street for twelve years, I I very much appreciated folks from Brazil, Colombia, um, China. There there were, there were some of those other markets that I think are are extremely valuable, even Israel. We got a lot of customers from and uh and just kind of to look at the big picture and keep and keep folks coming in from all over the world to enjoy our our awesome uh public lands and recreation. Any other comment? All right, I have a motion on the table to approve. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And again, I cannot see Kevin. Okay, got it.
Yes.
Thanks, Kevin, and the motion passes unanimously.
Melissa, we're so proud of you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, um, we are on to agenda item number six, first amendment to love independent contractor agreement for the twenty-two-three summer marketing campaign options and tourism data and dashboard solution options. Uh, and back to August, and it looks like we have um Mark Stephenette. And I think is Chris still on as well?
Yeah, Chris is there.
Okay, great. Yeah, I can't see everybody who's on. So uh, yeah, go ahead, August.
Sure, um, Steven wanted to make sure y'all had.
Yeah. Got it, so it's us.
Thank you, Steven, for making sure that our missions are end up prepared. Um, so high level, there's basically two different questions on one focused on the summer marketing campaign budget that was approved last meeting at a hundred thousand dollars total spent. Um, so Mark is gonna go through uh two additional tier options there. Um, an additional hundred thousand for a total two hundred thousand dollars spent. Uh, some additional two hundred thousand dollars for total grand total. Then separately, um, it seems like Adam, who's the data specialist for Love Traveling, may or may not be able to join us, but Mark and I will do our best to explain the difference between um these three different data packages uh that you would you would be asking Love to consider. We already have um thirty-one thousand dollars budgeted for these services uh for this year. So these numbers that you see here, uh, on top of that thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, the one thing to note in terms of the numbers of the motion is that one of the contractors requires that we are the direct contractor rather than subcontracting through Love. So the total numbers on your handouts are gonna be five thousand, seven hundred dollars for the numbers of the motion, just for reference. Basically, just uh three tiers, smaller, you have large, different or best both scenarios. Um, other pieces of quick context is that the travel council board was presented with both of these kind of suites of options and recommended that the county commission uh consider, they recommended a two-hundred-thousand-dollar additional spend as well as the better data package. So I think with that, Mark, unless there's any initial questions about like high-level context, um, I guess the only thing I was gonna mention, as Chris pointed out earlier, I ran on have some initial uh initial budget scenarios for, we had, you know, this six months of the year that was previously going to diversification dollars, coming back over into establishing a tourism category, plugged in the recommended budget changes from within our office, uh, just to make sure that some things that we need to get in there are in there. Both of these max options would fit uh in that budget scenario, so. Both of these max options would fit, uh, in that budget scenario, so. However, both of them would be additional on top of what's there.
All right, just to clarify, August, we have three options in the, uh, campaign option descriptions. The $100,000 one is the one that we already approved at the last meeting, correct? Okay, so we we can either stay where we were at initial 100 or add an additional 200.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Yes, maybe we start there and let Mark kind of present the options.
That sounds great.
Sounds good. I'll show my screen here. I'm not sure how well it'll show up there. Okay, perfect. Okay, thanks so much, and good evening, everybody, and thanks for the opportunity to to run through these options. I'll go through just just a quick, you know, uh, background again, just a reminder. Uh, for the summer campaign strategy, we, the goal is to really inspire and stimulate travel to Moab during the summer months. Um, overall, we'll prospect to our main Moab audiences in key markets during the spring and summer months to continue to intercept and convince travelers that Moab is the right decision and destination for their summer vacations. I'll get back to those three bullets there as as we discuss a little bit further here. Because they they're specific to the creative that we'll be using. Okay, um, when we look at our campaign audiences, we're focusing on the activity-driven planner, so those who are just, you know, looking for all sorts of different activities that Moab is known for. And then the empty nesters, we've known, we've seen a lot of success with the boomers and that specific audience. And then, um, then, of course, the real-time summer travel intenders, looking at similar destinations uh, or Utah content. So we're really focusing on these three different audiences, and they have individual needs or looking for specific things, and we're going to uh, utilize channels, or we are utilizing channels that serve up content that best serves their needs and what they're searching for. Okay, here. As we mentioned in the last commission meeting, there's a few that we're talking about, so the KPIs, so I wanted to make sure that I included here what we're looking for for the key performance indicators. So we we start.
Could you define KPI for me for a second?
Yeah, please, I thank you. Key performance indicator.
Okay.
What are we measuring our success against? So when we look at one, uh, kind of the upper funnel, as we say, we're overall generating awareness of Moab's summer benefits. Okay, and how we do that is we look at overall impressions, how many people are seeing our ads? And then we also look at post-impression activity or campaign, uh, page view activity. So post-impression, we look at that as, let's say you saw an ad, you didn't click on it, but then you came back later and searched for that content again. We love that that marker, that performance indicator, because it shows that you initially saw the ad, you remembered it, and you came up, came back on your own accord. So that's why we love to track that post-impression. And then, of course, we want to increase website traffic and overall brand engagement with with Moab. And so we track that again through the post-impression rate, and we look at these benchmarks here. So, you know, we 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 measure against sort of industry benchmarks, point one five to point three oh, post-impression rate, a click-through rate on native units, which I'll talk more about. And then the average time on page with native articles, and the native articles are, again, that content that people are interested in, we serve that up to them, and it directs them to your, uh, Moab website. And then ultimately, tracking that low funnel success, hotel bookings and revenue, we're we're going all the way tracking to, um, the overall, um, number of bookings, the overall return on your investment based on the average daily rate and and, um, and the number of hotel stays. And we were able to track that through our partner, Adara, Impact. And we know right now, you know, we're getting ahead of this. We know right now the average booking window is about 44 days, so that's why we're getting this in now for that for that June-July activity. Okay, and then as we continue on here, here's the campaign, uh, spend that you uh, have approved. And we're using a couple of different channels here. When you see Sojourn there, when you see Story Gies, those are our partners that are working with us to deploy the the content to our audiences. So on the first one, on the display campaign, that's programmatic display. We're continuing to build upon the theme of nature's masterpiece, creating a new display creative that, uh, shows Moab's dark skies, landscapes, and summer water activities. And this Preserve Nature's Masterpieces are 2.0 messaging to continue to educate and support sustainable travel. And so with the display ads, which I'll show you in a moment, we serve those ads, uh, specific to our audiences with where they are, where they are searching for, uh, and where they are viewing the web real time. So we want to track them and serve them up ads so that we engage with them where they are, uh, in their search intent. And then the native articles, we've created four native articles, uh, really truly revamped articles that were on your website and revamping them and creating them to inspire audiences through long story, uh, long-form storytelling. And we're highlighting specifically a three-day itinerary to encourage a lot longer stays, summer stargazing, and then how to visit Moab year-round, and summer water activities. So let me just share this with you, and you'll notice here, campaign number one, ultimately with our display campaign lasts 16 weeks, and the native campaign is 11 weeks. And we're focusing here on terms of our mark, uh, our audiences, our drive audiences. So focusing on those in Northern Utah, Denver, Colorado Springs, Vegas, Boise, Idaho Falls, and Phoenix. Again, we look at that as our drive market, those who are able to just take a three-day weekend, for example, and and book a book a trip to Moab. So as we go to, um, look at this further, wanted to show you the creative that we're running. Um, I I know these are small kind of thumbnails of of the, uh, the native assets. But again, these articles are specific to summer stargazing and Moab's dark dark parks, spending your summer on the water, and saying that, you know, Moab is an epic destination in any season. And then focusing on the three-day Moab itinerary and those and serving up some of those ideas and examples of what you can do here in in that three-day period. And so the idea here is when people are on their on their devices, we're serving up content to those who want this type of content, who are searching of of things to do, summer activities, places to visit. And so with the great imagery, with the great headlines, we're piquing interest that so that they click, they read, and they book. Here are a few samples of the display ads. We're driving all of these to, uh, the landing page of the three-day Moab itinerary article. So we've got a general display campaign. We look at these as three pillars, general, dark skies, and water base, and then wanted to note here, as as you requested, and we discussed in our last commission meeting, making sure we also have the preservation uh, message instituted here as well. And so we will rotate these ads uh, with the Preserve Nature's Nature's Masterpiece, or Wild Wonders, Billions of Reasons to Visit, Wild Wonders, Always Worth the View, Nature's Masterpiece, Just As Spectacular After Dark. So we'll be rotating all these ads in, and then we watch for optimizations to see which which headline, which image is tracking best, and we optimize for those that are best performing. Okay, so that's that's, uh, option number one, the which is in motion. And then option number two, for the increase to 200,000, um, just wanted to mention here, so we're using the same partners, uh, for, you know, the programmatic display and the native articles, but here we'll be able to not only target those drive markets that I mentioned in option one, but we've added some fly markets as well, such as Chicago, San Francisco, New York City, Houston, Seattle, and LA. And, uh, that our our data is showing the travelers from these markets flying to Mob in the summer, like, so we're, this is all data-centric and making these decisions, informed decisions. And and the difference between summer campaign number one, the $100,000 option, and option two, 200,000, is not only adding the fly markets, but also adding uh, an an additional week of display advertising, an additional four weeks of native advertising. Okay. And then we've added one more, uh, option, the $300,000 option, and what we get here is everything in campaign one and two for both the drive and fly markets. For the programmatic display, we're adding three additional weeks. For the native, we're adding seven additional weeks. And we're adding a third component that's not found in the in the previous two plans of connected TV, CTV. So this is, you know, you're in your living room watching, you're streaming TV on your big TV, we're serving up ads there. And so basically what we would do is we would create an ad with, based on the footage that you you have, and create an ad, uh, leveraging, you know, the new dark skies video piece. We'll target audiences on their large living room TVs via streaming apps, and then retarget those audiences with display ads, bringing them further further down the funnel to action and, you know, for booking. So this is a really nice, great play here, and specifically for these audiences, we'll look at targeting, uh, Denver and LA, um, for the connected TV. These are, these are closer, you know, distant fly markets we were previously targeting in our fly market to continue to penetrate those markets. So those are, those are two that we specifically, uh, um, added to this component as well. So. So a few different options here. So again, option number one in in motion now, and then option number two and three for your consideration here.
Great, thanks, Mark.
Welcome.
Anything you wanted to add to that, August, or anybody have a question for Mark?
I guess just to remind the Travel Council Board, it's on the same presentation.
So if we. It was a very good discussion.
Yeah.
Love, very thoughtful.
Yeah, so if we, so that these monies, if we say we, if we don't approve any of this, and we stay at the $100,000, or we choose the $200,000 option, where does the extra money that we don't spend on this, um, land?
It's not land for.
Okay.
The, in order to make the numbers work, there was just a couple of things that I've trimmed it like some estimates, so like, for example, really the biggest one that was in the budget was, um, last year we did the Moab, uh, grants, marketing our businesses grants, um, that ended up being for two reasons. One, it, you know, unrelated to the start grant, I think part of that is just the amount of dollars that were available, relatively under applied to, and then also given the fact that we don't have someone to develop grant programs in our office of that nature for the rest of this year to revamp that, uh, this capacity standpoint, it's a low priority objective. Uh, so that's really the only thing in terms of what's currently budgeted. That with the maximum amount and the additions that, you know, staff recommended that we need to do to make sure we get things that have changed for grants and other stuff. It's really if the commission wanted that money to go to grants. So it's not, it's not, it's not that I don't have, it's not that I have, like, here's what I would say we'd spend it on. Uh, but as Chris pointed out earlier, uh, you know, if if we allocate the maximum above both of these, then, you know, the the kind of the budget change, uh, there's not a lot of wiggle room on top of that for the rest of the 2023 budget amendment, uh, for other projects that specifically, you mentioned responsible recreation, additional resources towards those projects. Uh, one thing I would speak to that is that we're finding that, given that the Trails Department is so field-oriented, uh, that and that our staff is is pretty much at capacity with a lot of their projects, that some of the recreation, responsible recreation, communications-type projects, uh, it's just not with capacity to go forward, unless it's like people saying, oh, I dropped this other thing, picked this up. That's fallen on me a lot recently.
Yeah.
Um, and so I don't really foresee additional kind of responsible recreation education kind of campaign messaging. Like having the capacity to to activate, um, that this year, um, which is kind of the only thing that has been brought up in my knowledge, what might potentially want, like, additional fundings to go towards, uh, imperatively. Um, and then looking towards 2024, where we find a position where the overall establishment, but it's gonna have a million dollars more than it had this year, whereas this amendment's gonna add half a million dollars approximately. Um, so it's gonna be a whole lot more budget next year for, uh, more comprehensive mixing of kind of visitation-oriented programming as well as kind of education-oriented programming, and you've got a lot of huge ideas for what that mix can look like. But that's kind of.
Um, August.
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Um, I mean, at a, in a previous conversation at one of these committee meetings, I, the idea was discussed that, um, Robert and Melissa might work on some of the response in-town responsible recreation messaging. And that it was perhaps the capacity to do that, um, at least I thought they, or Melissa, agreed to that, is that? So it's when you're talking about capacity, are you just talking about Maddie and Anna, or are you talking about?
No, I'm talking about both. I I think I chalked that up to Melissa and Robert being very.
Can I?
Yeah, sure, go for it, Melissa.
So what we talked with Bill is about, I'm sorry, no, Bill, Kevin, it was about the billboards that we're gonna be in charge of the responsible recreation billboard, because, uh, we're gonna work together with Love Communication. That was our, uh, item that me and Robert, we were working. And about, um, summer campaign, I want to add, um, last year, we didn't do any summer campaign. We did like a fall or winter campaign. And I think, um, we have a lot of businesses that the numbers decrease on summer. So that's why, uh, they a Travel Council Advisory Board suggests that this year is gonna push a little bit more to our visitors in summer. So that's why we are doing this year the summer campaign.
Yeah, and then to follow up on that and answer Kevin's question, I think, specifically, yes, there's a, there's kind of a two-pronged capacity issue. I think that Maddie and Anna are in the field right now, especially in the wintertime, they have more time in the office. Um, and that Melissa and Robert are very busy with the products we already have. One of the things we've been talking about is the potential for, um, you know, now that we have this position in our office that was Ben's role, that is no longer able to be funded without an economic diversification dollars, uh, is thinking about how how that could be restructured to be kind of capacity in our office, driving towards these sustainable tourism, communication, creative campaigns, et cetera. So that's separate, outside the scope of today, but just how I'm thinking through, um, these.
Yeah.
Questions.
Great.
So I said another related. I'm I'm sorry, Jacques.
No, Bill, Bill, let his hand up. Let me, uh, let me get a little quick, and I'll get back to you. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to make the motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to move, I'd move to approve the First Amendment to the Independent Contract Agreement between Grand County and Love Communications for the purpose of authorizing an additional 200,000 as recommended towards the 2023 Summer Marketing Campaign, thereby setting the total media buy-spin limit to 880,000 and payment for data sources and data dashboard solutions set against spending limit to $106,000.
Okay, uh, all right, I have a motion by Commissioner Winfield and, uh, Commissioner Curry seconded that. Um, what there was so on the recommended, did that, did that motion, I'm sorry.
So that motion would be max, max option for both.
Yeah, right, okay, got it, yep.
That was like a total three, okay, total.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
What's in the the dollar amounts that are in the actual motion relates to the entirety of the page of the media budget, which includes other campaigns within Love's context, and so that would be that eight hundred and six is the number?
Eight oh eight.
Eight oh eight, it was eight, eight, excuse me. Eighty represents an additional 200,000, the additional 200,000.
Okay, great, okay.
And the 106 represents the better day option.
Got it, that's clear. Yeah, I actually didn't have the, uh, the page up either.
Cheer.
Uh, let me, let me go to Kevin real quick, and then I'll, and I'll go back to you, Steve.
Yeah, so I guess the second, second part of my question about, you know, other places that this money might go. Um, I, you know, I listened to the presentation that Adam gave at the Travel Council meeting, and he emphasized at the beginning that is that none of this funding is for additional studies, like, you know, similar to the segmentation study of that we're using for this campaign. And I think, you know, for more than a year now, I I think the commission, we've been saying, we would like to do more studies, and so I'm just wondering if whether some of this might be better spent to get another study off the ground, um. So. Am I, am I correct that that's not in this year's budget, or is, or are we all?
There, there is some funding in the budget for this year, so we do have, um. Funding goes for special event related studies. So one of the data package options, better option includes a subscription to placer.ai, which is a local geolocation platform. That you could use to geo-fence, say, Osta during a Jeep Safari. During that time period, figure out where everybody's coming from, the number of people that are coming there. How long they stayed where they went during their time here. We could compare that to, you know, let's say, an event moves to a different area. We could also value that as well, but the actual labor and time spent on that. If the special event managers doing that were placer. That that cost, that $25,000 cost was an estimate problem. To do just staff time to actually use this data source to do that amount. But there's money for that. That's the only thing that's, that's currently in the budget on top of my mind related to additional study.
Yeah. So I guess I was referring to a larger, you know, just general visitor survey. I think a resident survey might also be useful. So. So you're saying, other than that thing that you just mentioned, we're, we don't have anything in this year's budget for those?
There is one fairly large project, which is the holistic economic development and planning process that's, that's the RFP. Is in process. We received the proposal, started to bring it in this week, and a part of that is going to include a pretty comprehensive. Stakeholder and community engagement piece of which tourism related questions are going to be covered pretty comprehensively. I, some of, some of those proposals have included like a resident sentiment survey as a, as a, as a cost baked in or as an added cost. But there's also flexibility within some of the smaller recommendations that our offices asked for. That the commission could choose to not grant in exchange for like a.
Great. Let me, let me, Stephen had something he wanted to say real quick and I'll get to you, Trish. Go ahead, Stephen.
Just briefly, make, we want to make sure the motion contains on exhibit B and there's four additional variables there in the contract as well. I know it may be contained above, but we just want to make sure that whatever the motion is encapsulates all of the options and variables that we need to meet. I think there's all day a total of. For an exhibit B and then an additional two. On pages three thirteen and three fourteen.
You might have to lay those out explicitly, Stephen.
Okay, in on three thirteen, there's the 10%, the total amount, which is between 680, 780 and 880. Then the second option is for the data sources packages and it reads for 2023. Yep, that spending limit. But then if you go down to page in the packet. Three sixteen, it's highlighted, develop a strategy and media plan for the counties, and then it lists out the different amounts as well, 100, 200, 300,000. Then on page three seventeen. Item number five, contract with vendors of the following third-party proprietary data for more, no more than, then there's three additional options. Then on C, in number five, C, there's three options. On number six, there's three options as well. So we want to make sure that we catch them all. Does that make sense?
Isn't it clear how to choose those options based on the original motion?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was that, Kevin?
I was just saying that, that, yeah, so there, there were some multiple choice items in the original mo- motion. And the, and.
In the recommended motion that was in the.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing that Bill read.
Yeah.
Made some choices. I'm, I'm just, it seems to me as clear how the exhibits would. Be, you know, made to conform to that by choosing one of those options.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood as well, as clean as we can get, because I don't know if there's going to be differentiating discussion on, on that. So if we have discussion. If that's the motion that everybody wants, that'll be very simple. But if we seek to change the motion, we'll have to be mindful of the alternative variables.
Okay, got it. Trish, you, you're hit it next.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Kevin, I think there's a lot of value in that. And it's, it's one of those things that I think we should work, be working with USU. To garner graduate students to be doing some of that work. It still costs the county money, but I think it's a lot less. You know, that's one of the things I'm working on, like with the water modeling right now is is garnering a graduate student to do that work and it's a fraction of the cost. So just thoughts, I mean, I know that Jordan Smith from USU has done quite a bit of work around gateway communities. And I mean, you know, they, they have an apartment that's pretty. Pretty, you know, clo- working closely with. Moab. And so anyways, just thoughts in the future.
Yeah. I think all of that's consistent with what I said. I know.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And I'm more than happy to help out with that in the future.
The one thing I wanted to double check the budget, we do have another 20 line item for $20,000 for, for visitation research. Talked about with the way that USU more on that. So there is.
Okay.
That line item already.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the responsible recreation came up and that's a program that I've always been very much in favor of. And I think it's. I think it does tremendous value. I also very much, I mean, I hate to make this an either or type of thing, and it, it, it sounds a little bit from what August says is that. Responsible rec might be a little as far as staffing and, and just. Everything might be a little tapped out for the rest of the year, which is, which is whatever. But I, but going forward, it's absolutely something I think that is worth prioritizing. Also, I mean, in the, in the ad spend. There, there's a huge value in that too, the, the summer campaign ad spend. I'm definitely in favor of increasing ad spend. So. I don't know any, any, any other clarity here. I can help out on that would, would be great. Or any other, any other thoughts? Folks.
I can't see who else has their hand up at all. Once they're done.
No, no one does, but go, or yeah, let's go to Evan then.
I was just, originally I was leaning more towards the middle option. So increasing the. Marketing budget here, but also saving some for some other projects.
Thanks. Yeah, Kevin?
Yeah, no, I, I also agree that taking the middle option on the summer ad campaign makes more sense to me because, because I do think there's other things, other very valuable things. We could be spending this money on, you know, not all of them were presented at this meeting, but. As far as the in-town responsible recreation thing goes, if we don't have the capacity, then maybe we want to hire another person. I think, you know, next year, we're going to have twice as much. To do, you know, this is, you know, related to six months worth of. You know, I guess one third of 37% of, you know, that formerly was going to economic diversification. And I, I think the baseline for how we might reallocate it is in, in proportion to how we were spending other things. And so that, that's, you know, we, we already are spending. Some of this pot of TRT money on. In-town responsible recreation things. And, and I think it makes sense to increase that if suddenly we, we have more money. And if there's, you know, there's a capacity issue, then maybe the first step is to. Create a new position. I don't know. The. And then I, I do think the surveys are really valuable. I'd be curious to know how much like. What, what's the price tag on, say, the segmentation survey that we did a few years ago is just to know. You know, you, you were pointing out, August, that we've got $20,000 in the budget or some similar number. For survey, is, is that enough for, you know, the kind of survey we would like to have, or do they cost more like 50 or a hundred thousand dollars? I, I just don't know.
Bill, Bill, let us end up.
Yeah, I. I'm going to stick with the. The spend that I recommended there. I, I believe that. Businesses all over town. Are speaking to the issue that our market is down this year. And Mr. Baird spoke to the fact that even TRT collections are down. And I think it's time that we reach out and do something for the business part of this community and the responsible recreation. I believe that's part of their message. I think they've. Done a good job of including that in there. So it's. It, to me, it seems like it's a win-win on both sides that we're getting a little bit of education in as well as helping a, a community that not only the businesses, but also many of the employees. Rely on to be able to live here and to make this work. So being able to get out of it. Possible RV situation into a home is part of what this is all about.
Any other comments?
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, go ahead, Max.
What was in the budget? Sorry, I just pulled it up for research. So we have. What was labeled visitation research with the intention of driving towards a better metric for visitation, right? And we can be using universally. There is $25,000 in the budget for visitor resident survey, which was a quote provided to us from Love Communications. And a $15,000 in the budget for special analysis. It could, that could be provided by love. Those three haven't been contracted or tapped.
Great.
Now, yeah, reference. So that, that would add up to. Seventy. Right. Fifty thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Sixty thousand bucks. Sixty thousand bucks.
Okay, great. Thanks. And any other discussions?
Um, I guess, I guess I wanted just to get a vote on this issue. I was going to propose an amendment.
Propose an amendment to the motion.
Right, right. So. I, I can't see you, Jacques. Should I go ahead?
Oh, yeah, yeah, go, go ahead.
I mean, I can see you, but you're very, very tiny on my screen.
Right.
So I, I moved to amend the original motion to replace the. The ad spend with the middle option and an increase of $100,000 over what was previously in the budget and make all corresponding changes throughout the attachments to the motion. And then leaving the. The, the other. Item, you know, the, the data item at, at the, at the higher option.
And it looks like I have a second from Commissioner Clapper. Any discussion on the amended motion from Commissioner Walker?
So that last bit you said was leaving the data piece, part B at the higher option?
Yes.
That's correct. No change there, just clear.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
I just want to have a question. I want to make sure I'm. Well, so you're proposing that we do 200,000 for the campaign option.
Right, a total of 200,000. So it'd be an additional 100,000 to what we approved last time.
And then. For the data collection, you're recommending the best option?
That's right, which, which means basically no change to the original motion that Bill made. So.
So you did the best option. I wasn't sure if you did the best option in your first motion.
Middle, middle option has been the highest option.
Okay, I wanted to make sure because that, that. That I. With a presentation they gave on this data, I think will help us in so many ways. It's going to give us a lot of information that will help us plan and do a better job of advertising in the future, too.
Yeah. Great. All right. So we will vote on.
If I just, you know, just briefly to summarize what I was saying before, I, I think, you know, as the numbers in the motion show, we're, you know, we're arguing about. Between two fairly large amounts of total ad spending. But I, I think, you know, we need balanced ad spending and some of it is in on in-town things. And I, you know, we're. So I, what I'm really proposing is that this increase be spread, you know, throughout the spectrum of ads that we do, that we have an increase. Beyond what we previously discussed on the summer campaign, but that we also, also have an increase in the in-town responsible recreation. So.
Yeah, Mike.
I do like the in-town advertising, but don't we have to get the people here? To advertise them, advertise to them in town? I mean. As an employee outside of a commissioner. We are down. I can say that. Getting people here is an issue, e- even to the point of advertising to them when they come into town.
Yeah.
Very. We were down for, you know, the beginning of the spring. We were definitely down, but we don't know what's, you know, it's. We really don't know what's happening right now. The traffic data indicates that we have. More traffic coming into Grand County than we have in the past.
As 11 days ago. I am 16% down. I, I know current data. I.
We also don't know then how much more competition.
Yeah, I, well, I'm sorry. I'll raise my hand and speak. It's my turn.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Well, I, I think as Chris Baird also stated, we've got still several million plus in reserves that can be used in these other locations that. We could be getting more data driven as Kevin's suggesting, but at this point right now. It just makes more sense to stretch this advertising out to a market. That is the better market for bringing people in here. There, we're going as far as both coasts. And we're getting away from people who are trailering in. And we're talking about people that fly in. And I just think that this is a better place to be spending our money. And let's dip into that reserve and get some more data so that we, we can. Know exactly what's going on here. But I'm with Mike. I don't have the exact numbers that he does, but. I, I definitely talked to businesses all over town and I was in three different ones today and the numbers are down. It's not just a little bit, the numbers are down.
Yeah, and I would, I concur with that. My, my business numbers are down. And. I, I, I like the idea that I like the summer campaign. I think, I think summer is a great opportunity for us and we generally are. Under, we, you know, there's, there's less people coming in the summertime. It's, it's a, it's an opportunity to pick up some folks. I, I've always had employees kind of. Standing around a little bit in the summer and. You know, just because there is capacity, you have, you, you don't have as much traffic through there and you have people employed. It's a little different than winter. So. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's a bit of a tough call for me, but. I'd speak to the business side that way. Mary?
And the increase, let me, I'm asking August again, the increase from the 200 to the 300 is for more fly campaigns, right? Not more drive?
I'll let Mark answer that question. I could answer it, but he'll answer better.
Is it for both? Is the extra $100,000? From the 200 to the 300 to increase the fly campaign? Just the fly campaign or is it to, to increase the fly and the drive? For my packet, for my information, it looks like just fly.
Okay, so option one is drive. Option two is drive and fly. Option three, the higher mark at 300,000, is drive and fly. For a longer duration. As well as an additional messaging channel through connected TV. So with option three. The difference between option one and option three, option three, you're getting an additional three weeks of display advertising. An additional seven weeks of native advertising. And nine weeks of connected TV. Targeting your drive markets, as mentioned on, in, in the document you've got in front of you, as well as the fly markets. Chicago, San Francisco, New York City, Houston, Seattle and LA.
Well, I do like the fly markets because they are the people who spend the money and stay longer.
Can I, can I, for a second?
Yeah, go ahead, Mary. Melissa?
Yes, actually, now that since they changed the flight to Phoenix tomorrow. Now we need to start doing a branding awareness again. So it's a new strategy and it will take time for us to bring them. Phoenix visitors tomorrow. So I will recommend. It is possible to approve the 300K because it's going, it would be difficult for us to start again to do this branding awareness. So that's my suggest.
All right, I'll go to Kevin one more time and then I'll, I, I think we're ready to call for a vote. Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, I mean, I, I think most of the arguments in, in favor of the higher number were that, you know, we like the summer campaign and we need more people, but, you know, we're. All, all of the options we're talking about is increasing money for the summer, summer campaign. If the amendment passes, we're going to double the amount that we spend on the summer campaign. And if. If the main motion passes instead unamended, it would, we'd triple instead of double. But both of those are large increases. Both of those will have a robust summer campaign. Both of those will be a bigger summer campaign than what we decided on last time we discussed this. So I I I think the the real question is, you know, there's lots lots of things we're allowed to spend this section of TRT money on, and we probably want to spread it out between several different things. I I think what was initially proposed was spending, you know, a little bit too much on the sort of more old-fashioned advertising and maybe not quite enough on the in-town advertising, which I think is really important. And I'm just saying we should try to keep the proportions similar to what was in the original budget, just basically increase both of those budgets rather than just one side. So I I think I would characterize what I'm proposing as doubling what we're spending on the summer campaign and also making more money available for the um for the uh in in-town advertising.
Thanks. Okay, I think I'm I'm ready to call for a vote. Um, so we're voting on the Kevin's amendment to the original motion. So the amendment would change the motion to approving the spend at two hundred thousand K and the best scenario. So all those in favor of the amendment, raise your hands. And all opposed? And abstaining? Okay, so the motion fails uh three to three to one with Commissioners Hadler, Winfield, and uh McCurdy opposed and Commissioner McGann abstaining. Um, so we'll go back to the original motion, uh, which would approve the ad spend at three hundred thousand um with still the best case scenario. Um, and uh I think we've had plenty of discussion, so I'll call for a vote on this. Uh, all those in favor of the original motion, raise your hands. And all opposed? And abstaining. So we were a little bit deadlocked. Uh, that one that that one failed three to three also with uh with Commissioners Hadeen, Clapper, and Walker in opposition and Commissioner McGann uh abstaining. And Mary, you raise your hand?
I I do. Is it now an amendment of motion?
It's no, it's just.
It looks like you're the.
Unwrapped it. Okay.
It looks like Mary gets to do whatever she wants and then have three people who agree with her, no matter what that is.
Okay, I I'm not sure. Okay, I move to approve the First Amendment to the Independent Contracting Agreement between Grand County and Love Communications for the purpose of authorizing an additional. Now, this is for the marketing, correct?
I would like. To be Mary.
First part, the first part of the campaign for uh uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh going for the fly market and the drive market with uh fifty thousand dollars being used for in-town campaign. And that we go for the second portion or the third portion of this motion is to go for the best uh for the Loves uh data dashboard proposal brief, a hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So Mary's going for a compromise motion to split the difference? Okay, and I have a second from Commissioner Winfield.
I wanted in the motion that fifty thousand goes to.
Okay, yeah.
That was caught, right?
That that was caught, I think. And and Mary wanted to be clear that the the fifty thousand that didn't go to the ad spend uh would be used for in-town uh messaging.
Can I just clarify that?
Well, please, August.
Yeah, so what's uh the total media buy would be that maximum amount as.
It'd be, sorry, two point five.
I think.
Although, no, because what you're saying is you're you're adding two hundred thousand to the media buy. But it would be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar campaign, summer marketing campaign, and you're adding a fifty thousand dollar in-market messaging campaign.
So it's so.
Yeah, so if those numbers already included.
Yeah, the cost of it, the max cost. But instead of all going to out-of-town campaigning, that a portion of it, we really beef up our in-town campaigning.
So so to be clear then, you would be amending, you would add to the amendment to the contract in the scope of work that love would be doing media planning and buying for fifty thousand dollar in-market messaging.
I I interpreted Mary's motion as that, I mean, as far as love's concerned, we're just reducing, we're choosing the sort of you know, the compromise between the second and third options, a total of two hundred and fifty on the summer campaign. And then it's the intention of the commission that, you know, that's that gives us fifty thousand extra dollars, which the, you know, your department, August, can later come back with how to spend that in-town things, you know, maybe we want to ask loves to do it. Maybe not, but I, you know, since they weren't already geared up for that. Um, is is that what you meant, Mary?
Yes, uh, and that, you know, it would would be perhaps, you know, I love knows what they would do, but maybe instead of the seven weeks that you were proposing, the extra weeks maybe cut off, you know, whatever that's going to take to bring it down fifty from three hundred to two fifty.
Yes, August.
Can I shoot from the hip here really quick and Mark, maybe I'll ask for support from you on this.
I've got a question. I've got a thought, too, so sorry.
Hey, all the borders. Yeah, you're good. On from a like a purchasing policy, next steps, blah, blah, blah standpoint on if we're looking to do, you know, landless compromise plan and get, you know, fifty grand worth in-market messaging. You know, my first instinct is how you spend that would do geofenced, social, or digital in the area. Right? You don't have, I mean, you don't have fifty thousand dollars with billboards, radio, and TV and whatnot. I mean, we do, but but to me, uh, you could authorize that now in the law amendment so that love can then pretty much immediately turn around the geofenced digital campaign. That's that's more two people that are already here, remember to stay on the trail, bike, cross, and forth, that kind of stuff, right? Um, and, you know, then that gives love the the freedom to do that media mix. Maybe there's some of that is in person in town, maybe some of that is digital. But that would be my, that would make that campaign go way faster.
Okay, what you're.
Rather than leaving it like just like.
Okay, so what you're saying is that they tweak their campaign taking a portion to uh direct it more towards local educational research uh recreation.
I'd say that my preference would be in the scope of work could be an additional campaign that hasn't been scoped yet. So it would be in-market, um, but it could be similar messaging. But the it wouldn't be plan your visit because you're here, right? So your creators would have to be different. It could be within the scope of this, and you could say fifty thousand has to be targeted for in-market.
No idea.
Yeah.
I think there's a simpler option. Which it, I mean, you know, we should, I I think it's just proposing something midway between the second and third options as so far as love and these campaigns are concerned. And then that leaves us with fifty thousand more in the budget than we thought we had. And we decide in the in and we hope in the, you know, we want in the future that to be in-town responsible recreation marketing. And it's up to you, maybe in conjunction with loves, whoever is a company, you know, in the future to figure out how to do that, but that's not being specified in detail right now. So, you know, op- option number, you know, the middle option makes sense. You know, the the top option makes sense, so the one we're just doing something halfway between those two.
Let me, let's go to Mark. It looked like you had something to add to the conversation.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I appreciate the conversation. So, yeah, my thought was, you know, the overall goal was to drive traffic um to MOAB over the summertime. And so so this plan does that. It it does a great job, and we've got great messages and channels to do so. Um, so so I think part of my initial uh question, I think, was answered with this additional conversation in terms of that additional fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, what would that, what would we want to say to those people in Moab? Because the initial idea, again, is to drive people there. But then when people are there, if you want to spend those additional dollars, would the messaging be about preserving and protecting uh Moab? Which can totally be done and and with those tactics that August had mentioned, geofencing, social, and things of that nature. But it really just goes back down to the overall strategy of what we want to do. And if the if the goal is to drive traffic to Moab, then we've got a a sound plan here. But if but if you want to diversify that plan, certainly we can come back with a with an adjustment to the original um and and do so. But but just it's really comes down to what the overall uh strategy is for the campaign and what the desire is.
All right, and um Attorney Stock says his hand up on Zoom. Steven?
Yep, I just want to make a clarification on this. We have the ability to spend the money locally. We don't necessarily have to go through love, not to say that we shouldn't give love more money. But for the fifty thousand that we're trying to earmark for local spending, that could theoretically be done in-house. And it may have different goals and may have different ideas that Commissioner McGann is looking for. If she proposes one fifty for the total spend in this contract, that still leaves fifty thousand dollars to do other things outside of the love organization. And so I just want to remind the commission, you always have the ability to make those adjustments in different contracts. We don't have to lump everything into this contract. So just.
Right, and I think that's generally what Kevin was getting at as well.
I'm trying to say, but I think Stephen said it more clearly.
Right.
Yeah, so what we're approving is that we are going to increase the budget to the uh fifty thousand dollars less than the highest and fifty thousand dollars more than the middle.
Right, but how? I think I think we need to clarify if that fifty thousand is going to be spent with loves in that campaign or if or if it's just going to be reserved and and used uh local reserves.
Yeah, I think my I think my understanding of Mary's motion is that basically the additional media budget is a hundred and fifty thousand on top of what was already approved, leaving out fifty for future consideration.
Yes, thank you.
Great. And uh Chris has his hand up online. Chris? Hey, Chris, are you there?
Yeah, just had to get hit unmute. So, I mean, one of one of the ideas about what we're gonna do with Ben's position is to redraft that and turn it into um, you know, a position that sort of manages um the responsible rec marketing and interfacing with local businesses. And so um I would expect that we'd probably have that position uh drafted and then up for review by the commission relatively soon, which means that we could have that position in place, you know, for half the year. And I guess I what I would say is that, you know, at this point, I assume that we we have the salary for it budgeted. But besides that, there isn't much of a budget for that position. And so if we have that person, if we create that job and we approve it and get that person to work, you know, they unless we carve out some kind of budget for them, they won't have one besides their salary and benefits.
So what you're saying is when that hap- comes online, then this position would have fifty thousand to use on in-town messaging right away?
Yeah, yeah. And so, I mean, I I agree with Stephen. I think that um if you want to carve out a little bit of money for that, then then you don't really have to mention it at this point. All I have to do is approve what you want the love's contract to be. And then we'll have, I mean, the whole budget is very speculative at this point. Anyway, we're projecting way into the future. We really don't. You know, we're projecting relatively conservatively. We may actually have more money than this when it comes down to it. Um, and so this is all relatively speculative anyway, but trying to, you know, carve out um some budget for that position. So, you know, and this is speculative also because maybe the commission won't want to approve that job description. I don't know. But that's sort of the idea that we're heading towards in terms of taking that previous economic diversification job and converting it over, you know, to to a new thing. And so for to to carve out a little bit of of a budget for that position, you know, I think would be a good thing.
Right, okay. I think so. What we've just done, I think, is clarify the motion, right? Right? Yeah, and I are and I think we're all clear. So so the ad spend of a total of two hundred and fifty, a quarter of a million with loves while retaining fifty thousand uh that would be earmarked towards in-town messaging. Okay, great. And 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 of course, uh, that's the best scenario with the analytics and data collection. All right, so I have a motion on the table from Commissioner McGann and a second from Commissioner Winfield. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. All right, all opposed?
Oh, great.
All right, the motion passes six to one with Commissioner Clapper in opposition.
Chair Hadler. Could you restate the motion? You say you stated two hundred and fifty thousand or is it one hundred and fifty thousand?
It was so, it was.
An increase of one fifty for a total of two fifty.
Yeah.
Right.
Fifty for a total of two fifty.
Okay, great. All right, that was marathon. Thanks, everybody.
Everybody.
Yeah, thanks, August and Mark. Sorry for for putting you through that.
No, no, this is great. We're here to help you guys do whatever and and with the budget, we'll do great things with it, and uh this is great. So we're we'll revise the plan and you know, we'll add in additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars to target individuals to to visit Moab and do great things there. So this will this will be great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Uh, and let me find my place now. Um, okay, we are up to agenda item seven. And I would entertain a motion uh about postponing that. I think we were.
So moved.
Thanks.
It's our next regular meeting.
A second?
Thank you.
All right, uh, I have a motion to postpone from Commissioner Clapper and a second from Commissioner McGann. All those in favor of postponing, raise your hands. Passes unanimously. Uh, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, Airport Improvement Program, AIP Agreement for Transfer of Entitlements. And I would welcome uh Tara Collins, Assistant Airport Director.
Tara came, but she was here an hour early. I I can speak to this.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, I saw Tara earlier.
But so this is leftover money from the year twenty twenty that the airport was unable to use. Um, this will actually put it back into an airport in St. George as opposed to just going back to the federal government and us never seeing it again. And we always have the option of the St. George Airport could afford us some of their money when they don't use it. We don't have any projects that this money is eligible for this year. So it really is, it's not no use to us, but we can't use it this year, and it's going to evaporate if we don't give it to St. George. So the option is to give it to St. George or give it back to the federal government and never see it again, right? So.
Uh, Bill? I'll make the motion to allow um Tara and Tammy at CNY to allow this money to be used in St. George rather than lose it back to the federal government.
I'll second that.
All right.
I will say it's ten thousand five hundred. It's not a giant amount.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Winfield and a second from Commissioner Hadeen to uh to approve the transfer of entitlements to St. George. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And I can't see Kevin. Is that a yay, Kevin?
I I vote yes.
Excellent. Okay, we are unanimous on that one. Agenda item number nine. Again, I would entertain a motion to postpone on this one. Thanks, Bill.
I'll second that.
All right, uh, motion to postpone, Commissioner Winfield and a second from Commissioner Hadeen. Any discussion on this? All in favor of postponing, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, that is the end of our regular uh items. We're on to our consent agenda. And our consent agenda item consists of item A, ratifying chair signature on fiscal year twenty four indigent defense commission grant application. Uh, item B, independent contractor agreement for the twenty twenty-three Grand County Fair uh with the Sean Moon Band and Joey Roland. Um, agenda item or consent agenda item number C, revised courthouse lease for State of Utah Administrative Office of the court for and on behalf of the Seventh Judicial District and Juvenile Courts. Uh, agenda item or consent item D, Trail Mix Letter of Support for Forest Service Campground Development at Porcupine Rim. Uh, item E, approval of inter-local agreement with the city of Moab for administration of the twenty twenty-three municipal elections. And uh finally, consent item F, approval of service agreement with C Change Printing and Marketing Services LLC for election printing services. Mike, did you want to?
I want to discuss two.
Okay, so you wanted to poll two of those?
Sorry.
Okay, which two would you like to poll?
B, independent contractor agreement from the two thousand twenty-three Grand County Fair. Uh, the Sean Moon Band with Joey Roland. And the Trail Mix Letter of Support for the Forest Service Campground Development at Porcupine Rim.
Okay, uh, we'll poll those. Does, would anyone like to uh make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented minus agenda items B and D?
So moved.
Thanks, Mary. Okay, uh, I have a motion to approve, uh, consent agenda, uh, minus items B and D from Commissioner McGann and a second from Commissioner Winfield. Uh, all those in favor of approving, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Alright, we'll move back to, uh, consent agenda item B, independent contractor agreement for the twenty twenty three Grand County Fair, the Sean Moon Band with Joey Roland. Mike?
Uh, this question might actually be towards, uh, Stephen on this, uh, did we require that the independent contractor, the Sean Moon Band and Joey Roland, go get their own insurance? Go get their own insurance? And then use that to come play at the county fair, but, and in that, are we reimbursing them for that fact?
For the insurance?
Yeah, for their cost on that, I, I.
No, so originally.
What's the legal standing on, uh, why do we require insurance from a band we have to play?
Sure, so yeah, so hypothetically speaking, um, let's imagine they brought a really expensive guitar and they break their guitar. We don't want to cover that, let's say, uh, they're driving between the hotel and the venue. And they get in car wreck, the, the county doesn't want to be liable for those things, so normally it's a requirement for independent contractors to carry their own insurance at their own cost. Now, some, some organizations or some entities that are larger may make a decision at a certain price point to accept the liability of some band coming in. But depending on the type of band and depending on the type of event, there may, may be more or less risk associated. So it does seem a little bit more onerous on a smaller band, but still there is the possibility that somebody could get injured while performing. And we don't necessarily want to be responsible for that, and so we make them carry insurance.
Okay, uh, in, in hearing this, uh, in, in, uh, speaking with the band, uh, this is this is the first time out of hundreds of shows that they, they've been asked, or they said they were asked, uh, and I wanted to raise that question because I didn't know.
Yeah, and, and it depends on the, kind of the risk that the county wants to take in, I mean, if it's a bluegrass band, maybe there's not as much risk, but if insert, you know, Metallica, say for example, it's a scarier risk, you know, you kind of have to, and, and that's, I mean, it may be comical, but there are actually insurance policies that kind of vary based on the type of performer, who it is, what type of music. And so that may be something the county in the future may want to explore and say, hey, for this band, we don't think there's going to be as much risk and accept that, uh, possible liability.
Nope. Are, are we paying the band, and how much was this, um, cost to them to, I don't know, buy that insurance?
The, the band is compensated, yes.
And, and hopefully enough to pay for the insurance, I'm guessing that.
They, they did a combined.
We paid.
Eighty-five fifty, yeah.
And, and we also, they got, uh, food, lodging, and a couple other amenities as well.
They're paying more for the insurance and they're getting paid.
I reckon they probably cancel if that was the case.
Next year, that's why I ask.
Yeah, and, and that, and that'll be some. Yeah, and that'll be something that we can discuss if the county wants to take on that policy of saying, hey, look, if you're going to play on our stage at our venue, you know, we're willing to take on more risk and more liability. Um, and if that's what the can, the commission wants to do, one hundred percent within their discretion to advise staff, myself, and our um, risk assessor, uh, that, that we want to do that, so that is an option in the future.
Thank you. You want to make a motion, Mike?
I would love to. I move to approve the chair's signature on the ICA with the Sean Moon Band with Joey Roland for the twenty twenty three Grand County Fair.
Alright, I have a motion to approve, uh, the agreement from Commissioner McCurdy and a second from Commissioner McGann, any further discussion on this one? All in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, item D, uh, uh, approval of the Trail Mix Letter concerning the Forest Service Campground Development Porcupine Rim, um, I could speak to this, uh, I'm the Trail Mix liaison, this was discussed at the Trail Mix meeting. Um, the Forest Service, uh, sent a letter to Grand County and asked if we cared to comment on this campground, so, uh, Trail Mix took it up as the campground is situated right on the, uh, whole Enchilada Trail, and the result of our conversation at the Trail Mix Conference was this letter, um, of support for the Forest Service to, um, develop that campground. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any, any questions you might have on that, Mike.
Uh, just reading through it, uh, did, is this going to limit the ability to drive to the edge of Porcupine Rim, uh, I mean roughly five hundred feet back from?
The, uh, it limits the camping, I believe.
Just the camping, not the ability to drive? I mean, that's one of the things.
It's a little spur where, uh, there's been multiple fatalities out there, I think.
Right, yeah.
We had a sleepwalking.
Yeah, yeah, so it's that little like peninsula kind of thing, so.
But is that, is that directed?
Porcupine Trail.
Okay, I was like, as long as those.
Yes, yeah, it's not, and, and the trail, the, the campground's kind of a juncture right now, you, you get out there, people are camping all over, I've had literally almost run over someone on my bike who's like camped on top of the trail. Um, so, something, something needed to be done about it, and, and, yeah, Trail Mix just recommended it.
I think the point, though, is that, maybe I'm wrong, is that people should still be able to drive to that edge and don't have another option if I take it right, like five hundred feet is the longest for somebody in a wheelchair through that country or.
I don't think you'd get a wheelchair back there either. Yeah.
I understand, I just don't want to, I'm trying to limit.
Yeah.
Acts, I mean, I, I know it's just a letter, but I would never want to limit access, I mean, that's, that's the, uh,
Yeah.
That's the picturesque. That's the spot that, I mean, people want to go up there to.
Actually, um, we were looking through earlier, and there isn't a letter being approved.
Oh.
So I think the title is a little confusing, because I, I'm not sure, it looks like it's maybe more affirming or supporting their letter.
Yes. Right, supporting the truth, supporting the Trail Mix position. And, and Trail Mix being a advisory, uh,
Advisor.
Right, advisory board to the.
Let's, uh, point to the letter in the package is addressed to this body.
Right.
So then is that, are they going to submit a similar letter to?
Do I get to see the letter? The letter's in there, it's in the packet. Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, actually, um, I think we just added that, didn't have a discussion about that, uh, so the yeah, so the letters is from Trail Mix to the commission. Um, I guess in the past, when we, when we've done this, the, the the advisory board, I know I've been on the MTC and they've submitted similar things, has written a letter from the commission kind of as, as the advisory board to advise us to submit their letter. So, uh, I mean, I, I guess, I guess what we're looking at right now is just supporting the Trail Mix Letter to the to the National Park Service to, um, support that, right?
And I think when you're an advisory board, you need to get that approval before you can.
You do, you can't just do that on your own, that's right, yeah, Bill?
Well, I would support the letter as long as it is not restricting access to, to a vehicle to the edge of that, there were a lot of people who out there, I myself have had my mother out there, and there's no way she could have got there without me driving her to that edge, so.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm actually not personally familiar with that spur, but reading the letter, it sure does look like the Forest Service is proposing to close like five hundred feet of road between the campground and the rim, or something like that. I can read you the passage from the letter that seems to say that.
Yeah, and they might be proposing that, I can just say, no, I wouldn't want to support it.
Right.
Right, yeah, no, I, I just wanted to, it's, uh, earlier people were, seemed to be saying that there's going to be no restrictions to vehicle access, and my guess is that that's wrong, there, there will be some restrictions to vehicle access.
I, I, I love keeping an eye on the campers, I understand. Uh, come across campers on trail, uh, myself, but, but, I mean, limiting.
Can you find the original letter?
Limiting the ability to go up to is, is, that's kind of the draw.
Do we know?
A lot of people.
Do we know how time sensitive this is?
I'm looking for that original letter from the Forest Service that, uh, they sent, uh, sport commander, yeah, here we go. So, dear stakeholder, the Mandala Sound National Forest seeking public input on Porcupine Rim Campground Development Project, uh, it's located in the Moab Ranger District. It was such and such. Links, et cetera. Oh, okay. Though comments are requested by, it's already after the time, it's, it was yesterday was when the comment period was over. So, in that light.
I mean, it, it's frequently the case that, you know, as, as a, I don't know if we're kind of cooperating agency on this, but local governments sometimes get relaxed. I mean, I'm not, it, it would not be pointless for us to write a letter, I think. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not I mean, I, I think I can certainly imagine situations where it makes sense to close part of a road, and the fact that the Forest Service is proposing it makes me think, but I, I don't, I haven't looked at this thing in particular, so, um, you know, we could bring it back in next meeting, after we've had a chance to to review more. Or we could just, you know, the easiest option is just not to write a letter and, you know, neither oppose nor endorse what they want to do.
Thoughts? I'd be, I'd, in light of that, I would be, I'd be okay with, with postponing it, just, you know.
Yeah, definitely.
Right. Or, or, yeah.
Obviously, we postponed it, we put a date of when we'll discuss it again.
Sure, sure, so postponing.
I, I, I think if we're going to postpone it, we should take it up at the next meeting, because at some point it is going to be too late for a comment.
And just look at it more closely, right? Yeah.
I can, uh, hear your guys' points, and I would say that if, if there was a letter coming from this body, that it might be worth reaching out to the Motorized Trail, I need to, um, seeing if there's.
Yeah, and I think, let me hold on.
I was, I was thinking about it under the frame of like a campground.
Right. Yeah.
And as a day use, whatever, there's, um, other considerations.
And I will, I will say that the next commission meeting, the June sixth commission meeting, is before each of the next MTC and Trail Mix meetings, so neither one of those bodies would really have a chance to comment together before our next meeting. Yeah.
So I can push it back one further.
Yeah, or just, I'd say postpone indefinitely and just, just take it up, at some point, I mean, we're already past the comment period anyway, so.
It kind of seems if the Forest Service has a plan, uh, is already in the act of planning.
Right.
And it's probably going to be something we're divided on, maybe it's not worth weighing in.
Yeah.
But, I'd be.
In case the Forest Service is listening to this discussion, I mean, based on what I've heard so far, I, I, I support their plan, but
Yeah.
It might, you know, if we're going to endorse the position, it might be better if we were better informed before casting our votes.
Yeah, and the, uh, discussion at the Trail Mix meeting didn't involve road closure, it was, it was strictly, uh, about the camping situation, exactly.
It sounds that that needs to happen.
Right.
Where was, where was the letter that you had on the screen?
That was sent to us, it, it was, it was sent to our inboxes. It got, you know, a month and a half ago or so, yeah, you, you could probably find it in your, in your, in your, whatever.
I remember looking that.
Yeah. That's it. Alright, anyone care to make a motion to postpone?
Move to postpone, definitely.
Alright, any further discussion on that? All in favor of postponing, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. So we are at the, uh, we finished our regular, um, action items, we're on to discussion items, and our first discussion item is the September trip to Range Creek Canyon proposed by Commissioner McGann, and give it to Mary.
When I was fortunate enough to be able to go to Range Creek, and I mentioned it at the last couple Canyon Country Partnership meetings, that other commissioners would love to go. And they said, okay, they will take us in September, so I guess I was looking to see how many people, if we, we can take up to twenty-four. Uh, depending what's, what's limiting is to have vehicles. We have one, they'll have one, uh, ish, you know, four-wheel drive that, uh, van, and we have one in the county, and then somebody could ride their own vehicles if they wanted. Uh, so I guess I, right now I'm finding out if there's interest, because if we can take that many people, and there's not that many people from the commission and the administration that wants to go, I would open it up to the city as well.
Where is that?
Range Creek, it's the
You go up horses, amazing, you know, um, and then you go up, go up that drainage, and it is unbelievable.
It's, yeah, it's just, it's a, yeah.
It has some of the most, especially the west half of.
I'd, I'd be thrilled to go, like, yeah, I'd very much love to go.
Me too, Mary, but that's hunting season, and I
Okay.
One day, that's right, it's just when I'm down.
Do you have dates yet, or is it still pretty open?
No, it's still very open, I just, I, I just want to get the interesting, and then we'll gauge interest, and we'll look at it and get some dates. And then I thought if it, you know, like I, now everyone wants to go, Quinn wants to go, and I don't know if, you know, and so that whole drainage just.
Yeah.
Yeah, and or if, you know, if like, you know, asking the mayor or some of the city council.
So that whole drainage is just filled with arc sites and the ranch back there donated it intact to but University of Utah has it.
Yeah, yeah, University of Utah manages it.
Kevin's been, uh, had his hand up for it.
Oh, I, I was just going to weigh in and, and say, yeah, I, I'd be happy to go too, but I, I think the first half of September is not possible for me.
Okay, so, uh, ask for the second half. Okay, that's all, I just wanted to find out.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mary, um, our second discussion item is draft, uh, MFR forty-five density bonus, uh, land use code update and PUD workforce housing incentive discussion, uh, with Alisa.
Good evening, commissioners, great to see you. Um, okay, so I apologize the agenda summary that I had originally planned for that, for the packet there didn't show up, so um, I'll just, um, share my screen here, if that's okay with you guys. And then I'll go through the potential land use code update. So staff is seeking commission input on implementing a land use code amendment to offer, uh, multifamily forty-five density bonus incentive for very low to low income housing. The, um, to be able to allow for the, for low income housing to be developed sooner rather than later. This land use code amendment would be in advance of the future land use plan being adopted. It would also align with the timing of the low income housing tax credit program application deadline, which is an essential program to make a development like this work and to be able to pencil out. If we do want to move forward with this land use code amendment, it would be considered at the next planning commission meeting on May twenty-second as part of a public hearing. A reasoned request for this district would be considered based on proposed locations for MFR forty-five designated in the draft future land use map until, of course, the final version is adopted. Eventually, once the future land use plan is adopted, we would amend the land use code once more to establish the other levels of a multifamily, uh, residential bump, density bonus, and such as MFR thirty-five and MFR eighteen and so on. The density bonus for the MFR forty-five district would include increased density, building height, uh, increase, uh, parking reduction in return for restricting the units for very low to low and moderate income households. Um, so I'm going to share, so this is the draft, um, section in the code that would be added, and basically would replace the current multifamily section, which right now, that section we don't really. Section which, right now, that section we don't really use, there's, nobody applies for it, um, it's MFR eight, I believe, and. We don't really have a lot of areas where that's allowed, so. So this would kind of start the process to establish higher density, um, where it would be based on a density bonus and then. So you can, kind of, it's, it's kind of basic, it, it's very similar in our, in terms of the um. Development agreement and master plan requirement, so it's similar to our overlay zoning where we would require to actually have the. The density, the incentive in the density bonus um, provisions. Stated in the development agreement and then the master plan would show the preliminary design of the project. And so I've just noted here that um, these sections would automatically require an update to different articles because you would be referencing these articles in the code. So those um, draft sections will be presented at the actual public hearing, but they would be kind of basic. So I'm gonna share now.
So the density bonus would be up to forty-five?
Yeah.
Is this for the um, no, is this what they were needing?
This would allow them to apply for a reason.
And they also, that, that would, this would allow them to go for the.
For their, but like, basically like what they're proposing would be allowed under this density bonus system. Okay, yeah. Um, and of course, other developers as well, basically.
So if you didn't get the bonus, what would, would there be an underlying density?
So this would only be able, you would only be able to get this zoning district if you applied for the rezon. So it would have to go through the whole legislative public hearings, just like an HGHO application or. Or it's like the ADO, it's the same kind of thing, cause we, we're not going in, in rezoning.
Right, but with, with the overlays, they're hinged to a specific project. Whereas if you just change the zoning and then somebody decides not to build it, they could sell it and the zoning would ride with the sale.
Right, but it would also ride with the, the restrictions of the development agreement and the master plan to develop it with that low income.
But there, there wouldn't necessarily be a master plan.
There would be, yeah, for sure. With the rezon approval, the development agreement and master plan would be required, just like HGHO. It's, it's a rezon approval. But, just like an overlay zone has to be.
Right, but I don't think that zoning can be chosen based on, on like a project. So like, we could, if, if, if somebody comes and says, hey, we want forty-five units, they can't, we can't say to do what? It's like.
Well, the way I understood it, so I think there is still a legal question and I do have it out to Stephen for review. But I, the way I understood that we could do that, and I've seen it approved before, for a multifamily zoning that was approved in, out in the county. In the valley somewhere, um, where there was a development agreement tied to it and it had the restrictions for. Low income, affordable housing with it. Um, and I think the reason you can do that is if it's stated in the, in the land use code that this is how it is set up. This is, it's within the standards of the rezon, or the zoning district. So that's why this is um, established in the article two, or section two point six, which is. Article two is all of our zoning districts, so it's built into the zoning district requirements.
Okay.
So I know that.
It's, I'm more asking so I can wrap my mind around.
And I definitely wanna.
But, but just, just to be clear, this is something we already do with the overnight accommodation overlay zone and the high density housing overlay zone. I think both of those require a master plan before you get the zone changed, right?
Right, with overlays, but I think Evan was concerned that. We're not treating this as an overlay that maybe there's a, there's something there that legally could be.
I just know, like, on the north end, when people were coming in and asking for rezones and they were kind of like, but I wanna build how, this is my idea, and it was like, there was no way to. To hold their feet to the fire if, once they got the zone changed.
And I think that's because they're proposing something that's not already established in the zoning district standards. They were just probably proposing whatever they thought would.
Yeah.
Help approve the project, so that's where I think the quick pro-proose stuff would come into play.
Yeah.
But I think, and I'm, and I do have this to Stephen, so uh, haven't got any word back from them, but. For sure, before the public hearing on the planning commission um, date, we'll have that figured out and confirmed, and it's a big question for sure. So yeah, if we had to, I mean, if that, if this was a legal problem, I, I feel, I think we could still figure out a way. Even if it had to be an overlay zone again, which we're hoping to kind of avoid overlays, but.
And so would it, would there be a mapping element where we say, where are forty-fives per acre appropriate?
Yeah, so the way that I thought it, um, the way that I've kind of set it up, I think it's in the language, yeah, so right here it says. Um, the approving authority should seek guidance from the most recent version of the draft future land use map that our planning and zoning department has filed. And then um, eventually the future land use map that is officially adopted would be the, the map that would refer to where these implications are designated.
I, I think you had pointed out a few like, stuff that's gonna be up against this rim, so it's not gonna be blocking people's views, right? It's closer to town, so that hopefully, you know, it's walkable or bikeable, and so it's pretty particular.
It's very few areas that I think we would end up identifying on the future land use map, and already. Those areas are kind of near the Bugate HGHO development, which is the highest density one we have, and so it's like, kind of clustering those around that area. Closer to town. And there could be some other areas that we identified too, through the workshops and whatnot.
I did have a question about the height, because I know Joette brought that up, and maybe Bill, you could speak to this, um. So we assume that height would accommodate three stories?
Yeah, yeah, we would be going more than three stories.
And, but the city said that there's just thirty-five?
I clarified that.
Okay, you did.
With Cory and their planning staff, so the project that they're, the annexation. Project that they're considering and that's going through annexation right now, that would, that is proposing uh, forty feet. Building height, and they're working with the, right now, like. The way that the city, and same with the county, the way that we've always thought about height is based on the fire department's ability to serve.
Okay.
Uh, the bill, the building structure, and they've always said thirty-five feet was the highest they could go. But Brandon, I confirmed that with him just recently, and he said that they've been working with this developer for the city. On figuring out if, in fact, that they could get to forty feet. And he says that they could, under certain circumstances where the, where there's nothing obstructing the building from the truck.
Okay.
So that, so that if they could get that maximum height angle of the ladder, they could get up to forty feet, but. The other caveat is that that developer has been in talks with the fire department about wanting to help fund a new truck to get to that. To get better equipment that would reach the higher.
Height, well, and so that just allows for what we could, like.
The house, the housing project we looked at, the reason that he's wanting more footage is because he's able to put all of the.
Utilities.
The utilities on the roof.
Right.
Keep them hidden behind the fascia and they're not scattered around on the ground, which makes it much.
So that's not necessary.
Looks much better.
Oh, it looks great.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was the one that, and then I, I invited Bill.
Okay.
And Stephen to go with Jacques. Yeah, Jacques and I were up there working, trying to defeat a housebell. And it, it was just a.
Okay.
It was a.
Hotel with all the eyes.
Right, yeah.
We did.
The height issue is a very interesting one, because I went back and looked at the HGHO thirty-five feet zoning district and. The building height in our land use code right now is, allows for forty-two feet. But we were never able to, back when they were getting their, the Bugate HGHO was getting their master plan approved, it was pre Jenna and I. And they were first being told, no, you can only go to thirty-five feet because of fire equipment. And so the master plan approved, was approved with the building height being thirty-five feet, even though the land use code zoning. In the HGHO section, it actually allows for forty-two feet. So, we already kind of have that precedent in the land use code, which I thought was interesting, and I, and I think. We could go forward, um, I don't think we would necessarily need to be concerned about repeating that same standard in our MFR forty-five district. Because eventually, when it comes to site plan review, that's where the fire department can say, yes, we can do this or not, and then it just goes from there.
Thank you, that, that helps a lot, go to understand.
Yeah, so um, in terms of some of the other differences between these two zones. Um, the MFR forty-five would possibly could, could be fifteen feet setbacks all around. But when I was looking at the HGHO thirty-five, um, it's based on the underlying zoning. And a lot of these areas that we're looking at for, um, in the future land use plan are, have highway commercial underlying zoning. So therefore, the twenty-foot front, ten-foot side and twenty-foot rear setbacks would pretty much end up in a net. Same building area, basically, as the fifteen foot all around, so we could look at um, just going with the underlying zoning setbacks. And that does feel a little better when you're looking at the pattern of development on a street, so that you don't have these weird differences and setbacks with the buildings. So I think it would be better to go, so right now I have it as fifteen feet, but I think it probably will, will change that and make it to the underlying zone. Um, the other thing that would be a big.
But, but I'm confused, I thought you were saying, but this is not an overlay zone, so how could it be the underlying zone?
Underlying, um, sorry, you're right. Just, that's right, I'm getting confused with HGHO. So yeah, maybe we would have to think about what the zone was changing from, like whatever the original zoning was. And then use that as the basis for the setbacks for the, for the zone change. Something like that.
I'm okay with it, they're probably existing highway commercial now, just sticking with that.
Yeah.
You know, or, or maybe it's what the adjacent zoning setbacks are some.
Right, the adjacent setbacks, that's another way you could put it, yep. Thanks, Kevin. Um, and so with the parking ratio, the uh, proposed reduction there would be quite. Drastic, I think, maybe it's not too bad, but, but this is near town, these places, these designated areas would be close to town. Um, so the idea would be to go for a parking reduction. So the studio one-bedroom would be one point twelve uh, stalls per unit and compared to one point five for the HGHO thirty-five and then so on, you can see the differences. So. That's something to be thinking about, um. Parking lot screening would be the same as HGHO. That's just to screen the parking uh, lot from any s- main street or from, I think it was like if there was a different zone adjacent to. The project and like a residential zone, then it would require screening. Um, and then the covered parking in the HGHO, it's um, a hundred percent requirement. And I think that feels a little bit, that's been pretty arduous for some of the developers for the, like, especially for this multifamily development that we're processing now with the Bugate. That was hard for them to meet and it did drive up the cost of the development, so I think that um, going down to fifty percent covered parking would be reasonable. Um, and then conforming to visual and standards, definitely wanna keep that in there. So those are some of the things that we're looking at in, including in some of the changes that would be proposed as part of this. So at this point, I'm just kind of wanting to get, we did talk about this at the planning commission at our last meeting and I got some of their feedback. Um, but I would love to hear what you all have, you know, if you have any feedback for me at this point. Beyond what we've already talked about.
It might be nice if the reduced parking ratios came with like, bike parking or.
Bike parking, yeah, that's a great idea.
Uh, yeah, the reduced parking ratio.
Yeah, it's amazing.
The reduced parking ratio doesn't bother me a whole lot, I think it, it does kind of incentivize using public transportation and, and biking, and I think, I mean, parking lots just take up so much freaking space everywhere.
They're very bad.
Yeah. We're helping fund uh. Uh, the mass transit. Uh, can we not make these connection points?
Oh, yeah.
I would, yeah. Be, be easy to do that.
So, and I would also reference the overnight accommodations overlay, because this is gonna be the scale of like a hotel. And part of, there were requirements in the, the accommodations overlay that they would have to have a space for shuttle pickup.
Yeah.
Uh, there was a lot of design standards, like when it came to like, uh. You know, just so we didn't end up with barrack-looking buildings.
Right.
You know, and so I might be interested in seeing some of those design standards implemented.
Look like Kevin had his hand up.
Uh, I'll let Stephen go first.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
Uh, because we have no, um, I, I would encourage the commission to consider where we're going to put this, this development and really consider the parking ratio. The parking ratio for a three-bedroom house is, is, is low, um, and it's just looking at where those individuals are gonna park, because if there's no parking. There's no restriction for them parking on the roadway in a lot of places in the county. So I would be cautious on that, um, as being one of the things that, that we look at. And then if there are certain types of zoning that we would like to consider, it would be helpful, I believe, for staff to kind of. Know which areas, and, and I know Commissioner Clapper already indicated, um, highway commercial, that, I think that would be other parts of the discussion that would be very, very valuable.
So, so my comment was also, also about parking, you know, back when I was on the planning commission, we had some very long and heated debates about um, these parking ratios. And I, I was generally someone who supported, you know, less, you know, leave it up to the developer how much parking they wanna offer, but. Um, you know, these are pretty, what's being proposed here is pretty low, and it, I think we should at least ask around and see, you know, in other places that have tried these very low parking ratios. You know, are we creating the kind of problems that Stephen just alluded, alluded to? Um, you know, where, where is the over, this bill over parking gonna be for a particular development, so. So I, I guess I'm, you know, I'm cautiously supportive of these lo- lower ratios, but I think we should, you know, we're not the first ones to have tried it, and we should see how it's worked out in other communities. Do.
They did, it's not like, in, in the, at the parking lot, parking, when we went uh, and visited. The development, the low-income housing development, they had a lower ratio of parking. And it, it worked fine, you know. It was working.
I, I think part of what he had, it, what, what they talked about with the lower parking is a lot of these are, it is um. It's like affordable and, and lower income, and they found that a lot of the people had less vehicle. Capacity, or they're, they just weren't using the cars as much.
Yeah. I do think that that's sort of.
Yeah, and it, to me, it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg thing, you know, you, you give people parking and they might buy more cars, I personally fall under that category, unfortunately, um. And, and I, even though I own way too many cars, I, I, I favor people maybe owning less cars and. Uh, with, with the lower parking, I think that it might come with that, I mean, my dad wasn't, my, my parents, I grew up in, in, in Washington DC. Where they, there were no parking spaces, like you had, you parked on street and, and the families, most families only owned one car or didn't even own cars. And, and it was because of that, it was such a hassle to, to park, so that, that's a, yeah, anyway, I think, I think it may follow with that, so I'm, I don't, I'm not as concerned with that issue.
So what you're wanting from us is whether or not to, to move forward.
Do, yeah, that, that in this discussion is very important, so, yes, okay.
Mike?
I, I think the uh, promoting mass transit or points of that would drive down that number of, amount of vehicles. Uh, this, I mean, the tie-in is a, a win-win. Provides more access to transit and that number will, you know, can't go down.
Any other uh, thoughts? And again, I was looking at all that, this seems. I, I, I recommend going forward with it, it seems relatively reasonable to me.
And, uh, with, we had the presentation, that's the guy that you.
Right.
Yeah, do we know if he's got any holdings in the valley, or if he's got his eye on anything, while we start thinking of where these places.
He has a piece of property.
On uh, the old Assembly of God church.
It's the um, I forget which.
Is it Boulder Avenue?
Or, yeah, it's the church out there.
Oh, yeah.
It's my wicked brew back there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the. Yes, I know.
Chair Hadler.
Yeah, yes, Stephen.
So I I reviewed our notes from Hooper when he came. These are lower than what he was requesting at the time of our meeting. He requested one point two. Um, that was his request. You know, the three things that he needed was forty five for density, forty two for height and one point two for vehicles. I was just gonna note that. And then additionally, if we, if we look at um cinema court apartments, I think that would be helpful to know their ratios of vehicles, because they're a very similar type of pro, um, a similar type of development. So just.
Right, okay.
And provide additional information.
Sure, Stephen. Yeah, thank you. Oh, Alisa, how were the, how were one and an eighth uh parking spaces? How how's how's that number derived for the three and two bedroom?
Well, these actually came from the specs from one of Hooper's proposals.
Okay.
That was mod, probably just a revised version.
Of.
I think.
Okay, right, right.
Been playing around with some numbers and.
Yeah.
So they, so I do remember the one point two parking ratio that was kind of the average of all of the the different ones he was proposing for the different rooms or um, yeah, units. So, yeah, that's something we could definitely look at, like if if that one point two is better.
Yeah. That'd be a difference in a few parking spaces anyway with a forty five unit. Yeah. Okay. Did you, do you feel like you got enough from us of what you?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Alisa. Appreciate it. Uh, Mary?
I make a motion. We go into closed session to discuss character, professional competency or physical and mental health of an individual. I'll second that.
Oh, she beat her. All right, all in favor of going into a closed session? And that passes unanimously. She's passed.
I should have. I know, I know.
I saw it.
I'm trying to get that.
I can work that in that closed session.